Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council with successor agency Housing Authority and Parking Authority. Today is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Before we begin, I ask that you join the council in a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting this evening with a positive and collective support of our beloved Burbank community. The city council welcomes everyone joining us this evening, both in person and virtually, and we encourage you right now to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work that we will be doing together tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our shared passion for this wonderful city that we all call home. And as we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what it means to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you all very much. And now, if you would please, if you're able, rise, place your hand over your heart, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clark, how are you after the break?
I am terrific. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
I still live in the dream. Would you please conduct the role this evening?
Councilmember Anthony?
Present.
Councilmember Mullins?
Present.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Here.
And Mayor Schultz?
Present.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. So, folks, before we get into our items at hand, I just have a couple of prefatory remarks regarding public comment this evening, so give me a couple of minutes, but it's all good information. There will be nine, you heard me correctly, nine periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period. The first period of public comment is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you're here in person and you'd like to speak during general public comment, if you have not already done so, please turn in a yellow public comment card. Ms. Clark, can you hold one up as an example? And on the card, you can indicate whether you would like to use one minute or three minutes. Those who opt to use one minute will move to the front of the line, meaning you will be allowed to speak first. Once we've completed all one-minute public comment, we will then take three-minute public comment, and then we'll go to the phones. The second period of public comment this evening is for tonight's public hearing. To comment by phone on the public hearing, you can call when the hearing begins, and I'll repeat again that whether it's general public comment or comment for the public hearing, the phone number you're going to want to use is 818-238-3335. As a reminder, callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person public comment has been received. Now, there will be additional periods of public comment after each of the reports to council this evening. Those will only be taken in person. And as a reminder, if you'd like to talk about one of those reports to council during your time in general public comment, you can, but you won't be allowed to double-dip. You won't be allowed to, again, use that separate public comment period when the report comes back. The last thing I would like to note is that with nine periods of public comment this evening, I'm putting my colleagues and the public on notice that there may be a need to reduce speaking time. Based on the number of cards I see right now, I do not foresee that being a possibility, but we are trying to manage a very robust agenda. And before I go on, Mr. City Manager, I would like this on the record. My understanding is that the items on tonight's agenda all have sometimes time sensitivity to them and need to be considered by the council this evening. Is that correct, sir?
Mr. Mayor, yes, there are several items that have time sensitivity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hess. Lastly, I will, as usual, call out two names during public comment, the first person who will be speaking, and then the person on deck or the next person up. We have a seat reserved in the front row for the on-deck speaker, and please be sure to move into that seat when I call your name the first time, so that way we can just seamlessly go through the public comment process. So, thank you all for bearing with me, and with that, we have five announcements to begin us this evening.
Following our announcements for June 4th, 2024.
The city of Burbank is updating its media district-specific plan, and we want your input. RSVP for our in-person workshop on Wednesday, June 5th, at the Buena Vista Branch Library for a formal presentation that will introduce and provide an overview of the draft-specific plan, followed by a Q&amp;A session and the opportunity to give your feedback to the project team. Visit burbankmediadistrictsp.com to RSVP.
City's Community Development Department invites you to join a virtual information meeting on Thursday, June 6th, at 6:00 p.m. This meeting will go over the potential impacts and benefits of implementing construction workforce programs and policies such as prevailing wage, skilled and trained workforce, local hire, and apprenticeship programs for housing developments. Attendees will have the opportunity to connect with city staff and the consultant, as well as provide comments and ask questions. Please note that no decisions will be made at this informational meeting. For more information, visit burbankca.gov.
The Downtown Burbank Arts Festival is back. The festival will be held Saturday, June 8th, and Sunday, June 9th, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. along San Fernando Boulevard from Magnolia to Angelino Avenue. The event is free and open to the public. The Arts Festival will feature more than 180 local artisans, live music, and chalk artists creating exciting paintings through the weekend. Don't miss this popular Burbank event. For more information, visit dtnbur.com.
The City of Burbank Cultural Arts Commission, in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department and the Public Works Department, is pleased to announce a new phase of our Burbank Arts Beautification Program. This program is dedicated to exhibiting visual art outside the constraints of museums and galleries. To that end, various utility boxes throughout the city will be painted with original art inspired by the theme of diversity. Artists will be selected through a competitive process. The City of Burbank Parks and Recreation Department is now accepting applications. The deadline to submit the application and supplementary materials is Friday, June 14th, by 5:00 p.m. Visit burbankarts.com罡s to learn more.
Calling all Burbank restaurant owners, join Mayor Nick Schultz, the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, food service industry experts, and fellow restaurateurs for a town hall meeting on Tuesday, June 18th. Hosted by the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with the Digital Restaurant Association, this meeting is a platform for all restaurant owners to voice their experience in the industry and discuss ways the city can help restaurants thrive in today's digital world. Learn more by visiting burbankca.gov. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you, everyone. Now, we go to presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. First up, we have a presentation by the Burbank Tournament of Roses Association for their great work this year in winning the Mayor's Award for the 135th Tournament of Roses Parade. Give it up for them, everybody. They do all the work. Lynda, I see you brought a lot of company today, so maybe you can introduce them when we take the photo. But without further ado, I'd like to invite up Lynda Kozakos, President of the Burbank Tournament of Roses Association.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, councilmembers, and various other city departments. My name is Lynda Kozakos. I am the President of Burbank Tournament of Roses Association. I would like to thank the city council, city manager, and a variety of city departments for your support, including Burbank Water and Power, Burbank Police, Public Works, Park and Rec, along with other valuable departments. We are so thankful for our many volunteers that construct processed material and decorate our award-winning float. I'm going to have you sit for now, but I want to call special attention to John Reeves, Construction Chair, Bob Hud, he's not here tonight, Vice President Administration, Stephen Edwards, Vice President Float, who's not here tonight, and Terry Coombs, Decorations Chair. Thank you very much. On behalf of the whole association, we are proud to unveil to everyone our award, Mayor's Award, Caterpillar Melody. Now, this will hang in the mayor's office, and then when he leaves office, or until we get our next award, hopefully, then it will go to the public library on Glen Oaks Boulevard and be on display upstairs there. So, this is for everybody to enjoy, and go check out the other ones that we've won. We have quite a good record. So, on behalf of Burbank Tournament of Roses, I'd like to invite my crew up.
Come on up, everybody. Thank you all so much for your work. And Lynda, if I can borrow you for just a minute?
Sure.
I just want to say that I will proudly display this in the mayor's office for the remainder of the year. It's really a point of pride for our community. I got to say it's also the best darn award there is, because it's the mayor's award, which means I can talk to Victor and Ellen about it. But I just wanted to, before we leave the agenda item, ask, there are always people that are asking me how they can get involved with the Tournament of Roses Association. So, do you want to tell a little bit about opportunities for volunteering and getting involved with the float construction and deconstruction?
Well, first, what I want to say is, you had never been, prior to January, down to the float site to actually work on the float, correct?
That's right.
And then you came down in January?
Yes.
What kind of good time did you have?
It was the best time. No better way to spend a Saturday afternoon in January.
I have a photo of Mayor Schultz up on the float, picking off some of our dry material. Anyway, this is a fabulous organization. We have approximately maybe a dozen to two dozen people throughout the year that put this float chassis and the idea of the floral material together. And then the week between Christmas and New Year's, we call Deco Week, and we have anywhere from 300 volunteers up that we feed, usually breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and we put on everything from the dry material to the flowers, get it ready, 100% parade-ready to take to Pasadena on the 31st, and show the world on January 1st what the city of Burbank can produce.
BurbankRoseFloat.com.
BurbankRoseFloat.com. There's a donate button there, hint, hint. And there's also membership. If you'd like to be a membership, be a member, you can come down and play with us. Right now, we're working on our color rendering for the 2025 parade, which you will be seeing the hint of that in probably, I'm going to say, the August meeting. But it is dinosaurs, so that's going to be pretty cool for us. We have quite a few exciting elements that we're going to be adding to the float for next year as well, so I hope everybody wants to come down and see what we have to offer.
Can folks bring their kids to help out?
Seven years and up, yes.
Excellent.
And Constantine Anthony has been down there with his son and had a great time working on different products.
They need those little fingers to help out.
They need those. Yes. Seven and up must be accompanied with an adult, and 14 and up can come on their own. And 14 and up, they can be up on the float. And we started a new slogan this year, our theme that we have hanging in our float site, and it's, "We have a blooming good time." So, come down and have a blooming good time with us.
All right, that's great. Justin, you're going to take that to my office right now, right? Okay, thank you. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Oh, the box, okay, perfect. Thank you all so much. Our next presentation this evening is a presentation of a certificate of recognition to the 2024 Leadership Burbank Class for their Cause for a Pause project at the Burbank Animal Shelter. I'd like to invite Ms. Stephanie Shaw to join me at the podium. Actually, why don't you both introduce yourselves? That's always so nice.
That sounds suitable. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Stephanie Shaw.
And I'm Carrie Walco.
And we're co-chairs of this past year's Leadership Burbank Class of 2024. We were the co-managers for our Cause for Paws project. We've got some of the animal shelter here staff as well. We were able to renovate, create a dog run, and an adoption space for the animal shelter, and it's been an honor and a privilege from planning to fundraising. We will not be asking you for money tonight, finally. We're done, to executing. It's beautiful. Up until last week, the mural is now complete, so we encourage you to go check out the animal shelter. It's lovely and gorgeous, even more lovely and even more gorgeous, and please don't go home alone. Adopt a furry friend.
Yes, so, we're not collecting any money tonight. This project was completely funded by donations from members of the community and local businesses, so thank you all so much for your contribution to our class project. Leadership Burbank is holding a recruiting mixer next week. If you're interested in participating in next year's class and project to get involved in the community, that's happening at the VFW. And yeah, shout out to our class and group over here, particularly Alex Ketchatorian, who is our Ops and Logistics Coordinator, Cindy Yee, our fundraising coordinator, Mike Christensen, our marketing chair, and Yolanda Wu, who chaired our amazing event at Johnny Carson Park in April, which was our primary fundraising contribution. So, thank you again.
And we would like to invite everyone that's here from our class and the shelter, please up for the photo. Lizette, come on.
Absolutely. And just so we can acknowledge you, if we have any Leadership Burbank alum in the room, feel free to stand for a quick round of applause. I know we have some. I'm glad you guys stood too. I was referring to you. Everyone just scrunch together like we like each other. Thank you. And before you go, I actually have to give you the certificate. So, here's the certificate on behalf of the city council. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our third and final presentation this evening is a proclamation of the mayor's office declaring the month of June 2024 as Pride Month in the city of Burbank. Before I go on, I'd like to also note that City Hall and the Burbank Water and Power Administration Building will be lit up in honor of Pride Month all this week. So, when you leave tonight, if you drive down the road, you can see those great buildings illuminated in the pride flag colors. Before I go on, I'd actually like the vice mayor to come down and join me in delivering the proclamation. And Mr. Eric Carter, where are you? There you are. Come on up here, Eric. Eric is here on behalf of P-Flag Burbank tonight, and he'll be receiving the proclamation. Madam Vice Mayor, I could have you right here. All right. I always think it's more fun, you know, to do group projects, so we're going to try it on this one. Whereas, Pride Month began in June of 1970 in New York City on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, asexual, and intersex, or LGBTQ+ individuals for short, and their allies rose up and fought against harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional.
And whereas LGBTQ+ individuals have had an immeasurable impact on the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country, state, and city, and continue to make great and lasting contributions that strengthen the fabric of our society.
And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has dignity, worth, and equal rights, and the city of Burbank remains committed to supporting visibility and equality for LGBTQ+ individuals in our community.
Whereas the city prides itself on its close-knit neighborhoods and community-oriented ethic, and wants all residents to feel welcome and safe, especially LGBTQ+ youth, families, and seniors who should be able to learn, live, and thrive without fear of harassment and discrimination.
And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ+ equality, continued education and awareness remains vital to end prejudice and discrimination in our community.
Whereas celebrating Pride Month promotes awareness and provides support and advocacy for our LGBTQ+ community, and serves as an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights.
And with all of that said, now, I, therefore, Nick Schultz, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Pride Month, and I urge all of our residents and stakeholders, and those even visiting Burbank, to recognize the lasting contributions of our LGBTQ+ family, friends, colleagues, and neighbors, and who all help make Burbank a vibrant community in which we live, grow, and thrive. And I think that as long as we remain rooted in acceptance and love and tolerance, the world becomes a better place. Mr. Carter, please accept this on the mayor's behalf. Eric, would you actually like to bring the board up or introduce them?
I'll be really short, because I know that you have a full agenda tonight. For those who don't know, P-Flag is, the Burbank chapter is one of 130 chapters in the United States and Canada. It's an organization that provides support for those who are members of the community. It also provides support for those who are friends and allies of the community, who want to know how better to support the organization. Yes, these are our board members here. We meet the second Monday of every month at the YMCA, the Social Impact Center. Meetings are at 7:00 o'clock for those who need support or want to come out and support those in the community. Everyone is welcome, and like it says, Burbank helping to make this city a welcoming and safe place. We're seeing also in some other cities where they're going backwards, and it's a shame, and we have to keep up this work. It doesn't end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carter. I'm going to give that to you. And before we take one more group picture, Vice Mayor, as the first openly LGBTQ+ member to serve on the city council, if you have any words, I'd like to give you the floor as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am the first openly bisexual council member in the city of Burbank, and very proud of it. But one thing I want to share, and I feel like we don't take a lot of time, as the city attorney says, to talk about some of our accomplishments here in Burbank. And I think Burbank can pride itself in being incredibly inclusive. The folks up here are a testament to that. We have wonderful organizations like the Social Impact Center. We have P-Flag. We have Burbank Pride, and I believe the Pride in the Park event is actually the best-attended event that we have in the city of Burbank. And that's a testament to the community that we have here. We pride ourselves in being inclusive and protecting those who are members of the LGBTQ+ community. And I can definitely tell you, as a member, I felt that in my community. However, I do have to mention, given the national rhetoric, given some of the hate speech we see, some of all of the, you know, all the rhetoric going on that unfortunately our young people have to see, some of which has happened at this very podium, I think it's important to, at every opportunity we can, recommit ourselves to being that inclusive community. Recommit ourselves through pride and through other means. And, you know, one thing that's very important to me, I know I wear a lot of first hats, but I think they don't matter unless you do something with them. And personally, for me, I think that means making sure that the members of my community feel safe and feel included. And I'm committed to work alongside my colleagues, work alongside the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, to ensure that members of the LGBTQ+ community feel safe here, that we continue to have pride, that we continue to find ways to ensure that we are a welcoming community. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, P-Flag, and happy pride, everybody.
Happy pride, everyone. Give it up one more time. All right. Mr. City Manager, anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we have a full agenda, so I do not have anything to report for tonight.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, would you please report out on tonight's closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, and for the benefit of the public, city council met at 5:30 this evening to discuss one item of anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and E2, with the city as a potential defendant in one wrongful termination claim. City council took no reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Now is the time for general public comment. I will be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who is next in line to speak. Ms. Clark, how many cards do we have for general public comment this evening?
We have approximately 19, and we have four people on the line.
Okay, very good. In order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion, we have a designated seat in the front row for speakers who are next up to the podium. As a reminder, a timer is available on the podium. Persons choose to use the first period of public comment, in other words, the public comment period right now, to address an agendized report, but you will not later be able to speak on that agenda item once the presentation is made by staff. We ask that you state your name for the record, and for those wishing to call in during general public comment, please do so right now at 818-238-3335. You'll be placed in a queue until all in-person public comments have been received. So, we will begin with our one-minute public comment cards. I have four of them. First up, we have Janet Deal, followed by Kathleen Doni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the council and everyone in Burbank. I'm one minute, so I'm going to cut to the chase. The roses that you have, members of the council, are from me, from Pasadena Tournament of Roses, to thank you very much again for your support for our Tournament of Roses Parade and for the Burbank float. Congratulations tonight to Mr. Anthony on the Distinguished Public Service Award for championing disabled access and livability in our community. It's a tremendous honor, and we're very, very glad you got it. Advisory Council on Disabilities meets the third Thursday of every month at 1:30. Go to B-A-C-O-D-16@gmail.com. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Well done, and congratulations, Councilmember Anthony. Next, we have Kathleen Doni, followed by Ivan Uzil. And if I mispronounce anyone's name, please feel free to correct the pronunciation, and then we'll start your timer.
You are one of 5% of people in Los Angeles who pronounce my name correctly. It's spelled like Dohini, so thank you. You must be Irish. I will take only a minute. I'm applying for the Citizens Advisory Committee for the airport. I've been in Burbank since 1976. Yes, I'm that old. I didn't move here as a child. I think I have some skills that would lend itself to it. I've worked as a journalist for many, many years. I'm still working. I have good research skills. I'm fair. I see both sides of a situation. I've also done several toiletry dives for our local food bank, Burbank. Everybody knows if they come to a party at Kathy's house, they bring a bag of toiletries. I don't care if you bring booze. I don't care if you bring food. You got to bring a bag of toiletries. I'm also a Mimi to two lovely kids. I just got out of the pre-K graduation this morning, so I have multitasking skills. That's my story.
Thank you very much for your comment. And thank you to those of you who remember how much I love jazz hands. That's fantastic. Next, we have Ivan Uzil, followed by Karen Lau, and you may begin whenever you're ready.
Hello. I just wanted to say that, first of all, while I've emailed everybody, all the city council and several people, at least 15 times, so no need to go through all that. Somebody built a Somebody built a motel on my street, the 1100 block of Reece Place, in their backyard. They're renting it out nightly. Okay? I know it sounds, I'll repeat it. They built a motel on, in their backyard on my street, renting it out on Airbnb nightly. I'm almost out of time, okay. Is it true? I just want to read this because I don't know if it's true. The city manager shall take orders and instructions from the city council only when it is sitting as a body in a lawfully held meeting. Is that true?
Sir, we can't unfortunately engage in a back-and-forth under the Brown Act, but we'll address your comments at the end of general public comment.
It's from Mr. Hess's contract, so. All right, because I'll bring 20 of my neighbors next time and go through it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Three seconds left. Goodbye.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your time. Karen Lau, and that's my last one-minute comment card. And, sorry, Ms. Lau, before you begin, I caught myself from last time. When we start three-minute public comment, the first speaker up will be Chris Rosati. You can begin whenever.
Okay, great. Good to see you all. Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I'm Karen Lau, founder, director of the Burbank Eco Council. I'm here to reiterate the importance of representation and leadership the City of Burbank can have in regards to our proactive efforts in building community, social, environmental equity to embrace the urgent dialogue in addressing the climate emergency in the region. A dedicated budget for Earth Day and specific outreach environmental events that represent the important work our sister environmental groups, all 100% volunteer-based, such as the Sustainable Burbank Commission, the Monarch Mile, the Community Garden, Walk By Burbank, Electrification Coalition, et cetera, will bolster a well-informed, resilient, robust, and ready population to help address the city's GHG goals and follow-ups from the Green New Deal. Through a small budget, we can continue to expand our stewardship and leadership development for our town, our planet, and for the next generations to come. So, we need your vote and support on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Folks, we're now moving into the three-minute comment period. First up, we have Chris Rosati, followed by Glenn Dunziler.
Good evening, councilmembers. Christopher Rosati, Mayor. Yeah, I just had a couple of housekeeping items. I frequent Johnny Carson Park quite a bit. I was there with my son. I was there two consecutive weekends where parents have seen coyotes in the creek. So, I was thinking it might be a good idea to get some signage for the coyotes. And then, second, off of Bob Hope Drive, we have the Equestrian Trail, which is being used more and more by motorcycles and motorized bikes. And I was out there taking out some trash cans, and I saw a horse coming and a guy on a motorized bike, and he stopped and turned around and came back. And I said, you know, this is an equestrian trail. And he said, you know, I didn't know that. And he said, but there's no signage. And you know what? He was right. There's no signage at all. So, I think at all entrances that lead to that trail on the western part of the Bridle Trail, we should have some signs that say, "Equestrian Trail, No Bikes." And to his, you know, support, I mean, he didn't know. So. And then lastly, you know, I've been out talking to people in Burbank, and people love our parks. They just love the parks. That's all I hear about, parks, parks, parks. I thought it'd be a great idea if we had like an Adopt a Park program, kind of like a Friends of Brace Park, Friends of Bob Hope Park, and you meet quarterly and maybe pick up trash and have some camaraderie with your neighbors. And at the same time, you can put eyes on equipment that might need to repair and kind of help out our parking wreck department. But I thought it'd be kind of a cool idea. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you for tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Glenn Dunwiler, sorry, Dunziler, please feel free to correct me, followed by Ron Backs.
Hello, City Council. My name is Glenn Dunswiler. It's a heck of a last name. I am currently a monitor at Burbank Public Libraries, and I wanted to come here to put a button on the article that came out in the Burbank Leader about safety at the libraries. Our libraries are open for everybody, to include chaotic and disruptive people. And I would argue that it is our responsibility to protect our patrons and our staff from the chaos and the disruption. I would suggest, I guess, that one way we could do that is making sure that all of our security cameras work and are monitored, so when a librarian gets punched in the face, we have definitive proof of who did that, and we can prevent them from coming back into the library. Another thing that would be great is if we had actual security that had the authority to remove disruptive and chaotic people as needed. What we have to do now, if they are not compliant, is wait 15 to 20 minutes for the police to come, and everybody in the library is sitting in that chaos. Now, I understand it may be smarter for the city, who does not want to get sued, to do nothing. I completely get that. But I wonder if the citizens of Burbank want that same thing. And that is all I have to say. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your comment and for your service. Next, we have Ron Backs, followed by Hubert Kozak.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I continue my remarks from last meeting regarding the staff report of April 23, 2024, landlord tenant strategies 2 through 4, and then address the memorandum that is contained in attachment 9, item 8 today during the public comment for that item?
If you could, if you could repeat that again. I'm trying to process. So, if you want to talk about general public comment, you can talk about anything and everything on tonight's agenda. The other piece that you'd like to speak to, what is that? Which agenda item?
This is agenda item 8.
Okay.
And it's attachment 9, has to do with, I know why I stepped, the clock starts. Okay. Well, once you didn't start it, I mean, now you're not.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Backs, if you have a specific point you'd like to make when we get to item 8, I would say, keep your remarks specific at that point. At this point, you could keep it more general and make use of the time.
Well, they're separate subjects.
Okay.
In my opinion.
I'll be the judge of it, but proceed.
Okay. Then, Ms. Clark, we have to go through the ritual.
Okay. For Ms. Mullins' benefit, I spoke last time regarding the city attorney's efforts to take the 14 items that came from the roundtable and broke them into four categories, which helped people that were just living in Burbank, then helped people that were looking for housing, then helped people maintain their housing, and if things did go bad, helped them when they were losing their housing. So, I got down through the first two of them. And the third one, this could be, include mediation if having provided a tenant with their housing provider with their rights and obligations, there is no agreement or compromise. As a housing provider, I will welcome being aware of any habitability issue, such as problems that could reduce the value of the property and correct the things that to do, right thing to do for a fellow human being, unless it becomes onerous, as I have heard the Los Angeles systematic code enforcement, SCE can be. This is where they find nitty things that are not part of the habitability, and they are usually the tenant's response, or the tenant causes, but they cite the landlord. So, let's not go there. Finally, if the efforts in number, okay, one other thing, I forgot to bring this to my desk. I mentioned last time that there's a pamphlet put out by the State of California Department of Consumer Affairs, Tenant and Landlords' Responsibilities and Rights, which takes the legalese of Civil Code Sections 1940 through 1954 and transfers, translates it into English. Okay? Finally, if the efforts at the third level prove fruitless civil enforcement actions for a recalcitrant tenant or housing provider would be good for the community, examples about bad housing providers should be easy to quantify because their actions are usually obvious and constant. Bad tenants are more difficult to quantify because the actions can be sporadic and subjectively evaluated. Examples would be, but not limited to, use the property for illegal action or abusive, just abusive, disruptive to a fellow tenant. At-fault cause, at-fault causes for eviction, except for non-payment of rent, can be very difficult. Government assistance, concurrence, and/or support would be welcome. We have to remember, leasing of a house, leasing of housing is a business transaction, wherein all businesses transactions a fair price is won, a seller wants, and a buyer is willing and able to pay. Before you say tenants are not able to give what happens in a normal business transaction, where that is true, the deal does not go through, take place. The seller is not obligated to adjust his asking price. If a commodity is not transferred, the law, the law of supply and demand eventually takes place. The seller reduces his price, or the buyer becomes willing and able to pay the agreed price. And I will be back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Colleagues, I'll just note that his comment tonight started on the second page. All right. Next, we have Hubert Kozak, followed by Joel Schlossman.
Hi. My name is Hubert Kozak. I've been a librarian in this city for about 24 years now. Most of you are probably familiar with the article on safety issues at the library that appeared a short time ago in the Burbank Leader. While I did not initiate contact with the leader about those issues, I agreed to be interviewed because I wanted to support the concern of my coworkers. I did this for one reason, I'm afraid. I believe that if we do not do better to address the problem at the library, it is only a matter of time before our library patron or member of the staff is going to get seriously hurt. The city has not taken this problem seriously, seriously enough. It has not come up with solutions that will effectively protect us against that happening one day. I was reluctant to do this because I am concerned about any shadow this may cast on the library and the people I work with. They're all dedicated employees, and they have done wonderful work for this community. But our patrons and those coworkers deserve better. It may be that you cannot bar somebody from using the public library, one who has a criminal record of stabbing someone or another, for example, who has been charged with attempted murder. We've had these people in the library recently. But in protecting their civil rights, you must also take the appropriate measures to protect the safety of your patrons and your employees. What we have done in this city to date is not adequate. I'm not going to rehearse the catalog of safety problems. You can read about those in the leader, and you can hear more from library staff. There is, however, one issue that can serve as representative of the character of the problem the staff faces here, that demonstrates what we have come up against in asking for more effective action. When the reporter from the leader asked the city if the library's security cameras were functional, the city spokesperson said, quote, "Functional security cameras are operational during library service hours." What the careful construction of this reply allowed him to admit was anything that would have made for a truthful answer. There are, in fact, no functional cameras at the BV branch, and there have not been for two or three years now. There are no security cameras at all at the Northwest Branch, where a major violent incident occurred not long ago. And those cameras at the Central Branch, which do allegedly function when they happen to be turned on, produce such blurred images that they are useless from a security point of view. That's all that was left out of the city's answer. Is this what passes for telling the truth in this city? Is this the public transparency that citizens living here in Burbank should expect from city officials? Yes, whoever is speaking for the city is going to try to put the best face on things. But you don't do that at the expense of the truth, and you don't play these kinds of games with the truth.
Thank you. That's your time, sir. Thank you.
And you don't play these kinds of games with the truth and with language.
Sir, that's your time. Thank you. Sir, that's your time. Thank you for being here today.
Can I just finish the sentence?
Sir, I have to be fair across the board, but thank you very much. I'll be reaching out personally.
I think you got the general idea.
I do. Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we have Mr. Schlossman. Before you go on, can you just test the mic there?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Schlossman, you'll be up first, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. You know, do you remember the movie Field of Dreams? There was a tagline, you know, if you build it, they will come. Well, the five of you rolled out the welcome wagon for this group of people, and they came, and they're here, and they're at our libraries, and you owe it to our employees to protect them. It's just that simple. And you can't wait. It's got to start right now. Now, you know, I went over the school board. I talked about this thing. And on the agenda, they used a term on one of the items on the agenda, confidential employees they're talking about. And I'd never heard that phrase before, confidential employees. And I asked them about it. What does this mean? I asked the superintendent twice, and when he was getting ready to answer me on the second time, the President Weissburg instructed him not to answer me. Now, the question is that all of us should be concerned with. They want us to go into debt for $1.1 billion. That's a mortgage on our homes. That's going to make everything more expensive. Should we vote for that for a group of people that don't have transparency, that won't ask a simple question? And Weissburg is a teacher, and she will not teach. Now, at the last meeting, I guess, a couple weeks ago, Mr. Anthony, I said some things about you, and you said, well, they're personal. How is it personal when on the city's website right now is, you make a claim that you attended San Francisco State University, and I said that I contacted the registrar and asked if you attended, and they said no. Now, there could be an error. I don't know. But the proof is transcripts, and that's how you prove it. You don't tell me to go to Mary Ward Hall down in the basement at some video game. It's an insult to everybody. It's kind of like stolen valor. When you say you did something, just show your transcripts. And you know what? I'll apologize to you. I got it wrong. I'll be happy to do it. That's the kind of guy I am. But you can't have, you've done a lot of hard work, and you can't have your foundation built on quicksand. It's just that simple. And you made a claim about getting married. You said it publicly. It's not me getting personal. You said it. I was at the recorder of the marriage licenses, and there's no record of you getting married. You know how you clear that up? You don't say, oh, some of these people in the room were at my wedding, giving you gifts. You don't say that. You just show your wedding license. I've got one, and I'll apologize if I'm wrong on that one, too. But until then, everything you say on that subject is suspect. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Mark Scroggs, followed by Nicholas Scroggs.
Hello, everyone. First, I just want to kind of make a public service announcement of sorts. There's a new strain of COVID going around called FLIR, which is F-L-I-R-T. I've had one client whose project got pushed for a few weeks because somebody's got the flu. A couple others have been pushed a few days because people have gotten sick. Someone else who almost couldn't fly to Florida to work on a film, but she was better by then. And also in Florida, they really don't care about COVID, so that's what the producers told me. So, but it's going around. It's starting to affect people. I know we don't want to get into that mind thing, like, oh, my God, mask and all this other stuff, but just start thinking about it again because it's going to affect, it's already affected my business because I was expecting money to come in. So, just be careful. On the entertainment side, I want to recommend everyone who is involved with or works in the entertainment industry to download and read the latest, oddest College of Arts and Design report. They do a report about the entertainment industry. They did one last fall I was a part of about the business side. This is more about the worker's side, which is really interesting in the fact that some things are growing, some things are not. Film and television production, not. Live entertainment, video games, other things are. And there's ways to take advantage of it. You know, there's still a lot of business in California, according to the information, and they're non-biased. They don't have anything to say about it. And I know they research it really, really well. And so, even if you're working with restaurants or real estate, it's something to check out. You can download it. It was out, it came out on Thursday. It was on Deadline, Hollywood Reporter, Variety, LA Times. It's all around. It's like I said, it's easy to read. It's kind of like, sometimes your reports here, where it's just simple, and it's very straightforward. So, I recommend that because that may provide some ideas for solutions for the future. And the last thing, I mentioned this before, with the one-minute comments, if you could make it 90 seconds, you would get more time, a little more time. Everybody seems to get cut off. I've noticed that. So, you go 90 minutes, you know, because I can do it in 90 seconds. So, anyway. Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. Next up, we have Nicholas Scroggs, followed by Harry Tamarien.
Sorry. My voice is a little hoarse from the weather. Hello, my name is Nicholas Scroggs. I just wanted to, wanted to say that I just wanted to say that I, excuse me one second.
Let's make sure to pause this time, please.
Not my most awkward speaking moment. So I just want to bring up something that I wanted to, that I am passionate about, the use of rebates for the, the city has a lot of rebates, you know, for, because we are in a climate crisis, and it will get worse. But the, there are a lot of rebates in the city that the city has to offer, like for heat pumps, switching out gas stoves for induction, induction stoves, EVs charging, shade trees, shaded trees, all that stuff. I'm aware of it, but I feel like it should be promoted a little bit more, like promoted and advertised more because I noticed this when I was talking, when I was talking to some people in my apartment complex, like they, like they weren't aware of the, aware of the rebates either. And yeah, so, sorry. Yeah, so it's, and also like the website, the website page on the rebates, like for swapping out everything, swapping out for electrification, could be, could be, have a better layout, let's just say that, just say that. Because like, for example, the, when I was looking through it for apartment renters, all that, they, like, it's more at the bottom of the page rather than, so it's a bit, and you have to click on like one of the FAQs to see if they're eligible, if you're eligible. So there is that. And also just maybe a little more, like, like a little more information for people, like for apartments, apartment renters and landlords, like, like, there's, I'm sorry again. It's like there, like the, like the information, like it's not out there. Mostly it seems to, like on the website, it seems to mostly apply for homeowner, it looks like it applies for homeowners, but it doesn't. It can, it also can apply to renters, but it just, yeah. Sorry, I'm just looking through my notes. Yeah. So yeah, that's basically it. Like, and also just maybe to help, too, for the, for the, for the, like, just help for them, for the, for the people to be, to know, to know about the rebates in general, in the city as well. So, and I also have about 25 seconds. So I'll also bring up that I, that I feel like the city could do, like, something for, like, a hiring project for neurodivergent persons. It's like, like something like the, like that park project that the guy mentioned, or like the W federal writers project in the, in the 1930s. That's really all I have to say on that. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment and your feedback. Next, we have Harry Temerian, followed by Naveen Greer.
Sorry, it looks like my asthma is starting to kick in real quick. All right. Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor. My name is Harry Temerian. I represent the Burbank Association of Realtors. I wanted to speak briefly about the rent control, rent cap issue that we've got facing the housing providers in this city. I provided some documentation, an article, you'll see it. I didn't provide 10. I provided five, should have done 10. But it's titled, "In Oakland, rents have fallen 7.2%," and it's not because of rent control measures. It's, it's not because of rental cap measures. It's not because of government assistance, but it's because of you, Mr. Mayor. Oakland has listened to you. Build, baby, build. You've been preaching that for as long as I've known you, right? Oakland effectively built themselves out of a rental housing crisis. The laws of economics, the laws of supply and demand are working. Burbank is on the right track, and we must allow these buildings that are being built all over Burbank to come to fruition. You must allow economics to take its course. Rent control often fails to target those most in need of assistance. Studies have shown that a significant portion of rent-controlled units are actually occupied by higher-income tenants who could afford to pay market rates. When this city does anything that is going to affect its citizens, its duty is to inform them thoroughly, through public forums, public meetings, Zoom, whatever you want. But your housing providers, whether they live here or not, should always be respected and informed of decisions this council is going to implement onto them, especially when you're going to make decisions that's going to affect them financially. So far, everything the council has done for its renters, the housing providers have agreed with, everything. We agreed with spending the money, up to 500K in assistance, robust housing, everything else. But it's been said from this council that housing providers are anxiously waiting for this council to do something when it comes to rent control or rent caps. That is absolutely false. Housing providers don't want this council to do anything because they're already under a statewide rent control ordinance. And each and every single of you, every, each and every single one of you have received hundreds of emails saying that exact same statement. I always bring up the fact that costs associated with providing rental housing has skyrocketed, insurance, if you're lucky to get it, interest rates, the yearly increase of property taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And I always remind this council that you voted to increase water and electricity bills by 11% starting last year for the next five years. Almost all the housing units, whether they're single families or 15 units, have one water meter. Imagine trying to control the water consumption of your tenants. Some of you argue that raising those fees are needed because the previous councils didn't. Well, some previous tenants didn't. Landlords did not, and now they need to do it this year. So why can the city raise rates, but it's not the same thing for housing providers? They need to be able to do that as well. Each and every single one of you council members should be at every single meeting that you hold, every one of you.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Next, we have Naveen Greer, followed by Jordan Barger.
Good evening. My name is Naveen Greer, a Burbank resident, a BUSD employee, and a proud Palestinian Christian Semite from the holy city of Bethlehem. Before I start with my speech, I would like to say Happy Pride Month, especially to the amazing people from the LGBTQ+ community within our Burbank for Palestine group. Here we go again, or here we are again. Week 15, pleading and asking the council respectfully to put a resolution for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza back on the agenda. I'm not here tonight to tell you about the children who got bombed and try to move your hearts, your personal morals, when you see a genocide is something between you and your God or your higher power. What I'm here to do tonight is to ask you to do your job. Your job is to represent the people of Burbank. Just today, the city of Los Angeles put a motion for a ceasefire resolution. So what are we waiting for? My son Gio, who spoke in your presence two weeks ago and who couldn't be here tonight, as Vice Mayor Perez stated, his words were heard clearly. If his words were heard clearly, why is the resolution taking this long to be agendized? What are we doing? There are innocent civilians being slaughtered every minute as we speak in Gaza and the West Bank. Just last week, Israel committed a horrific massacre in Rafah. They dropped seven missiles, each weighing 2,000 tons, and guess what? They were manufactured in California. Yes, here in California with our tax money on innocent civilian tents, where they were clearly told by the Israeli army to move there, claiming it as a safe zone. They slaughtered more than 50 people. The pictures and videos were so gruesome to look at. It included a video of a father holding his year-and-a-half-old, beheaded son's body. His name was Ahmad Al-Majjar, and people being burnt alive. And all what Israel claimed was only a tragic mistake. They keep on ignoring international orders, and they keep on getting away with it. We won't forget Hindrajab, six years old, Faeser, five, Reem, three, Tarek, five, and the 15,000-plus angels who sadly lost their lives in this horrifying livestreamed genocide. We won't forget the bombings of hospitals, churches, mosques, schools, universities, and ambulances. We won't forget the doctors, journalists, professors, nurses, aid workers, and the 40,000-plus dead Gazans. We won't forget the seven mass graves and more found with 50 beheaded bodies and the premature babies, decomposed bodies left behind. We won't forget the 10,000-plus martyrs who are still under the rubble. We won't forget our children who starved to death. We won't forget the 9,000 arrests made in the West Bank since October. We won't forget that Gaza became the largest number of child amputees in history. But more importantly, we won't forget this genocide Israel is committing against.
Thank you for your comment.
Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Next, we have Jordan Barger, followed by David Donahue.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to be up here tonight. My name is Jordan Barger, and I'm a filmmaker in the Burbank area and have used various Burbank locations in my films, including going through the Burbank Film Permit Office. I say this because I've seen you claim Burbank to the media capital of the world and yet have stayed silent on passing a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. This is my third time coming up here to speak to you on the matter, and I wonder what I could possibly say tonight to change your mind. It seems clear that tens of thousands of murdered children will not spur you to take action. If that won't, then what will? So I thought I might appeal to you in a different way and point out some facts that the media capital of the world should be interested in. In 2018, Israel Legislature introduced a cultural loyalty law that essentially denied funding to any media maker who criticized the government. This is a step further of the 2011 NECA law that wanted to make commemorating the NECA a felony. It passed instead with a financial penalty for government bodies, but the cultural loyalty law goes even further to pull funding from events or organizations that, quote, "marked Israel's Independence Day as a day of mourning," end quote, or in other words, show respect for the 800,000 Palestinians who were violently and forcibly uprooted after the 1948 war. This law in itself is another act of violence toward the Palestinian people and a way to erase an event that shaped the culture and to pull funding from any artist criticizing the government or bringing light to the NECA. It is a fascist law because fascism seeks to smother dissent in the name of nationalism. Media cannot flourish in fascism. This does not even touch upon the many Palestinian media makers Israel has literally killed in the past eight months. As of today, June 4, 2024, the Committee to Protect Journalists estimates that there have been 108 journalists and media worker casualties, including at least three journalists who were deliberately targeted by the Israel Occupation Force. Since international humanitarian law classifies journalists as civilians, targeting journalists constitutes a war crime. The 108 dead journalists do not include the 32 injured, two missing, and 44 arrested. UN experts claim the situation in Gaza has been the deadliest, most dangerous conflict in recent history for journalists. If you care about media, then this should concern you. This should concern Burbank. Media makers everywhere should know the media capital of the world supports them. You can't claim both that Burbank is the media capital of the world and also that no one would care if Burbank passed a ceasefire resolution. I care. We all care. Why do you think we are up here begging you? We shouldn't have to beg, but we are. I'm begging you now to please pass a permanent and lasting ceasefire resolution for persecuted Palestinians, but also for the media makers whose rights the media capital of the world should be protecting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have David Donahue, followed by Polly Stenberg.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, council members, and very talented staff. I'm going to, my name is David Donahue, and I'm going to share just a hypothetical situation. Where I work is a very interesting place. Almost on a daily basis, I, there's something that's usually a reason to report it to my supervisors because there are threats against me, and there are threats against my other fellow workers. It is not unusual that when I'm at work, I'm going to hear somebody yell expletives at me. It is not unusual when I'm at work where I'm going to have threats made against me that I'm going to be, I'm going to kill you, I'm going to do X, Y, and Z to you. It is also not unusual at my place of employment because there happens to be a public computer, where that public computer is going to be accessed for anything possible, imaginable online. And it is also not unusual that I will find somebody there doing the unimaginable, where myself and my other workers witness it. It is hard to be able to be at my place of employment because of the stress and the anxiety and the fear that I have. It is hard for me to be at my place of employment because I don't know how I'm going to be able to safely get to my place of employment, or when I'm done with my shift, make it to my car. I have seen people defecate. I have seen any imaginable thing possible happen at my place of employment. So hypothetically, can you imagine where I work? You've heard two gentlemen speak already, and that's where? The Burbank Library. The Burbank Library is a place where everybody can go. Everybody should be able to enjoy their access without the fear, the anxiety, the trepidation that they face when they go to their place of employment and have actual threats made against them. Supervisors have been made aware of what this is happening. You've just heard cameras do not work, panic buttons do not work. What is the city doing to protect those individuals? If it were not for Gavin Quentin, who is seated just behind me with the Burbank leader, I would not know about this. I would not be able to take my opportunities with the three minutes before the council to advocate for their safety, to urge and to plead with you and staff to make this change. If there were ever an opportunity for you to do an emergency ordinance, Mr. Mayor, which you have done in the past, this is it. Make Burbank employees your top priority. It should not be a frontline kind of job where they're going to be at risk. They are not police officers, they are not fire department, they are not linemen working for the BWP. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Polly Stenberg, followed by Martha Urel.
Good evening, council. My name is Polly Stenberg. I'm a nine-year Burbank resident homeowner and Jewish mother of two. Tonight, we need one council member to make a motion to place the ceasefire resolution on a future agenda. The city of Los Angeles just made a motion for a ceasefire resolution, which will be agendized in a week or so. Mayor Schultz, I know that you hold two complex truths in this time. You are the mayor of Burbank, and you are also a candidate for State Assembly, 44th District. As mayor, I want to thank you for your commitment to humanitarian values and to actively participating in the agendizing of a ceasefire resolution in Burbank. I know that as mayor, you serve constituents, friends, and colleagues who are outspokenly Zionist. I myself have had many painful conversations with friends and family who identify as Zionists in Burbank and beyond, and who would have me believe that even the word ceasefire is controversial. I do not accept this premise, and neither should you. I know that as candidate for State Assembly, you have been endorsed in your campaign by the Democrats for Israel California, whose stated goal is to serve as the bridge between the Democratic Party and the Jewish/pro-Israel community. According to their website, Democrats for Israel Los Angeles has two missions: fighting antisemitism in our party and in society at large, and supporting Israel in any way that we can. In response to the October 7, 2023 attack where Hamas killed 1,139 Israelis and kidnapped 240 people, Israel has killed over 40,000 Palestinians, including over 15,000 children, and displaced over 1.9 Palestinians. Councilmembers Takahashi, Mullins, Anthony, Vice Mayor Perez, and Mayor Schultz, it has been 234 days of Israel's constant bombing of children. If you are trying in any way to justify this, you have lost your humanity entirely. The catastrophic horror unfolding before our eyes is happening because the leaders of the United States of America, leaders like you, have said this violence is justified and necessary. October 7 was horrific, yes, and also we are watching genocide unfold before our eyes. Both things are true. When you respond to my comments tonight, and sincerely I hope that you do, honor me. Honor Palestinian life. Honor my Jewish ancestors and my Jewish children. Say genocide. This is a genocide. Aid workers, hospitals, universities, and refugee camps have all been the target of military bombardment. Displaced Palestinians sheltering in tents were blown apart and burnt alive by American bombs in Rafah, only days after the ICJ ruled Israel must halt their offensive in the region. All we are asking is for a ceasefire to save lives. A ceasefire resolution is the very least this city can do to show humanity and compassion. The political tide is turning. I do believe that there is only so much targeting of civilian life you can witness before saying enough. True, you may get pushback, but you will have done the right thing. To the council member who makes the motion tonight, and to those of you who support it, thank you. I believe your humanity and integrity will be rewarded by the voters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Martha Urel, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Vice Mayor. Here. Here to represent Maui Apartments again. This time, Mr. Richard Cathcart has been issued a notice of eviction, but two months prior, he was given a rent increase. So I don't know if that's allowable, but anyway. I have recorded-- because I get nervous-- a statement that was submitted to the Landlord-Tenant Commission, and I just wanna pick out this part. Hold on a second. Put the volume up. Okay, here we go. I, Richard B. Cathcart, have rented my apartment since April 2004. My current rent is about $600 per month. On May 23, 2024, I was personally served a 60-day notice to quit from Westard Property Management, representing two or more LLCs. The basis for the eviction is to renovate Apartment M. One-bedroom Maui Apartments are currently priced at about $2,400 per month, meaning with renovation, my cozy apartment rent will be multiplied by four. According to the notice to quit, I and my possessions must be gone by the 1st of August 2024. If the City of Burbank does not become effective as a moderator of such investment tactics, then many people in this fine city will depart, never to return, driven off the cliff like herds of mammoths were by ancient hunters. So far, the state, Los Angeles County, and the City of Burbank have ignored renters of all ages and descriptions. I would also like to let you know that there's an additional attachment. I applaud the code enforcement that is going to be put in. That picture there is the sewage that is coming out from the Maui Apartments, the building that Richard is living in, and they're installing dishwashers. It cannot handle the regular sewage of the people there. How are they gonna put dishwashers? Plus, I believe in having plans to show that this can be done, have someone inspect that this needs to be done, and to offer the tenant who is being evicted a chance to have a unit at their place. There's five empty units.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Next, we have Joe Pimienta, followed by Julio Jaramillo.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, and everyone in the chamber. I have a lot of things, so let's see how many of them I can get through. First and foremost, yes, I also support the-- you know, support what others have said before me, which is Burbank needs to state a permanent and immediate ceasefire as soon as possible. I don't know what the holdup is. I mean, City of Los Angeles is looking to pass theirs, and it's just, it's a necessity. But secondly, as you may be expecting, I'm here to talk about tenant protections. And not to my favorite, but I brought a little bit of a visual aid this time because as we have-- as the Burbank Tenant Union has mentioned multiple times, we are advocating for a particular rent cap, and we're also trying to present what it looks like for tenants right now, which is right now, the maximum is 8.8. Starting August, it's gonna be 8.9, and we just find that unsustainable. So with me, I just brought this little chart just to show you what it's going to look like for the next time. Like, when you rent either a one-bedroom apartment for the following 10 years-- this is what it looks like right now. So as you can tell, that by year nine, if you're still living in that unit, your rent has doubled, regardless of improvement or not. That is just frankly unsustainable. This is what it would look like if someone says that we wanna reach some point in the middle between what we're proposing and what is currently stated. But also, this is what it would look like if there were to be a rent cap of 3% or 60% of the CPI over the course of 10 years. If you would like to take a look at that while I say the rest of it. Also, I do want to address a speaker before me who was talking about Oakland. I don't know if you know this, but Oakland has a 3% rent cap, and starting August 2024, it's going to be 2.3. So yes, we have also said multiple times that it is important to continue building. It is important to build more housing. We do have a shortage for housing. That is very necessary. But that cannot be the only solution because, number one, that is not gonna happen for the next few years, and that doesn't help the people that are losing their housing right now. So we are looking for solutions to stop the bleeding, as some have said, that take effect immediately. We do not have the time-- tenants do not have the time to wait a few years until those units are built. Not to mention, those units that are built, which I hope that are suitable, are not going to be protected by the current state law because they would have been built after 1995. We need to take that into consideration, meaning anything that is built, we need to have guardrails that will be there to protect the tenants that are there right now. With my last 35 seconds, I didn't get through everything that I said, so I just wanna keep saying Free Palestine. However, I do wanna just paint a foreseeable future if things keep going the way they are going. The way that things are going right now, eventually, you're gonna end up with a lot of Burbankians living in their cars, working multiple jobs just so they can afford to live in a 30-day rental if things keep going the way they're going because the way that things are going are unsustainable, and they will not be able to afford the rent, let alone-- let alone the security deposits and whatnot. I wish I could have been better with my verdict, but I'll leave that for now. Once and always, thank you for your time. I know that I said a lot. I appreciate what you're saying. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Julio Jaramillo, followed by Dustin Blankenship.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Julio Jaramillo, 50-year Burbank resident, renter, homeowner, and now a housing provider. And I'm glad the last speaker put up that visual. I think he's borrowing from my MO here. But if you looked at it, the rents were lower than rent-controlled LA, rent-controlled Santa Monica, rent-controlled Culver City. So Burbank already has some of the lowest rents in the city. But what I wanted to talk about tonight was the public outreach. You guys need to continue that public outreach. You can't rush this because of the pressure from one select group that wants you to get something done before November because there's an election coming up. That's not your job. You are the-- you work for the entire city of Burbank, and you need to look at all the constituents involved, all the stakeholders involved in this. And so there needs to be deep outreach. You need to be very, very careful about a survey because a survey is a poll. And what have we learned in polls over the last three or four presidential elections? They're worthless. It's a snapshot in time. It doesn't tell you anything, and it depends on how you phrase the question. I know the tenants' union gets a lot of people here because they put up a flyer that says, "Are you tired of getting rent increase? Come-- they might as well put, 'Come get free rent,' and people are gonna show up. I mean, you say, "Go get free rent at-- or free gas at Costco, and watch how long the lines will be." But if you ask the proper question to the homeowners and to the people of Burbank, "Do you want fewer businesses in our city? Do you want fewer jobs in our city?" Because when you put in rent control and people stop building, which is what will follow, then every restaurant you see, every business you see are gonna have fewer and fewer constituents and residents in Burbank that are gonna patronize those places, provide jobs for these people. And I think we gotta get our arms around-- we're not solving the world's problems here. We're solving Burbank's problems. And last time, I heard five or six, seven people come up here and complain about, "Well, animation's down, and I can't afford my rent." Hey, then blame China, or Taiwan, or Japan, or wherever the animations go in Disney, and where they're going seeking cheaper labor. That's not the housing provider's responsibility. We have enormous amount-- again, that chart was great because if you look at what the housing costs of the 3%, 5%, and 8% for the housing provider, you might as well add 11%, like Harry mentioned about the City of Burbank, and insurance, everything else. Our costs are doubling every two to three years, not every nine years. So you gotta look at the balance of this. I got 10 seconds left. God bless America. God bless Burbank. Thank you, guys, for everything, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Dustin Blankenship, followed by Andre Dionisian.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Dustin Blankenship, a Burbank tenant for more than eight years. Tonight, I wanted to comment on the discussion paper regarding outreach for a potential rent cap in Burbank. I feel that this timeline is just too long. Inflation has not been decreasing. This year's state cap on rent was a whopping 8.8%, and in August, it will be even higher. We don't have the time to wait until the end of the year. I know this council has expressed the want to hear from more residents. I mean, isn't that-- I haven't been doing that for a year. Every single time this comes up for council, there's people out the door trying to comment. You've received hundreds of public comments. You've received thousands of emails. I feel like you've already heard from us. You know, but if you feel like you wanna move forward with this, I would say I urge you to just approve the telephone survey. Reject these listening sessions and online surveys. As stated in the paper, the telephone survey is the only proposal that has any statistical accuracy. If you want data, let's do that. Let's come back-- not before the new year. Let's come back in two months, three months, and make a decision on this. We elected you, the council members, to lead this city and make decisions for its residents. Now is the time to lead. And just to add at the end, just tonight, LA County passed a rent stabilization proposal with the caps proposed by the Burbank Tenants Union, so all unincorporated parts of the county will have a 60% of CPI with a 3% ceiling yearly rent raise. Let's not get left behind. Let's do this now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. My last public comment card for the general public comment period is Andre Dionisian.
Good evening, council. First of all, I would be remiss if-- small thing that's bugging me from the previous commenter-- inflation is technically going down. It doesn't feel like it because prices don't go down, but the rate of inflation is trending down. But moving on, I wanted to speak to an incident-- a car accident-- that occurred this morning, right in front of Lancers, where I was having breakfast. And I watched as two vehicles collided with one another. And from my view and from what officers were mentioning at the scene, it looked like it was due to speeding. Now, the streets directly in front of Lancers are wide. They are not new to the concept of speeding. We have numbers that show unsafe driving practices in these corridors. And, you know, we can have a conversation about how amazing our responders were. By my watch, I think PD was there in about two minutes. Water and power was there-- oh, yeah, there was a hydrant that exploded. But water and power was there just 30 seconds after that, and then the fire was there in about three minutes or four minutes. It was pretty impressive. I don't think anybody died from that accident, which is great. But moving forward, as we're embarking on Vision Zero or as we've rebranded Safe Streets Burbank, I think it's imperative that we don't treat these accidents as isolated incidents of one individual acting recklessly, but rather probably symbolic of some roadway design problems that, you know, there might be something structural wrong with the way these corridors operate and are designed that are inducing or at least making it more likely that these kinds of incidents occur. So my ask to you is that next time there's a conversation about Vision Zero or Safe Streets Burbank, that the council also include in that discussion considerations Streets Burbank, that the council also include in that discussion considerations to not only have these incidents under the purview of the Police Commission, but that a report be sent for speeding-related accidents of note to the Transportation Commission and to not only allow but encourage the Transportation Commission to review areas that are repeatedly seeing these kinds of accidents in pursuit of our Safe Streets Burbank plan. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have now completed in-person general public comment and will be moving to our call-in public comment. For callers, just a quick reminder, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and be sure to take your phone off of speaker mode when you deliver public comments so that we can hear you loud and clear. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers?
At the moment, we have 12.
Okay, let's send the first one through.
The first caller is Patricia.
Hi Patricia, you're on with the City Council.
Thank you. Dear City Council Members, my name is Patricia and I am calling in today to strongly urge that you put a ceasefire resolution back on the agenda. President Biden said that an Israeli invasion of Rafa was a red line. Last week, the Israeli military struck a refugee camp in Rafa which was designated a safe zone that killed at least 45 people and injured hundreds more. These were families sheltering in tents, tents that were set on fire from the bombings. Nine-year-old Omar Hamad witnessed his father being burned alive. Can you imagine the trauma that these children are going through? Netanyahu claimed that the Rafa bombings was just another tragic mistake, much like the mistake when the Israeli military killed three of their own hostages who were shirtless, waving white flags and shouting in Hebrew, or the mistake in shooting of the little six-year-old Hind Rejab. And let's not forget the shooting of the seven World Central Kitchen aid workers that were targeted with three different strikes on clearly marked caravans. Israel has lost all credibility and we know that it is Israel that has rejected nine ceasefire deals even though the US urged them to accept it. Israel cannot slaughter over 15,000 children and call it self-defense. Netanyahu wants total destruction and ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people. I want to take a moment to talk about what's happening in the West Bank where my family is from. In the last eight months, Israel has killed over 500 Palestinians and imprisoned 9,000, some of which are children. The media never talks about how the Palestinians in the West Bank live under a brutal military occupation. Do you know what it's like to be denied your most basic of human rights? To have to go through numerous checkpoints and roadblocks to get to work or school? To be enclosed by an ugly apartheid wall that runs 440 miles long and is 30 feet in height? To be terrorized by Israeli settlers living on stolen Palestinian land? Israeli tanks and bulldozers enter their towns with the intent to destroy homes and businesses? I have watched Palestinians being tear gassed, beaten by Israeli soldiers, stripped to their underwear with their hands tied behind their backs and even blindfolded. We are here to stop a genocide and ask the City of Burbank to be on the right side of history. A ceasefire is what is desperately needed to stop the violence.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Kate.
Hi Kate, you're on with the City Council.
Hi, Council Members. Between 20% to 25% of Burbank is rented single-family homes. That's from your own 2019 study. That means about a quarter of the city are renters exempt from AB 1482. I would like to know why rent eviction assistance from Home Again LA has been defunded. For the renters in single-family homes to qualify, they now have zero financial assistance from the city since they do not qualify for the three-month relocation in Apartment Woods. The time for the city to act on no-fault eviction is now, not November, not January, but now. Stop the bleed. You have five years of renter and housing data from the city. Action is required. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Madame Queen Searls.
Hi, Madame Queen, you're on with the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz and Vice Mayor Nikki Perez and Anthony Constantine, Council Members, Zizette Mullins and, I hope I get your name right, Kamala Takahashi. Did I say it right? Ah, I've been practicing it, but anyway, and to the City Manager, I'm addressing my issue to you all, but before I do that, let me just take one second to just say that I'm touched so much by what's going on with the war. I try not to even listen to it that much, but since I'm on City Council and hearing about all of this and the children, it's touched my heart so much. And I just pray by the name of the Creator, Yahweh Almighty, God of all gods, Lord of all lords, that Yahweh Almighty, in the name of His Son, original name, Yeshua, AKA Jesus, please do something to end and cease this fire because hearing about this, I wanted to go on mute, but I had to listen. It makes my issue seem so small, but the, you all can address what I'm calling you for very simply, and it's just so that the BTEC Rental and Utility Assistance Program is streamlined so that members of the community who are already vetted through the Burbank Housing Authority through either the Section Aid or through the Permanent Supportive Housing Programs do not have to be subjected to these forms that will breach confidentiality and expose sensitive information and represent an invasion of privacy, including having to submit your bank statements, social security numbers, all of those things are already done. And if you've already gotten ILEAP, the Assistance Program through the county, why is it necessary with all of these data breaches that's going on for some of the most vulnerable citizens to have to give BTEC or the volunteers at BTEC their confidential information with their banking account, numbers and things that are the number one reason that we have data breaches? So I'm asking you to look into that and that's why I asked the City Manager because he'll probably be the one that has to look into it and just streamline that process immediately if it's just $100 toward utility. And then also, in light of the fact that this month just passed with Mental Health Awareness Month, we need to add back the.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time, Madam Queen. Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Lilith Jimenez.
Hi Lilith, you're on with the City Council.
Hi, my name is Lilith Jimenez. I am calling today as a disappointed Burbank resident. I attended my first council meeting some months back in hopes of finding a place where my words could be heard after previously feeling ignored by my state representatives. But somehow, even after attending these city council meetings, either by phone or in person, I still feel ignored by the political leaders meant to represent me. I was given false hope by City Council when we were told a ceasefire resolution was going to be agendicized in May, and now we find ourselves in June with no action from the council. A ceasefire resolution is the bare minimum and most neutral stance for someone to take, and somehow it is being seen as controversial. There is a genocide happening. If you say you stand for peace, then a permanent ceasefire is the only way to achieve it right now. You probably hear the word ceasefire a lot these days and have begun to forget its meaning. So here's the definition. The term ceasefire literally means to cease firing. It can be defined as a suspension of acts of violence by military or paramilitary forces, usually resulting from the intervention of a third party by Oxford Public International Law. It is important that Burbank call for a ceasefire because since October 7, 2023, the United States has enacted legislation providing at least $12.5 billion in military aid to Israel, which includes $3.8 billion from a bill in March 2024 and $8.7 billion from a supplemental appropriations act in April 2024. Put a ceasefire resolution back on the agenda today. Also, on another topic, as a Burbank renter, 8% is too expensive as an annual rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Raj Kamal Singh.
Raj, you're on with the City Council.
Hi, my name is Raj Kamal Singh and I've been a Burbank resident for several years. I'd like to call on City Council to put the ceasefire resolution back on the agenda. It's been incredibly disappointing not getting any motion from the City Council towards calling for a ceasefire. It says those City Council dancers around the subject instead of tackling it head-on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Caleb Carr.
Caleb, you're on with the City Council.
Hello, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez and members of the council. My name is Caleb Carr and I'm a resident of Burbank. Alongside many others in our community, I spoke at the May 21 meeting to demand that Burbank pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, following the lead of many other cities in Southern California and across the nation. And I was disappointed and frustrated to hear that it had been removed from the agenda. I've received mixed signals from the city about why this decision was made. Some officials told me that there were too many other pressing issues on the agenda. Others seemed to indicate that there was some sort of security risk involved in even discussing this proposal, but I've been unable to get clarity on the nature of that risk if in fact there is one. And all the while, as the City Council continues to drag its feet, children and families in Gaza are being slaughtered by war criminals wielding American weapons. Burbank's cowardice on this issue will be a stain on its history forever. Members of the council, I implore you to make this a priority and stand up for what is right. Put a ceasefire resolution back on the agenda and end your silence on genocide. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Cheryl Weaver.
Hi Cheryl, you're on with the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Nikki and the rest of the council. My first comment is I wanted to thank you all so, so much for the Declaration of Pride Month. I am excited and pleased to see that the council continues to support that. And Nikki, thanks so much for the shout-out for Burbank Pride. That was, that was pretty nice of you. Why I'm really calling though is regarding the agenda item regarding a survey about rent Many, many speakers you've heard have talked about the doom and gloom if you don't do a rent cap and rent control. Hey, I've got some great news for you. Being a local realtor representing both landlords and tenants, Burbank on average has dropped 5% on average in their, their cost of rent. I should also tell you that Burbank has lower rent than any other area around us that has rent control. We are lower than Pasadena, lower than West Hollywood, lower than Eagle Rock, Los Feliz, Silver Lake, Hollywood Hills, North Hollywood and Atwater Village. So I would say landlords and tenants are doing a good job of keeping rents low here in Burbank. When we started talking about this many, many, many months ago, the council had talked about robust outreach. Well, there was robust outreach. It was called Measure on the Ballot and that reached the public and the public unanimously, well not unanimously, but very loudly said no. As we start talking about robust outreach again during this council year, we've seen one roundtable. That to me is not robust outreach. And now you're talking about a survey. A survey is not outreach, it's leading or misleading questions. And it's leading those questions to get the result you want in the end. I highly, highly encourage the council to listen to as many, many Burbankians as possible. I think a number of people do have a very strong opinion about this one way or the other, and I think that you will get the answer if you continue to have conversations with the people of Burbank about whether or not rent control will work or not work. My experience has been is that having no rent control leads to the lowest rent in the neighborhoods around us. So thank you so much for your help and continue on all your good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Gabriella Ambrees.
Hi Gabriella, you're on with the City Council.
Hello, City Council. I am calling to once again demand a ceasefire resolution be added to the next agenda. Truthfully, I was disappointed by the reasoning given as to why it was removed. Constantine cited security concerns after visiting the encampments, so you should know that any and all violence came from Zionists and police, not the students. We cannot allow Zionists to bully us into surrendering. You say you are concerned for your safety and the safety of the council. I want you to think of those in Palestine, in Rafa, right now, and how scared they are. Innocent men, women and children, not knowing when the next bombs will come, if they or their loved ones will be the next martyrs. Think about those still trapped under the rubble. Think about those dying from starvation and thirst and disease. You all have the power to add to the city's voice as a growing list of those standing with Palestinians. I hear so many excuses that this isn't our fight or that it won't make a difference. The Palestinian liberation is tied to all of our struggles and all of us united can make a difference. We are here as your constituents begging for something to be done. The more cities that join a call for a ceasefire, the more pressure we can put on our government to stop bankrolling this genocide. It makes me sick to know that my tax dollars are helping to fund it, and the longer you refuse to put this resolution on the agenda, the longer this continues. It is not just my money, but the money of everyone in this room, the money of everyone in the city. We all have blood on our hands. We need for this to stop. We need you to put the ceasefire resolution back on the agenda and put it up to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Catlin Brinsley.
Hi Catlin, you're on with the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez and Council Members. I'd like to first just express my support for the ceasefire. It's not why I called in today, but I definitely am in agreement with the callers who have spoken before me. I'm calling this evening as a member of the Steering Committee for the Burbank Community Gardens. As you know, in April, we co-sponsored an Earth Day event with the Sustainable Burbank Commission, which was very well received by the community. We had over 100 participants. We had city departments like the Burbank Recycle Center, the Burbank Water and Power and the Library join us on-site at the Community Garden at Chandler and Pass, and it was a celebratory and wonderful community building activity. These are all volunteer efforts where you have members of the community coming together to share information about environmentally sustainable lifestyle choices. I'd like to speak in support of the $15,000 line item for the Sustainable Burbank Commission. I think that budget will be well spent to engage and connect our community in a truly positive way. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Susan.
Hi Susan, you're on with the City Council.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. I speak as someone who's been both a renter and now a homeowner who lives in a community of neighbors, of renters and homeowners, and I support the positions you took on April 23 council meeting regarding rent caps and further evaluation. That night, you were very clear thinking about the numbers of stakeholders, about the need for robust discussions going forward to engage a broad range of community members, both landlords and tenants. On April 23, council spoke clearly to robust inclusion of community. Now I understand that you will be considering a move to shorten engaging the community fully in discussions about any rent cap and that you want to speed up the process through a survey. I hope that if you're using a survey, that isn't what you think community engagement is. Any discussion must include mom and pop, mall building owners, all the garden apartments that are located all over Burbank. It certainly isn't fair to them to speed up the process without deep consideration of their involvement and their stake in this as well. As you know, Burbank as a whole voted on rent control previously. Measure RC was the proposed rent ordinance and quite rightfully, the whole city was afforded the opportunity to vote. The pros and cons were argued, the entire community was engaged, and people knew the full extent of the proposal and its cost. So I hope, I know that this is election time, I hope that you will continue to take a very democratic approach to the issue. Surely you're concerned enough that you want to hear from every stakeholder and will not limit your consideration without hearing from as many as possible. The discussion is very rich. As I listen to it, I hear the various concerns, and I care too. This is my community. I hope you will go the extra mile to include robust participation for the sake of both tenants and landlords and deepening the feeling of community here in Burbank. I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Rosalie.
Rosalie, you're on with the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. I was very surprised to hear that you are now considering walking back your prior support for a robust public outreach to our community regarding input on rent control. That's something that politicians do, not public servants, especially for our mom and pop landlords. They need to be at the table in a meaningful way because they will be the most directly affected. You know, we haven't had a robust outreach yet, and I'm looking forward to it because I have been on both sides of the issue. And we all know, and we all need, I'm sorry, we all need to know the cost of pain for the administration of rent control. Burbank voters voted on rent control as a city, and we had all kinds of information available. That information included how much rent control would cost. That needs to be done again. So I'm asking you to please follow through on the significant in-person outreach to all folks, owners and tenants, because you need to listen to all the people. We are a representative democracy, and in a representative democracy, it is we, the people. I also want to say that I support the ceasefire that must be done immediately, and I also, for God's sake, why isn't the city protecting the city employees? That's shameful. Do that right away. They must be protected. These are very strange times. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Sarah Eggers.
Sarah, you're on with the City Council.
Good evening, Council Members. I am joining the voices of my many comrades this evening and calling to demand that a ceasefire resolution be put back on the agenda. And my reason for doing so is simple and straightforward. I'm a mom of three, three small children, and I know that this issue, when they are older, they're going to ask me, what were you doing when there was a genocide taking place? That was being funded with our tax dollars. What were you doing? What are you standing for? And I know that is a big reason why I, that's a big reason why I am standing for an end to the violence and a permanent ceasefire. And I also, you know, I know that additionally, people will be asking, Burbank, what were you doing as a city when this genocide was taking place? And I really wonder if you want to be known for being silent among, among your other, the other cities that took a stand in a moment like this. So I think it's a moment to kind of ask yourself why, you know, why you are in politics, like do, am I doing this, you know, because I want to stand for something and I want to do what's right? And it is clearly a moment where that is what is required. So I, that's all I have to say. I think it's pretty simple. I think we need to make this an agenda item immediately, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller would like to remain anonymous.
Hi, you're on with the City Council.
Hi, I would like a ceasefire resolution on the agenda as well. Nearly eight months of reckless murder of Palestinians is too much to not put on the agenda, and it's been lied to the residents that it was going to be on, and you just push it back. And you've done that also with rent stabilization as well, which is what I also want to talk about. 8% is too high for the residents of Burbank. Burbank is a renter majority. One of the number one causes contributors of homelessness is the lack of affordable housing, and that's according to the 2022 LA County Annual Affordable Housing Outcomes Report. The research is out there. We need to protect renters in Burbank, and we need a lower rent cap that matches with the wages and inflation that renters are facing. So I want a ceasefire resolution on the agenda, and I also want City Council to stop pushing things back that they don't like, and I want things to be addressed sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Adam.
Hi Adam, you're on with the City Council.
Hello, City Council. I'm calling to ask that you re-agendize a ceasefire resolution. This is not, despite what you may think or may have heard, a complicated. This is not, despite what you may think or may have heard, a complicated issue. The American war machine doesn't have the privilege of saying there is a gray area here. They never did. We have been living comfortably in the gray area for hundreds of years and failing to do the bare minimum for the people we have seen displaced against their will and violently murdered. It is hard not, it is hard to not feel more than a little cognitive dissonance when your country tells you that racism and genocide is a thing of the past while doing Netanyahu's bidding for ethnic cleansing. Netanyahu stated recently that he would only contemplate a hostage negotiation if it was good for him politically. That is absolutely disgusting and should tell you exactly where he stands. Don't be compulsive against the genocide. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
That was our last call.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and for participation. There being no further public comment, I now declare the general public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from the council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Colleagues, before we begin, as you all know, we have an extensive agenda tonight. I do not say what I'm about to say with any intention of chilling your response or your speech, but I just want to let you know, I'm endeavoring to finish the meeting, I was endeavoring to finish the meeting by midnight. We're already half an hour behind, so I only say that to keep in the back of your minds as we respond to comment and as we go through discussion this evening. So with that, would anyone like to begin?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, Mr. McDougal.
I would like to just say, with regard to Mr. Dionysian's comment, I request that the council refrain from making any comments regarding traffic accidents or speculation as to the condition of the roadways because we're in litigation over this issue.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Anyone else like, yes, Mr. Hess.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I do have a few things, just to piggyback off of the city attorney. On July 16th, we do have an update on our safe streets, so we'll bring you back more information related to that next month. One of the initial speakers talked about an issue at Reese, on Reese, and code enforcement is following up on that matter, so we are aware of the address and we are following up on that. As far as signage related to coyotes and equestrian verbiage, we could certainly look into that, so that's something that we could follow up tomorrow with. And then I'd also like to have our Library Services Director, Elizabeth Goldman, come up here to talk about the safety concerns related at the libraries.
Great. Welcome, Ms. Goldman.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, members of council, Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director. First, I want to acknowledge the feelings of anxiety and fear expressed by some city employees and members of the public. Safety is a top priority, and the library is working constantly as part of the city team to create a safe and peaceful environment for both staff and the public. We do have minor incidents at the libraries a few times a week as people from all walks of life navigate the shared spaces. The vast majority of our incidents are nonviolent and involve people raising their voices, interrupting each other's work, or protesting staff requests. Only about once per year do we have anything on the scale of the incident described in the article that involved a smashed restroom mirror at the Northwest Library, and that individual has been arrested and is being prosecuted on felony charges. Like every library in the country and every public-serving organization and business, especially retail and air travel, we have found both staff and the public are more on edge and likely to react strongly than before the pandemic. Combined with societal forces, that means we're seeing more expressions of mental illness and addiction in our public spaces, it does present challenges. I attended a national conference on library safety last spring, and I'm sorry to say no one has figured out the answer to all of this. However, I'm confident that we are holding our own in terms of resources and best practices. I just want to give you a non-comprehensive list of some of the ways in which we are supporting the staff. In the short term, we want to thank Burbank Police Department for allocating resources so that there can be a more visible police presence in libraries in the coming weeks. All supervisors and managers, including myself, make time regularly to listen to staff, answer questions, provide guidance, and help process incidents, although we cannot always give people the answers they're hoping for. We have arranged for regular onsite presence by a counselor from the city-provided Employee Assistance Program, making it easier for staff to receive counseling and coaching after incidents. We thank the City Council for supporting extra library monitor positions in this current fiscal year, as well as the ongoing social worker position. We expected our social worker to work exclusively with the public, but she has been a tremendous asset in providing staff with coaching and tools on subjects such as de-escalation, setting boundaries, and coping with anxiety. We continue to invest heavily in training, including a three-hour online course on homelessness in libraries that every staff member takes, which also comes with monthly new content from the provider. We ensure staff have time to attend trainings on this subject from our state and national library organizations, and we're in the process of contracting with some highly recommended trainers for additional onsite training later this year. We work interdepartmentally and through partners to get onsite support, connect needy individuals with resources, troubleshoot challenging situations, and pursue legal remedies as required, including the Police Department, the City Attorney's Office, the Community Development Department, Street Plus, the BPD Mental Health Evaluation Team, and Home Again L.A. As noted in the article, there is a delicate and complex balance here. We have to consider legal principles, our professional values, which include not discriminating against anyone based on our perception of their sheltered or mental health status, and whatever safety might mean to each individual, and that is a wide range. I am acutely aware of the stress that these challenges cause for staff at the library, as I know my colleagues are for employees across the city. We are working every day to make the best decisions possible to support wellness and opportunity for our staff and the public alike. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Mullins, brief question?
Yes, I do. How are we going to address the security camera issues and make sure they are activated, at least to provide some sense of security for the staff?
There is a citywide physical security project that is, that has, all the departments are collectively working on, and that will resolve the security cameras.
We're going to follow up, and we'll provide you, we'll send you a response, and we're going to try to get that done as soon as possible, so we'll, and we'll report out back to you.
I would appreciate that very much, because I think it's something that we really need to move forward and look at, and it can't, I'm aware of the security citywide, but we need to do something immediately to try and to help out with that. Thank you.
Any other requests or questions for Ms. Goldman, since she's up here? Yes, Councilmember.
Well, not specifically for Ms. Goldman, but on a related topic, I'd like to ask the city manager. Again, I've asked this previously. City employees, as stakeholders in the city, they're allowed to use the three-minute public comment without fear of retaliation for their jobs, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Goldman, I don't have a question, but Mr. Hess, if I understood you correctly, it sounds like you're developing a strategy and timeline to implement enhanced safety measures, not just at the library, but across city departments. I'd like that information, specific to the library, sent home on the earliest feasible timeline, preferably end of this week or next week, if we can do it.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Goldman, for the update. Okay, Mr. Hess, was there anything else from your end? Councilmembers? Yes, Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to the Tournament of Roses Association for the Mayor's Trophy Award, the best award. And thank you to Turner Roses Association member and key to the city recipient Janet Deal for mentioning my award from Disability Rights California. I'll talk about it a little bit later in the meeting tonight. Thank you to the Leadership Burbank Class 2024 for their Cause for Pause Project, and the Pride Month Declaration, what is, it's awesome to do every year, and I just wanted to give a shout out to our Vice Mayor. So I am a board member on PFLAG, and I talk often with folks in the LGBTQ community. They are very excited to know that you are a member, a representative member of this city. It gives them a great feeling to know that there's someone on this board that can speak to that issue, so thank you for being you. Oh, and lastly, we talked a lot about the ceasefire. At the end of the meeting, there is a section for additional agenda items. If you want us to pay attention.
So you can save that to the end.
I'll save it to the end.
Thank you. Councilmember Mullins, you're going for the mic.
I want to echo what Councilmember Anthony said, so we can move quickly. I do appreciate you. I had a lot of checkmarks here, so thank you for giving an update on all these items. Congratulations to everyone again, and we're going to address the issue that was talked about here regarding the budget and tenant protection during the item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Takahashi, anything? Nope? Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I'll just be quick. Thanks for everybody who came and spoke. Thank you for your comments. I'll address what I can at the agenda item, and I won't speak to the Gaza issue only because I know that's on the table, and I can't do, talk about that.
All right. Thank you all for coming tonight and for giving your public comment. I'll try to give a brief response. I'm only going to address those who have not, in my view, previously have received a response from staff or from council. To Mr. Uziel, our first commenter, the short answer to your question, sure, sir, is yes. The city manager does not respond to the mayor or to one council member. They respond to the council acting as a body. That is typically done in meetings, and if you have further questions about the city manager's contract or anything, you're welcome to call me, you're welcome to email me, I'm happy to meet with you in person. Number two, Mr. Rizzotti, Ms. Garcia, you don't need to come up here, but I thought that there were some good observations and suggestions made, so if we could follow up with Mr. Rizzotti and see what we, what of those suggestions we could maybe do in the course of this year's programming, that'd be great. Thank you. Mr. Dunsweiler, Mr. Kozak, I just want to thank you both for coming down. I see at least one of you here. I want to thank you for taking the time to share your questions and concerns. I look forward to receiving that information on the earliest feasible timeline from the city manager and seeing what more we can do. So thank you. Mr. Scroggs, I think you're still here. Thank you for the suggestion about 90 seconds as opposed to one minute. The council this summer will actually be talking about how we handle public comment in general, so I'll save my response to that to, in about a month or two, and we talk about our comprehensive approach to public comment. So, but thank you for that suggestion. Mr. Tumirian, I think, was here, he may have left. I just, Mr. Tumirian, I want to thank you for your comment. There was one thing you made that I just wanted to slightly correct. You were talking about utility rate increases, and I believe you talked about a five-year rate increase proposal that was approved by council last year. That's not, in fact, correct. We're on a two-year cycle, so last year Burbank Water and Power approved rate increases for the last fiscal year and this fiscal year, and then next year's council will be talking about the next two-year period. So I just wanted to clarify to our residents that we have not greenlit rate increases, you know, for the next three years. That will be decided by the next council. Almost done. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, I'm not going to comment in any great length on the ceasefire matter because, but what I did want to say, Mr. City Attorney, in a narrow procedural sense, is that I know some of you are asking for a motion tonight regarding a ceasefire resolution. You've compared the city of Burbank to the city of Los Angeles. City of Los Angeles operates a little differently. It's a different structure of government, but city council members can literally prepare a motion, have it introduced through the city council president, and that's how an agenda item gets on the floor. City of Burbank, that's not how we operate, that's not our operating procedures. The way that it works instead, and I want to give credit to Councilmember Anthony, he did several months ago, request this agenda item. It has been on the work order, and so that is the proper way to get an item onto a calendar and for consideration by the council. There is no mechanism for one council member to introduce a motion without the accompanying agenda item. I know that's a lot of information that I just shared, and I'm happy to provide more clarity to anyone who'd like to know offline, but I wanted to just clarify that there is, in fact, an item outstanding. Councilmember's going to address it later, and the specific request to introduce a motion tonight would be, in my view, in noncompliance with the Brown Act and out of order based on the guidelines and procedures of the council. So thank you, everyone, for coming down. Anyone else? Okay. With that, we have our consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have seven items on consent tonight. Item one, approval of the city council minutes of the joint meeting of May 21st, 2024, and the dark meeting of May 28th, 2024. Item two is approval of the successor agency minutes of the joint meeting of May 21st, 2024. Item three, approval of the housing authority minutes of the joint meeting of May 21st, 2024. Item four is approval of the parking authority minutes of the joint meeting of May 21st, 2024. Item five is adoption of a resolution adopting the updated rules and regulations governing utility service. Item six is approval of a parking permit agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Burbank and Greater East Valley to provide two months of discounted staff parking at the Courthouse City Public Parking Structure. And the final item is approval to accept $115,000 from the Los Angeles County Aging and Disabilities Department, one-time-only funding to contracted elderly nutrition program Older American Act Title III C-1 and Title III C-2 services and amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mullins, second by Perez. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. Now is the time and place for the hearing on the proposed budgets for fiscal year 2024-2025 for the city of Burbank Housing Authority, Parking Authority, and Successor Agency. So, folks, this is our public hearing. If you would like to comment on this item, you do have the option of doing it in person or by phone. If you'd like to participate by phone, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Again, you will be placed in a queue until all in-person public comment has been completed. We will, again, offer one and three-minute public comment periods. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
They have.
Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, sorry, correspondence, emails, and other documents? Can't forget those other documents.
You have everything, yes.
Will Ms. Jennifer Becker, Director of Financial Services Department, at this time, please summarize the matter for us?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Schultz and members of the city council. I'm Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department. I'm here tonight to present you for adoption the fiscal year 2425 citywide budget, citywide fee schedule, and GAN appropriations limit. As you well know, the budget process involves months of effort on the part of staff, followed by several weeks of city council review. So before we move to adopt, let's take a look at where we have been so far. Four weeks ago, we presented to the council an overview of the proposed citywide budget for fiscal year 2425.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
I'm so sorry to interrupt your presentation.
No problem.
Please go on. Ms. Clark, please note for the record, Councilmember Takahashi had to leave. It's approximately 8:14 PM. I do not anticipate her returning. We still have a quorum with four. Continue, Ms. Becker.
Thank you. So four weeks ago, we presented to the council an overview of the proposed citywide budget for fiscal year 2425, as well as an extensive review of the general fund. We looked at the economic factors impacting our city revenues, reviewed our fee schedule changes, and did a department-by-department review of proposed appropriations. The city council took the opportunity to ask some thoughtful and detailed questions of staff and requested follow-up information on several budget items. That same evening, we did a presentation of all of our enterprise funds, including Burbank Water and Power and our Public Works Sewer and Refuge Funds. We returned two weeks later, on May 21st, with a review of each of the city's Internal Service Fund and Special Revenue Fund budgets, along with the Housing Authority, Parking Authority, and Successor Agency budgets. Additionally, we presented the city's proposed capital improvement program, where Mr. Berkman from Public Works discussed the proposed CIP projects for the coming year, as endorsed by the Infrastructure Oversight Board, along with an update on the progress of our existing capital projects, which will be carried over as part of tonight's report. And lastly, we reviewed several discussion papers that were requested by the city council as part of the budget process. And now we're back tonight to request your approval of the entire proposed budget and fee schedule for the 2425 fiscal year. So let's return to that summary chart we presented at the very beginning of our budget study sessions. Our total citywide proposed budget for fiscal year 2425 is $869 million and change. This year's citywide budget is comprised of 32 different funds, with our BWP Electric and Water Utility Funds making up the largest portion of our budget at 44%, and the general fund is the second-largest section of the budget at 30% of the overall total. New budget appropriations for fiscal year 2425 were prioritized based on their adherence to the city council's established goals for the year. Now, during the May 21st city council meeting, council reviewed discussion papers on a number of different topics, at which time the council directed staff to incorporate several of these items into the budget. Those items have been included in the proposed budget numbers we are presenting this evening, and include interpretation services for city council meetings, the Housing Enforcement Unit, a Business Concierge Coordinator position, the Cultural Affairs Supervisor position, the Metro Go-Pass Program for BUSD students, the Leadership Burbank Funding Request. the Leadership Burbank Funding Request, a two-year community event and program pilot program of the Burbank Pride Inc. Family Pride in the Park Event. The total recurring impact of these revisions to the budget is $953,000, and the one-time impact is $227,000. I should note that CDD identified a non-general fund funding source for the Metro Go-Pass program, so that will be funded out of our AQMD Transportation Fund for the coming year. Additionally, at the May 21 budget review, the city council requested two further follow-up items related to the budget. The first was the Sustainable Burbank Commission Funding Request for a recurring $15,000, and the second was the expedited survey and public outreach of a potential local rent cap for a one-time appropriation of $100,000. These memos are included with the staff report before you this evening as Attachment 9, and we are requesting that the city council provide direction as to whether these amounts should be included in the adopted fiscal year 2425 budget. So, before we proceed with our final budget decisions, let's take one last look at our general fund five-year forecast. Factoring in the discussion papers that have already been approved by the council, the budget we are proposing for adoption this evening projects a $1.3 million recurring balance, which represents roughly half a percent of the general fund operating budget. That balance drops to $700,000 in fiscal year 2526 and begins to turn slightly negative in year three as projected expenses grow at a faster pace than projected revenues. In the meantime, of course, our forecast is based on what we know today, and staff will return to the council throughout the year with regular financial updates as the circumstances surrounding our economic assumptions continue to change. Unfortunately, as part of this budget, the city council approved an expansion of the pension funding plan, approved as part of last year's budget, which will help mitigate those projected deficits in the latter years of our forecast. To review again, staff is proposing to make additional discretionary payments to calpers of $9 million in fiscal year 2425 and another $4.5 million in fiscal year 2526. Roughly 66% of those one-time dollars will come directly from the general fund, with the other funds matching their proportionate share of the cost for the miscellaneous pension plan. Additionally, as part of this budget package, we are recommending that $6.4 million be contributed to our Section 115 trust in accordance with the city council's pension funding policy. We estimate that the total three-year commitment of this plan will result in cumulative recurring savings to the city of $3 million annually, and about $2 million of that will directly benefit the general fund. So, in addition to the proposed budget and fee schedule, there is one more item before you for adoption this evening, which is Burbank's annual GAN Initiative Appropriations Limit. The city is required by state law to establish an appropriations limit each fiscal year. Only those revenues received from proceeds of taxes are subject to this limit. All other funds that fall under the city's council control, such as general fund user fees, enterprise fund revenues, and interest, are exempt from this limitation. For fiscal year 2425, the city's appropriation limit is estimated to be $267,350,291. The actual amount of appropriations contained in the budget that is subject to the limit is just over $186 million, for a difference of over $81 million. As a result, Burbank's budget is in accordance with state law, and we are well below our appropriations limit for fiscal year 2425. So, in conclusion, the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget maintains the premium level of programs and services the Burbank community has come to expect, and also provides enhancements in specific areas that address the city council's goals and priorities. It provides a robust citywide capital improvement program in keeping with the promises we made to the community as part of Measure P. It not only funds the city's required pension liabilities, but includes additional one-time discretionary funding towards pensions, which will generate recurring budget savings and offset future projected deficits. And lastly, the budget fully funds our formal reserves, which will go a long way towards insulating the city from any future economic downturn or other unknowns. I want to thank the city council for their thoughtful deliberations and decision-making throughout this budget process. We are fortunate that the fiscal year 2425 general fund recurring budget is balanced and leaves us with a significant projected cash balance, which makes Burbank the envy of many other cities in the region. And I cannot conclude this final presentation without recognizing the incredible amount of effort put forth by my team with the preparation of this year's budget. I'd like to thank Deputy Finance Director Leanna Kirchen, Budget Manager Joy Escalante, Revenue Manager Susan Langford, and Analyst Nathan Laitel, Kathy Hara Mio, and Kristin Perez for doing an outstanding job throughout this budget process, along with all the other staff in financial services, BWP Finance, and all of our city departments that helped produce the budget that is before you this evening. And with that, we recommend that the city council approve the resolutions adopting the budget for the city Housing Authority and Parking Authority, as well as the citywide fee schedule and appropriations limit. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Becker. I think you can go ahead and grab a seat. We're going to now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who'd like to address the council on this matter. Each person may address the council for either one minute, if that's what you've opted for, or up to three minutes, otherwise. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon, or I call it pink, public hearing card to the city clerk if you wish to speak. Salmon is what I eat. It's not my color, but anyway, it's okay. For those wishing to call in during general public comment, if you haven't already done so, please call now at 818-238-3335. You will be placed in the queue until all in-person public comment has been received. At this time, we'll begin public comment period with one-minute comments, followed by three minutes. So, for the one-minute comments, I have two cards. First, we will hear from Frankie Glass, followed by Eddie Pollan.
Sorry, I froze my seat. My name is Frankie Glass. I'm a longtime resident of Burbank. And is this... Is that better? My name is Frankie Glass. I'm a longtime resident of Burbank, and I'm fortunate in that I am a plot holder in Burbank's first community garden at the corner of Parsons and Chandler. So, in April, as a joint venture between the Community Garden and Burbank Sustainable Commission, we produced an event for Earth Day, and it was actually the first big public event that we've held at the Community Garden. About 100 people came through the garden gate that morning, many of them for the first time, and they were able to learn about sustainable gardening practices, and their kids could also discover the value of protecting the natural world through games and storytime readings. The support and guidance of the Sustainable Commission in the months and weeks before Earth Day took our event to the next level. Their leadership and management skills are second to none, and I was surprised to learn that they do it all on a shoestring without regular financial support from the city. So, I want to really support the recurring funding, the line item of $15,000 that's in the...
Thank you for your comment.
...in the budget.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We have Eddie Pollan. That will complete one-minute public comment. In the queue will be our first three-minute commenter, and that will be Mr. Ron Backs.
Good evening, council. My name is Eddie Pollan. I am speaking tonight to applaud you funding the Go-Pass program in the next year's budget. It's a great tangible demonstration of our support in the city for public transit. I urge you to follow up this good works by directing staff to work with Metro to implement dedicated bus lanes for the BRT project coming through, and to speed up our efforts to rebuild the Olive Avenue Bridge. I think we have a huge opportunity, especially with Burbank Boosters moving to Sacramento and also to Washington DC, to bring in the funding that we need to do a major infrastructure project that's going to serve our city and help us build for the future. So, I think we have a great opportunity, but council needs to continue to act on this and to direct staff, again, to specifically work with Metro, to implement dedicated lanes, because they're not going to do that without council directing staff to do that. So, it's very important not to drop the ball and let it, because I worry that Metro wants to be a good partner and that they're going to back off from this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. That completes the one-minute public comment period. We're now going to the three-minute period. First, I have Ron Backs, followed by David Kosichian.
Good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Mullins, for returning. I was hoping you'd be here. I have attended every city council meeting since January 31st of last year, except one. So, when I reviewed the record of the last meeting from 11:52 PM to 12:10 AM, where the majority of the city council professed the belief that outreach had been accomplished, my reaction was 20-point font, capital R, capital E, capital A, capital L, capital Y, six exclamation points. I remember the kickoff meeting, January 31st, and the study session AB of 1482, the emergency ordinance of September, the roundtable in January. That was not the format Ms. Mullins had requested. I was going to scour the city council meeting records to confirm my memory, but found I did not have to. The staff report of April 23 lists those and only those. It failed to list the meeting about a year ago, where many housing providers spoke at public comment, only, in my opinion, to be chastised by city council for speaking at a meeting where rent control was not on the agenda because the council had important business, approval of the budget. I have observed staff being very good at meeting commitments. Pat Prescott committed to returning today with a revised outreach plan. I scoured the agenda multiple times, looking for it. I scanned backwards. I searched for keywords and et cetera. Had no luck. I heard it was Attachment 9 of Item 8, but when I opened it, I saw Public Works. Clearly, this wasn't it, because he's community development. Surely, that could not be it. So, I thought it must be 8 of 9. Somebody was dyslexic. I'm dyslexic a little bit at times. But alas, no. I finally went back to the attachment and found it to be pages 3 through 13. What is also mysterious is that pages 1 and 2 have the header Attachment 9. Pages 3 through 13 do not. Are they orphans? Is there an effort to hide? Now, I understand why when I asked for the point of order, why you didn't understand, because it's buried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Backs. Appreciate your comment. Next, we have David Kosichian, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, council. David Keishen here. The Department Associations of Greater Los Angeles strongly supports outreach by the Community Development Department for all policies currently under consideration by the city council, including rent control, rent stabilization, increased relocation fees for no-fault evictions, anti-harassment, anti-retaliation, and funding private attorneys to represent renters and owners in at-fault evictions. We are confident that with proper outreach, the city council will find that the community at large does not want these expensive, hostile, and destructive policies. Agla is strongly opposed to all such policies, as they will drive more mom-and-pop owners out of business that are already struggling after years of unpaid back rent and moratoriums. These policies will only add additional costs for housing providers trying to supply affordable rental housing with these older buildings that require much more expensive repairs and maintenance. These properties are an essential form of housing for many low-income families. Draconian policies, such as an industry-wide price cap in the form of rent control, will force small, independent, multifamily owners to go out of business, and their properties will be sold to corporations to be converted into luxury units with much higher returns on investment. As such, these currently affordable properties will be lost to existing renters as well as future generations of renters. These policies will also create additional barriers and a hostile adversarily tone between renters and owners that will work against their ability to reach mutually acceptable resolutions in a cooperative manner. Instead, we strongly support that all funds currently budgeted for legal representation, $65,000, instead be used for rental assistance based on income qualifications of renters. According to StayHoused LA, more than 80% of all evictions are simply due to non-payment of rent. Thus, it makes far more financial sense to help renters pay for the housing they are receiving rather than enriching private attorneys to merely argue about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And was it Mr. Keishen? Is that how I say it correctly?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the mispronunciation. Mr. Donahue, but before you begin, Ms. Clark, for the record, I'll note that Councilmember Anthony left during that general public comment. He is anticipated to return. We still have a quorum, so we'll proceed on. Mr. Donahue, you'll have three minutes, followed by Andre Dionisian.
Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and council members and talented staff, my name is David Donahue. I'm a Burbank resident, homeowner, and business owner. I'm commenting tonight regarding the rent cap and the survey and the comments that have been made by council regarding the outreach that has happened to date. I think that the comment that was in the minutes or the report from the last council meeting show that they want to have a robust community outreach. Robust, in my opinion, actually relates to what's happening now with the Burbank Media District's specific plan. They are now on their seventh public meeting. Seven. It came out today on the email. It says, "Hi, welcome for number seven." Having a survey that only goes out specifically to the geographical area, which I understand was proposed, Mayor Schultz, only within the Burbank... If it is that's the case, it will disenfranchise, in my opinion, the housing providers that own property here in the community and are not able to be engaged. That's where... And I just have to read this. For the Media Districts is, "Join us for our seventh public workshop, which will focus on the draft-specific plan. The workshop will include formal presentations that will introduce and provide overview of the draft plan, followed by a period of time to ask questions and provide feedback to ensure new development is compatible with and enhances the existing neighborhood and character." This is what I am imploring you to do for the housing providers, as well as the tenants, because there's one issue that I think is fundamental that has not been addressed, and that is the cost that everybody kind of keeps talking about. I talk about it. You know, they're asking for a 3% rent cap. Mr. Pinellas, he had a very nice chart, but let's dive into that data, because I would argue that the cost that the housing providers are going to incur is significantly greater than percent that they're asking for. To be able to have the presentation, for example, and I've said this to you many times, Burbank Water and Power is going to have to increase rates at a significantly greater level. Yes, Mr. Mayor, you said that there's only been an allocation for two years? You're right. But with the study and the analysis that is being done by BWP and what they're going to be proposing to, and everybody's going to have to pay, is going to be a significantly greater number. So, if we could have that kind of metrics, I really believe we can kind of move the conversation forward. I really ask that you do not do a simple survey that could be easily skewed. I think with the last couple of seconds, I want to point out to the fact that I do believe, even though I believe, I understand there is case precedent or opinion precedent by the FPBC, that you should recuse yourselves if you're a renter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Andre Dionisian, followed by Elizabeth Backs.
Good evening again, council. So, I am a member of the Transportation Commission. I am not speaking on behalf of it. I wanted to join my friend and colleague Eddie Pollan on thanking council for adding Go-Pass to the funding in this budget. Burbank Unified is going through a tough time right now. We all know this. And these quality-of-life line items, which, you know, to the city budget might not be very significant, $40,000, to Burbank Unified, to the students that it will affect, is a game changer. So, I want to wholeheartedly thank council for their position on this item, for bringing it, and for championing the advancement of public transportation and transportation alternatives in the city of Burbank. On that note, I would like to urge council to fast-track the Burbank Bus reassessment and reconfiguration, which has been in the works for a very long time, and I know city staff is doing their due diligence with that project. However, it is crucial that we get the future of Burbank Bus down on paper as soon as possible, so that we are able to meet the coming growth in our community from new units that are coming online, and, hopefully, by students utilizing their Go-Passes. So, thank you very much, and that's all.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Elizabeth Backs, followed by A.L. Garcia.
I kind of don't want to speak right now. Good evening, council members and staff. I'm Elizabeth Backs, and part of the reason I don't want to speak right now is because you're not all here. You weren't all here the last time, and you're going to make a decision on something when you're not all here. And I got the impression that you guys were going to discuss this proposal, and it sounds like... like you're not even going to discuss the new rent cap proposal, the reach-out that you plan to do. On April 23rd, it's obviously been made, I mean, I can't even say what I wrote in here, because it's, I'm so frustrated. On April 23rd meeting, stakeholders from the tenants and landlords were present because there was a discussion or a potential landlord intent, on potential landlord and tenant Tonight, you've buried it so far that the only people that are here are the people that dug far enough to find it, to find that it's different, to find that it's not outreach. It's not enough to just, just, it's not transparent. I don't know what questions you're going to ask. I don't know who you're going to ask. With the outreach that you started with, that got presented by the staff, everybody was going to, it was all going to be in public, in town halls, and not just one place. Y'all got to show up at the one place. And if you can't show up, well, we'll get you notes, maybe. See how, how that is the true outreach of Burbank, the community, not the city you all seem to try to be creating here with all your tall buildings and everything. And the people that are going to suffer are not just the tenants. Some of the people that are going to suffer are the people whose buildings were not built before, that were built before 1995. Not all these high rises you're building, to get paid, charged $3,000, $4,000, and $5,000 for rent, that all these tenants that are complaining about can't afford. That's not affordable housing, is it? Is that affordable housing? No. There's maybe 15 houses in a whole bunch, a stack of built, of house, of apartments. Not, not enough to cover the people out here that need good housing at a good rate. Where's that? And all you want to do is some little survey that we all know nothing about, that we won't know how it was done or how it came about. There's no transparency. What are you looking at? We don't know. You're just going to make it all by yourself. We want to be the stakeholders that know what's going on, not that you just make the decision and we have to live by it.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm scared.
Next, we have A.L. Garcia, followed by Shott Norhadian.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me okay? This is close enough? A little up? This is good? Perfect.
Just lean a little bit more to the mic. That's great.
There you go. Okay, I can hear it. Good evening, City Council. First, I'd like to reiterate what many have said tonight. Please put a ceasefire resolution back on the agenda. We need a ceasefire now. Secondly, I am a tenant in Burbank that is suffering from your inaction. Do not listen to the stalling attempts. As you know, and as has been stated previously, there have been members of the public lining up out the door and staying until 2:00 a.m. to voice that we need stronger tenant protections. You must act now. I have lived in my unit for almost 10 years. I have a beautiful backyard with a lovely, big box elder tree, and a fence that is lined with purple morning glories. Every morning, I look out the window and I see the wildlife that enjoys my yard, the squirrels, skunks, opossums, and even little bunnies. This view will be no more as my landlord is tearing it down along with my garage to build ADUs. I'm losing amenities and 1,000 square feet of my unit, and because we do not have strong enough protections, I am unable to file a rent reduction petition with the city. And because we do not have a rent cap, my rent will continue to increase. In a year or two, I will be unable to afford to stay in my home of nearly a decade. Inaction is action. Inaction is complicity. I hope that you consider that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Shott Norhadian, followed by George Juro.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, members of the City Council, Mr. City Attorney and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you again tonight. My name is Shott Norhadian. I'm a proud resident of Burbank, and I work for a local, family-owned housing provider. The last four years have been challenging for both housing providers and tenants. I do not think there are any disagreements there. The costs of everyday goods and services have substantially increased for everyone, and none of us are immune to cost increases, including housing providers. If the City Council were to proceed with commissioning the proposed survey, then I would expect that the council members would ensure that the survey questions are prepared and administered in a manner that is neither leading nor biased, and that the survey results are statistically significant. Additionally, staff's memorandum indicates that it is important to have a robust community outreach process to ensure widespread engagement. I support staff's position and would encourage that the proposed survey, as well as the community listening sessions, be inclusive for all Burbank housing providers, even those who are not domiciled in Burbank, as well as carpenters, electricians, gardeners, plumbers, repair technicians, lenders, and insurance carriers, as they too are all stakeholders and will be impacted in this matter. Lastly, it is important to note that the housing affordability challenges that are currently faced in the city of Burbank and statewide were not caused by the housing providers, but rather by demand and supply imbalance caused by the lack of new housing supply. And yet, the housing providers continue to be wrongfully targeted and viewed as a scapegoat to resolve the affordability issue by both the City Council and my friends on the other side of the table, who have consistently endeavored to infringe upon the private property rights of housing providers by advocating for additional regulation and confiscatory rent control legislation, neither of which, by the way, will reduce rents. Ultimately, the question that the City Council has to answer is, should individual housing providers have to bear public burdens, such as the cost of shelter affordability, which in all fairness and justice, should be borne by the public as a whole? I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Oh, we made it so far. Jazz hands were great. George Juro, followed by our last comment card, John Juro.
Hello, Council, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, esteemed members, staff. Thank you very much. City Attorney, thank you very much. George Juro, degree in economics, real estate attorney, that doesn't matter. Okay. Before 2019, was there a rent cap? There was not literally a explicit rent cap, but there's always been a rent cap, which is the market rate. Because if you increase rents beyond market, the tenants are free to move. Tenants are not forced to stay with a rent increase. They can move to another apartment. Before 2019, since the beginning of time, the prices have been set by the market with supply and demand, and there's a reason for that. There's a reason why we don't have centrally-planned economies. They fail. And the socialist economies are actually less resourceful. They actually live a lower quality of life, even though the government is more active in regulations, including housing regulations. Okay? The supply shortage has been caused by your predecessors, prior councils, and initiatives such as Measure One, which in 1990 limited the building of new housing. And now we're in a renaissance. Let me go through the history real quick here. In 2019, AB 1482 was passed, imposing just cause protections and rent control statewide. There's a keep-up and a catch-up. The keep-up just keeps up with CPI. The catch-up allows somebody who's below market to catch up to market. And remember, you can't increase rents 8.9% if somebody's already at market, because then you get a vacancy. 2020, and what does that mean? Let's talk about that. What does that mean? That means that when people complain about an 8.9% rent increase every year, they're basically saying that they've been receiving a discount for years and years. Okay? 2020, COVID-19 restrictions made it very difficult to collect rent and enforce the lease agreement. Measure RC was defeated by 33,000 votes plus, more than I think any of you have received, although you are some high-vote getters. 33,000 votes against Measure RC, which is a form of a survey, if you think about it. 2021, inflation affects both tenants and landlords. Not only are the rents going up, but the insurance premiums, commodity prices, salaries, wages, taxes, utilities, contractors, interest expenses. In 2022, interest expenses increased dramatically. The housing supply now is starting to increase for the first time since the '80s, and the rents are starting to moderate and slightly decline. In 2023, this council passed the Urgency Ordinance Relocation Assistance. I'm going to cut to the chase. This is the third rail of politics in Burbank, and you need to have some extensive community outreach for this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you to everyone using the jazz hands. Love to see it. Our final in-person public commenter this evening is John Juro.
Thank you all. Appreciate it, and thank you for your service on the Council, Honorable City Manager and City Attorney. I did a little survey on vacancies of office buildings in Burbank. Almost 3 million square feet of vacant space in this town. We need to do something. We need to revitalize Burbank. We need to bring people, people back into town. We need to revitalize businesses and get this town organized. And focus on the real economic problems is that we're faced with big economic problems that are macro problems. So I just bring that to your attention. The rental market is soft, not only in office space, but everywhere, in residential. So I want to say quickly, I support the City Attorney's proposal for mediation program, local guidance, code enforcement, legal guidance for indigent tenants and owners as well, and granting for low-income needy people. I'm in favor of outreach. I'm in favor of fair, neutral, comprehensive, and thorough outreach and survey. That's the only way we get the real facts, and including people who are out-of-town residents who own properties here in Burbank. They should be included in any outreach and survey. I was viewing the budget, the city. We need to run a proper city. What does that mean? That means that we have to increase city employee payroll, replacement, reserve for replacement equipment expenses, including insurance that the city pays, utilities that the city pays, police-fire protection, public improvements and so forth, parks and everything. It would be ludicrous to suggest a 2% or 3% or 4% cap on city budget. What would happen to the city? How would it run with a 2% or 3% cap? That wouldn't work. And I don't think apartments or housing providers could run on such a low amount there. Insurance just went up between 30% and 60% in reality. Insurance companies are pulling out of town. They're pulling out of the state, and those who have left are charging 60%. Just want to bring that to your attention. Thank you very much for your service again. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you to all of our in-person public commenters. Ms. Clark will now move to telephonic public comment. Do we have anyone on the line?
We have one speaker on the line.
Great. Send them through, please.
The first caller is Madame Queen Searls.
Welcome back. You're on with the City Council.
I'm concerned about the community development, and I believe that there's one point that we're overlooking that we need to sincerely address, and that is the mental health that would relieve some of the issues that are happening at the library. As the Director, Madam Goldman, spoke and said, a lot of people who have mental health issues, they do come to public places. Now, we used to allocate money to BTEC, and BTEC had, at one point, two mental health counselors there, and they stayed open until at least, I think, 4:30. Now they're closed at noon. They have no mental health counselors, and this is affecting the whole community at large, and even Essentia, who receives funding through the permanent supportive housing. I don't remember the line item, but this was talked about a couple of weeks ago in the budget, that there's money from there, and you partner with Essentia, and they're reducing the mental health therapist service. And when people are given pills in place of people therapy, you get what we're seeing here, and you can look it up. In Sacramento now, they're even giving free alcohol to homeless individuals that have problems. Now, what sense does that make? Someone found out and it was leaked. If I find the link, I'm going to email it to you all. And so I'm just praying that somewhere in the budget, we reinstitute the services that you could get at BTEC, Essentia, because when people have, Laquisha Rima was the counselor, if it was not for her, I may not even be housed right now. You could go in and see her once or twice a week. I've seen her quail pandemonium and get people in line, just her presence and her authority and command. She's a, a, a mental, she dealt with mental health and counseling at BTEC, and that shouldn't have been closed during COVID. They stopped the counseling. It could have been on the phone, and this is when we needed most. And so I'm praying that somehow we, we help and restore resources for people who are dealing with mental health issues so they won't gather at the library. Thank you. I know that's my time, and thank you very much, and I just pray that you do something about it.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller? That's all we had? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for staying to this late hour to provide your comment. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment portion of this public hearing closed. Would the representative of the Financial Services Department, or any other department for that matter, like to make any further or responsive comments?
I think most of the topics discussed will be addressed during your deliberations, so I'll refrain from any additional comment.
Great. Thank you very much, Mrs. Becker. And Mrs. Becker, you're welcome to answer your questions at the podium or from the seat, since we have a mic there, whatever is easiest. Colleagues, just noting, we still have a quorum, so we'll proceed on. Let's begin with questions. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Councilmember Mullins, you're reaching for that mic.
Well, it's either him or I, so I--
Well, I'm always going to pick you.
I'm going to go ahead and, and--
I admire your perspective.
Well, thank you. I do have a question, and I don't know if to ask it of Council or staff, but I'm going to go ahead and ask my question. In looking at this report that was presented to Council for today's meeting, I understand from the previous meeting on May 7th, the meeting, I was not here in attendance, I watched the discussion, and I noticed Council changed the direction that we have given staff a prior meeting on April 23rd to move forward with a robust outreach to the community to be able to come back and determine what we're going to do with the rent cap. On May 7th, the meeting, that we continued our discussion on that, staff was also bringing reports back in regards to how are we going to move forward with robust discussion, robust outreach? And we did not address anything at that meeting that we're going to move forward with only a survey, and perhaps having a community meeting that we, or a town hall meeting. I think the mayor said, and I was up at 4:00 in the morning listening to you talk, saying, "Well, I'm willing to stay there for five hours, and I'm going to be there for the public," which I thought it was great that we would do that kind of outreach. So I want to ask, what was our purpose moving forward from a robust town hall meeting? And I'd like to really wait for the Vice Mayor to come back also to address some things that we talked about, because I think it's only fair for her to be part of this discussion. But if you want to, I don't know--
I can filibuster.
--staff want to do it? Go ahead and do it. Go ahead.
That's right, John. I can filibuster pretty darn good. So, here's what I would say. I think that what we discussed at our last several meetings-- I think that what we discussed at our last several meetings, I agree with you, robust public outreach. The question is, we've never really discerned for the public what robust public outreach looks like, and I think that's definitely what we're going to discuss tonight. So I'm trying to stall a little bit, because I would like the vice mayor to be part of the discussion, but Mr. Hess, do you have any brief response to the council member's question before council responds?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The initial discussion was put together, a public outreach, robust, similar to what we've done with the districting. So when we had a couple of weeks to prepare that, that's why the original request was roughly around $200,000 to do a really robust outreach, similar to what we did with the districting, and I don't have all the elements in there, but a lot of the same elements that we had with the districting were going to be incorporated in there, is also similar to the outreach we did on the single plastics. So we brought that back during the previous... The following meeting, it was determined that we wanted to... The council direction was to come back with a survey and try to streamline that timeline, so it was only... Was just going to be the survey plus a town hall meeting or two. So that's what we did as far as a report as an alternative for tonight. So it's council direction. We feel there needs to be some sort of robust outreach. Clearly, it's the council's direction, though, as far as exactly what we do and what we appropriate, as this is a budget discussion, what the appropriation is going to be. We could always come back to you with details if you'd like, but that's kind of been the progression of the debate.
Great. Thank you. And then, Councilmember Mullins, I'll just offer a brief supplemental now that the vice mayor is back, and then if you want to continue with your questions, I think that'd be great. As one of, if not the primary driver for the change in discussion at the last meeting, my concern, and with all due respect to staff, the way I interpreted that report was essentially, let's spend $200,000 to hire a consultant to develop a plan. I just didn't think that that was... Well, that's the way I took the report. I felt that what came back, and we can certainly discuss its adequacy, but I felt that what came back tonight, although the point from public comment is well-taken about the lack of ease in finding it online, regardless, I felt it was much more detailed. I felt the timeline was more comprehensive, and regardless of what we do tonight, that's the level of detail I was looking for in the original report. So part of it was really just a desire of, if we're going to spend $200,000, let's get a real clear metric of what we're going to do in the timeline. So hopefully, that gives you some answer.
It sounds to me that maybe there wasn't a clear understanding, or perhaps staff did not provide enough information to what the public outreach will be like. The $200,000, and I don't know what was that going to look like, but I want to move back. I'm going to kind of take us into timeline of what we have been doing.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember, if we can do questions first, if these are questions?
These are questions, but they're kind of like, I need to go through the timeline. So going back again to April 23rd, when we heard from staff in regards to what other cities have done, and we had a lengthy discussion, and it was late or early mornings, and we talked about what I can maybe perhaps shed some light to what it means to robust outreach. As the city manager stated, going out for districting, we did a robust outreach. We had several community meetings. We had a lot of input, a lot of things that were provided to us, the plastic ordinance, the media district, the BRT. I think this council has taken pride in everything that we do to involve the community. And I want to use a quote, and I applauded the council vice mayor Perez for her statement on April 23rd, where she said, "I want to hear from our mom-and-pop owners who do not speak English. I want to hear from the tenants who do not come to the meetings because they're either intimidated or they don't have the time to be here. I want to do a community outreach, a robust to reach everyone out there. I want to hear what they have to say." I said it in my own words. Mr. Mayor, you said it in your own words. You went back and said, "We need to have conversation. We need to provide housing for the... Provide housing for our community. We require more work in this area," and the area was, again, the rent cap. Councilmember Takahashi said, and I know she's not here, but she can hear this on TV, "We did such a great job in community outreach with the plastic ordinance, and we need to do the exact same thing for the rent cap." So having all these discussions and having a report on May 21st on Attachment 1, Page 1, that basically said the steps that were supposed to be provided by staff to council was to do extensive community outreach on potential local rent control cap based on the robust outreach program envisioned by multiple community meetings, periodic council reporting, and other communications. Staff has determined the communication consultant will be necessary. So I think my question is, where have we missed in all these conversations that we've had? The directions that we provided to staff? The reaching out to the mom-and-pop who do not speak English? The reaching out, as we've done with our districting? I am really lost with words to know, why did we change? We have been talking about this for months, actually since January 2023, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for requesting the timeline from staff, because we all received it this afternoon. And I see that we did a lot of things. So I'm going to leave this during deliberation, talking about it, but I'm asking the question, where have we lost the communication that on the last meeting we had on council, we tell staff, "We don't want to do outreach. We want to do a survey. Bring it back fast. We want it July, September, and by November, we should have a final decision." Where did we go wrong that we're now we're saying, let's be subjective on a survey that we're going to do, it's going to... Depending on how people feel that day. So I just need to hear from council or from staff to what happened.
Okay. So staff, any initial response from you?
I would say, with response to where our target was, and I was looking for the $200,000 budget discussion paper, but basically, the districting outreach was eight community meetings, some online, some at libraries, rec centers, CSB 104 during the farmer's market. So I don't have the language at my fingertips at this moment. I can find it. But we were thinking structured, different locations, different times. There was a question by vice mayor, because at those events, we had many of the same people come to some of the same sessions. So that was some of the discussion that happened at the last meeting. We didn't really get into what could we do differently to increase participation, and that may go to the mayor's comment about, you know, whether we would do things differently to reach mom-and-pops that don't speak English, et cetera. But the proposal, if we were doing robust, like districting, it would be, I think we spent $200,000, and then staff took over, or we spent $150,000 with that vendor, and then staff kind of finished up the effort. That's where we came up with around $200,000. So we would... It would be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight sessions, different schedules, different formats, but we might want to have a different... We might have, if council were considering that approach, a different outreach strategy to get different segments of the community.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Any other staff response? No? I'll add a brief response myself. With all due respect, Councilmember, I disagree with the premise of the question. I'm going to respond narrowly, because I think we're getting awfully close to deliberation, and I want to save it for that point. But I will just say this. My concern was, A, expending $200,000 with what... What I'm hearing tonight is a much more clear, structured plan, and actually makes a lot of sense. That is not what I gleaned from the report with sufficient detail. The other thing I would say is, I am concerned about, I'll be very frank, those wanting to run out the clock on this year. I'm not prepared to do that, not on an issue of importance to the community. I have no problem expending any amount of money and doing this robust outreach in the next 90, 120, 150 days. I know we can do it. It's a matter of prioritization, and of course, clarity of, wow, we're going to spend the funds. So that's my brief response to your question. I'd love to engage more, but I think we're getting close to deliberation. So if we can continue with questions, primarily for staff, doesn't have to be, if we can try to direct just questions, then let's get to deliberation. Yes, Councilmember Anthony, and then Vice Mayor.
So I have a couple of questions. One, directly following up on that change on the outreach, the request from council that day to change the outreach and to go out to the community for a survey and, I believe, a town hall, did we include eviction protections in that conversation?
Or had we already covered that in a previous...
So we're bringing that ordinance back.
Okay.
We already have a draft red line that we're working on to bring back in July.
July 16th, 2024. If you're paying attention.
Yes, on the regulatory changes that council's already provided.
So then, I guess, it's the same answer. Are we going... Are we doing outreach on anti-harassment laws?
We also received direction from council that will be in the ordinance.
And then... Councilmember? Councilmember, if I might. I'm sorry, it was brought to my attention that in response to Ms. Mullins' question, the vice mayor had a brief answer. Would it be okay if she answered?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were... Yeah, so, Councilwoman Mullins, I was watching the meeting while I went to the restroom. Always can multitask. And I wanted to make sure I answered your question, since you specifically addressed me. My major concern is not about the type of outreach. I wholeheartedly disagree that a survey is not a form of outreach. In fact, it's in the very definition, but my concern is more the timeline. We had members of the public come last week and specifically accuse staff and this council of trying to run out the clock this year, saying, "We elected members of..." You can watch the public comment. "We elected members of this council to resolve this issue, and you are not working on it. You are kicking the can down the road." We have emails saying, "You are kicking the can down the road." And you know what? The worst part is, I'm seeing them from our mom-and-pop landlords and from our tenants. And this week, we saw emails from our mom-and-pop landlords and our tenants saying, "I don't want to see this survey. I don't want to see more outreach. I want you to resolve this. I want a conclusion." That was my concern. And the city attorney brought up that we were really mapping this after the districting, right? We had taken some guidance from there. Our districting timeline was March, April, June. We had to bring things quickly, and I know there was reasons for that.
Less than 180 days, if I recall.
Yes, less than 180 days. And so when I look at this, if the original proposal from last two weeks ago, which I also agree with the mayor, was not substantial, was for $200,000 and went through December. That's not appropriate when we have people asking about this every single meeting, and when I requested something, as you all mentioned, at the beginning of 2023. That is a long time. So from this council member's perspective, it was quite frankly, the timeline for me. And I feel that staff can do something in a different timeline. That's my concern.
So I know there will be follow-up, but I really want to save deliberation for deliberation. So Councilmember Anthony?
Just to answer your question.
I'm going to hold it to deliberation.
Boy, it's going to be fun tonight, folks. Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, so...
You have the floor.
We're still... I'm just still in the middle of these questions here. Mr. McDougal, through our discussions over the last few months, you've come up with a new enforcement mechanism that you have presented to us, and we are funding in this budget for tenants and landlords and housing.
If we get your votes at the end of the side.
That's what you're proposing.
Okay.
Is that part of the proposed survey and outreach in the future? We've decided on that.
No, that's...
Well, we've decided on it today, if we vote for it.
Yes. The way it's phrased in the packet came out of council's prior deliberations, and I believe it was on May 7th. The mayor said, "Just the rent caps were left because you all gave definitive direction on everything else."
Okay. And then, lastly, we discussed a little bit of the training for the Landlord-Tenant Commission and updating, basically informing them of what their duties are and giving direction for that.
So that's in the budget discussion papers before you tonight.
And that is not part of the proposal to do the further outreach? So none of that is...
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So I'm just laying the foundation in these questions, because I want to get to deliberation.
Can I...
Separate... Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. I wanted to add on to the vice mayor's comment about what gets wrapped up, and it's a clarification for council's consideration. And that is, once the outreach is done, staff will take direction from council as to whether or not they want a new ordinance. Council also requested cost estimates, right, which have not yet been provided to council. The ranges of what other cities pay was in the April 23 staff report, and council had asked, what would a Burbank program cost? So we'd have to make some assumptions. But there are procedural due process provisions that also have to be devised. The state law provides, requires, a fair return to housing providers. And so, once we provide greater rent protections than are in the Tenant Protection Act, the 5%, not more than 5% plus CPI not to exceed 10%, the city has to provide those, and that requires a structure to be able to conduct hearings. And the costs of participating in that process, the landlord's costs of participating in that due process, presenting an appeal, whatever, also get rolled into their fair rate of return. So what I'm saying is, we can... We'll do the outreach. We'll take direction from council, and if that direction involves a local cap that requires procedural due process, we'll have to develop that as well. So there would be a whole second step, and as someone who's engaged in trying to deliver on the council's work program, I wouldn't call it running out the clock, but everyone is entitled to due process in this, and so there will be more time required to deliver on whatever further direction council gives.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Anthony?
Yes. I do want to talk a little bit about the Sustainable Burbank Commission funding request, the $15,000, and there, it's being proposed a $15,000 recurring. What... Can we go just through a little bit about what that is and what that's going to be spent on?
Would that be Mr. Berkman, perhaps? With the dapper tie. Welcome back.
Ah, just a regular black one.
Ah, you wear it well. Let's hear you.
All right. Honorable Mayor, council members, thanks for the question. So we've been working with Sustainable Burbank Commission for years, since I got here. They're a very passionate group, as you know. They want to get a lot done. The goal which we've achieved was to have them execute a work plan, identify their top priorities, and they've done that. And each year, after we've talked with them about possible budget requests to further the goals of that work plan, Earth Day was certainly one of those. So we wanted to provide the level of detail similar to what staff provides to council when we request positions or program enhancements or budget requests to you. We didn't have the opportunity to do that with them this time, but we're going to do that better next time. For this request, to put it into the Public Works budget, will allow us the chance to also work with purchasing, you know, finance purchasing, and the city attorney's office to see exactly what they want to do with the money and report that back to you and make sure it's all being done properly, and we can have the details of their expectations with the groups that they listed, for example. So there is some work to be done, but we're excited to get that opportunity to work with them and deliver an Earth Day event with them, also in consideration of the events that... The great events that Parks and Rec do and that BWP does as well.
So just to clarify, we don't know exactly what they're spending it on, but I know the request mentions possible expenditures, rental and setup costs and insurance for events, and permit fees, and marketing, and signage, and that kind of stuff. Just, I'm trying to... Just, I'm trying, I'm trying to lock down more of what you think the money would be spent on. Do you feel like 15,000 a year, would the vast majority of that be for those event expenditures? Or is there other things? Like what percentage are we talking? And I mean, I know it's hard to predict, but can we give some ballpark? Just of the 15,000, what do you think percentage wise?
Through the mayor, respectfully, I cannot. And that's exactly the point that I would have liked to have worked with them a little closer to bring those details to you. But I, I know we can do that. And I believe the memo, we would bring back a list of those expenditures and exactly what we want to do with them, with them.
Mr. Berkman, Mr. Mayor, if I might?
I'll cede the floor to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I was at the liaison, one of the liaisons, and I know Councilwoman Takahashi would speak to this if she was here as well. The Sustainable Burbank Commission had a very robust discussion. And yes, to answer your question, it is mostly the events. The members talked about even something I didn't know, they front a lot of the costs as members of the community for these events. And they went through a list of their Earth Day events, events they have done with the garden, with the walk bike Burbank with, and I can go down the list of different organizations. There was a recent bicycle event with the Eco Council. And, and all of these include permitting costs, include insurance costs, et cetera, that our Sustainable Burbank Commission members have been fronting or have been seeking outside support for. And so they would like a grant to be able to do this kind of activity. They cited the Arts Commission as an example of the types of events that they have for the community. And so that was really the discussion. And in their letter, which we all received a copy of, they, they cited some of the events that they've held as the main reason. So really that's, that was the focus.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me rephrase my question then. I'll go to the city manager. When there's an expenditure, what, what dollar number does it have to reach to get to your desk for approval? All right, I'll ask finance director.
Most of the departments have oversight over their own budgets. Any expenditure over $10,000 have to goes, has to go through some sort of competitive process per purchasing ordinance. So?
And that's, that's a single expenditure?
Correct.
Okay, but we're looking at $15,000 recurring for the year on a bunch of smaller items?
Yes, so most of that would be handled on the department level.
So our, our director here, he would have direct oversight, he would see every expenditure, he would have to approve every single line item, is what you're telling me?
That's the, that's the goal of the memo, right? That would all come through the Public Works Department's budget.
Okay, and that's part of our, what is that, our charter? Is that our ordinance? What, what determines that action?
Our financial policies. But if, if I could, if you're going to approve this $15,000, what I would recommend, if you're going to allow for an advisory body to actually spend some money, what I would recommend is for them to provide you what they're going to spend the money on before they spend it. So you have an opportunity to, to look at it and you don't have to necessarily take action on it, but if something did catch your eye, you could agendize it and bring it up as?
Do we have any other of these advisor bodies that have a budget that comes to us either on consent or for approval or?
Well, the Arts Commission or the?
So how does that work? What are the, what, what budget do they have and how does that get approval?
I see Ms. Garcia making her way to the podium.
I just want to make sure we got our checks and balances here because, yeah, sorry.
I think our checks and balances just arrived. Ms. Garcia?
Good evening, Mayor Shelton and council members. So the council allocates the Parks and Recreation Department $100,000 annually for cultural arts. Of that $100,000, I believe about $20,000, $25,000 is earmarked for the commission to spend for events. That money is in the Park and Recreation's budget, working through staff. Any expenditures the commission wants to have for their events, they will have their meeting annually, they identify what events and what their budget's going to be. And, and the expenses go through staff. So they do not have a checkbook, they do not spend the money. All of those expenses are done through staff and staff will work through all of those to ensure that it's appropriate if we have to go through bidding, which we don't. But assuming that an expenditure requires, to ensure that we're, we're following all of our purchasing policies.
And you, as the Director of Parks and Rec, do you have the final signatory sign off on those expenditures? You look at every line item and it's approved by you?
Myself or my staff? My, my, I delegate that to, to my?
But you do look at it, it comes, you, you have the ability to go through it and double check? All right. So then here's my final question. Are we able to move this item forward in a similar manner? So we have those checks and balances?
Yes.
Okay.
I should point out that Financial Services also has a process. While actually every individual line item is reviewed by somebody on my staff in terms of when we actually make the payments. So there are certain items that are just not eligible. Like Marissa, Ms. Garcia said, we couldn't just, you know, write checks to people, right? There is a process for getting invoices paid. It has to be an eligible expense under the budget. So it's not, there's no checkbook and, and really for the individual line items, there is somebody on our staff that does look at every single invoice paid by the city.
Great. Okay. I just wanted to wa, work through that for everybody at home. So we know we're not just giving out $15,000 to any commission that comes along.
And not to belabor this conversation, but I do want to point out as a council, as an extension of staff, essentially a board, they don't pay for permits, right? If there's an event at a park, for example, the commission does not have to, we will issue a permit, but they don't pay. Like so, so there are some fees that can be saved. I think one of the comments that Mr. Berkman mentioned is that there are many opportunities that through, working through staff, Parks and Rec, Burbank Water and Power, Public Works, Sustainable Commission, right? There's a lot of similar goals. And I think our, our boards and staff can really work together to ensure that we're not duplicating services. While I know that there's a lot of maybe slightly different goals, I think that there's some, some efficiency that can be gained.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate staff and council for allowing me to go through that.
Of course. I'm going to give the floor to Councilmember Mullins. Before I do, I just want to note, colleagues, we are running about 50 minutes behind my anticipated schedule. So just, just keep that in mind. Councilmember Mullins, as much time as you'd like.
Thank you. Now that you put me on notice. Gee, okay, let me see if I can do this fast.
I'm prepared to stay all night, folks. I'm in town.
I'm here all night. I'm awake. Okay. I, I do have, Mr. Berkman, I have a question for you. And I just want to make sure I did not miss what you said. My question is, did the commission actually submit a request through your department? So you can submit it through the budget process?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. No, they did not. So what was received and was taken action at their meeting was to submit the letter request to you that you've received.
And Mr. City Manager, is this our normal process where commissioners can just, or anyone can just submit something directly to council without going through the proper channel of notifying the director for that department?
Traditionally not. I think that's what Mr. Berkman was trying to say, that, that that one slipped through a public work staff. They should have kind of caught that and redirected them to talk about it with public work staff first, before it went directly to council.
Thank you. And there, and there is a reason for this process is for exactly what you were talking about, is to put it in line items and to find out where these funds are going to be allocated. And I think that would have avoided this whole conversation. And I'm going to say this on the record, that I really encourage all boards and commissions, if they're seeking funds from council to go directly to the department head or to the city manager and do not come directly to council, because there is a process in place in order for them to find out the finances of how this is, what the money is going to be spent for. So hopefully in the future, this doesn't happen. I'm not opposing they get the funds, but I'd like to have them follow the proper process moving forward in the future. And then I also, I know this is reoccurring, $15,000. What I personally like to see is the department comes back next year and let us know if that money should be allocated to be in the budget or not. That this is not an automatic reoccurring, just like as we did with the other. And I heard the discussion last week, is this, we need to know where the monies are going to be spent on? And I would want to leave that up to you, Mr. Berkman, to tell me whether we should allocate the funds or not during the budget process.
Right, understood, council member.
Thank you. That didn't take long, you see that?
Not at all. All right. Any other questions? Questions?
No, I'm just going to throw Mr. Berkman a bone to his credit. This, this was very rapid fire from the commission. And, and I have to say, I, I don't know that I've ever seen this commission act this quickly on an item that was put on the floor that day. And I believe the idea of we are in budget season created that rapid fire discussion, which staff also considered bringing forward, but I know this happened within a week for you. So thank you to your staff and to you to still try and make it happen.
Sure. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Mr. Berkman. You're off the hook for me. I have comments on item one, but I'll come back to that. By the way, colleagues, in a minute, I'll have staff throw the slide up on, on the screen so everyone can follow along. We're going to talk about the two discussion papers first to start the discussion. So we'll start with item one, which is what Mr. Berkman was just referring to. My only question, actually, Ms. Lebrado, if you could pull up slide six, this would be a visual aid in assistance of the question. The question is, I guess, Mr. City Manager directed to you. As part of discussion paper two, we have talked about an expedited survey and public outreach. Humor me for a moment. You see on this chart that in this year, 2020, this upcoming projected year, we have 2024, 2025. We have a projected recurring surplus of $1.3 million. We also have the slide graph on the bottom here of the slide indicating one-time available general funds of $5.8 million. So, Mr. City Manager, here's my question to you. It would seem to me that we have several million dollars at our disposal. It, it's a matter of time and the extent of proper outreach. I understand that staff's hands are pretty full. We have pretty full plate on our hands. So the question is a hypothetical, but here it is. Let's say we wanted to do the robust outreach that Councilmember Mullins is talking about. An expense was not an issue because I would submit, we do have one-time funding we can tap into. What would it take to get this done by, say, Labor Day, October, November? It's not as if we don't have the money.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Jonathan Jones, Public Information Office. We could earmark the money tonight, right? And we could come back to you in two weeks and let you know what that would look like to be done within 90 days, right? For districting, we keep talking about districting. So the way that worked and why that was expedited is we did not do an RFP process, which we traditionally do, right? We went out to three different vendors, we told them what we wanted and what we were looking for. And we gave them a week to respond, I believe, City Attorney, Dougal. They responded and I came here that evening and told you who we went with and we got the ball rolling quick. We could do something similar like that. So I would ask to consider if council's pleasures, possibly earmarking the money. And then in two weeks, we could come back and present something to you what that would look like.
And hypothetically speaking, what would the amount be? Would you insist on the 100,000, the $200,000 originally requested or more?
I would prefer the 200,000.
We, we could always say up to 200,000.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And that's learning from districting.
And, and Mr. Mayor, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Jones, because that was something later on I was going to mention, the RFP process does take time to receive the information and vet through the vendors. And if we decide as a body to direct staff to do something similar to what we've done with districting, I think that would definitely cut the time short by at least, I would say at least 30 days. Because you do have to notice it and you have to get the applications. So there's ways of doing the outreach without having to have the lengthy time. I think it's important that we exhaust that first. It's important that we reach the people that don't speak English. We reach the tenants that are afraid to come in here and have everyone give us their input. Because after that, there is a due process, as the city attorney had said. The other thing I would like to add is we also need to get that information to what our cost is going to be. The city, we ask staff to come back if we have similar programs such as what we have, what other cities have provided, what that cost is going to look like. So I'd like to see that as well, because that $5.8 million might be all wiped out if we have a program like Pasadena, if we have a program like other cities. I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know what's?
And we are just talking about the outreach tonight.
Yes, and I'm not sure what's going to come back, but I'm saying there's, there's a lot of things that it's a chain effect. There's a lot of things tied to each other. And so we can't do one without the other until we reach that, we get that information back.
Totally agree. Thank you very much, Councilmember Mullins. Actually, Councilmember Anthony, I'm going to give you the floor, but I actually have a question for you. This is a bit of a historical question.
Sure.
I know you were one of the architects of RC, which is not what the council is considering, but we talk a lot about elections and I'm not going to talk about any election that I have a personal tie to, but I am going to ask this. I would imagine you probably remember what the proponents of RC spent in favor of the proposition and what was spent against it. Do you happen to recall?
For November of 2020, I believe the proponents spent, I want to say $1,200. That was like mostly filing fees and clerk stuff that you had to get it on the ballot. And the opponents of Measure RC, I believe, spent just over $250,000 against it.
Thank you. That's all my questions. Other questions?
So was that because of the election, because it went on the ballot? So the city incurred the cost for the measure to be on the ballot?
No, that was not the city's incurred cost. This was?
I believe there was an independent expenditure against the measure.
Okay, so for, for going, yeah, for and against.
Yeah, the city spent a separate funding just to get it on the ballot. That was part of, yeah. I wanted to ask just one quick follow-up question. We did a community-wide survey two years ago, a polling. Did any of that polling go out in Spanish or Armenian or was it all 100% English?
It was Spanish, Armenian and English. It was all three.
Oh, okay.
Correct. And on that point, council member, in terms of the outreach, do we also, in addition, if we choose to do outreach, right, robust outreach, do we also want to do the survey? That's something to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other questions or are we ready to go to deliberation? Seeing no questions, let's go to deliberation. Ms. Lebrado or Ms. Aquino, hello. Could you, one of you please pull up slide number five to help guide the council's discussion? The first thing we'll be discussing is the proposal for recurring funding for the Sustainable Burbank Commission housed in Public Works. Who'd like to begin?
If it's okay, I'd just like to throw out one idea for council to consider. They don't have a plan yet, but I want to give them an opportunity to do this. I mean, you've seen them talking. If it's all right, maybe 120-day marker, I'd like to give the commission a good four months to have a couple of meetings, talk about the funding and come back to us with a solid, robust plan. So for me, I don't mind earmarking the money today. But, Mr. Berkman, do you, 120 days from now, do you feel the commission could give us pretty much an outline of the expenditures on what they think they could spend it on?
Councilmember, while Mr. Berkman's waking his way up, I, we could do that. I think the question is whether we would want to appropriate the money tonight. That would be one option. The other option would be to not make the appropriation tonight. And at the mid-year review, perhaps, you could make the appropriation once the commission's had a chance to submit their proposal. And you could do the other way, but the money's already appropriated, so it's at their disposal.
Mr. Mayor, me, if I can throw this out there. I am, I'm fine appropriating the funds tonight because we know if they don't spend it, it stays in the general fund. It's not going to go anywhere. It's going to be in Public Works account. And that would help bring back the plan in 120 days or four months or however you decide. But I also want to remove the reoccurring until next year with the Public Works Director coming back and ask for it in the budget. So we would decide whether we wouldn't get a move forward or not, based on what they've accomplished.
Mr. Berkman?
Would that be fine?
So I heard, I heard a couple of things, both the plan to come back with a commission's plan on what to do with that money in four months sounds good. I think we're hearing we could do this at mid-year or it's in the account now and we'll come back.
It would be appropriated today.
Right. And in four months, come back with the commission's plan. So?
Before any money is spent, they'd bring it back to the council.
And the reason why I feel that is a better way to do it, I don't want to, I don't want them to feel as though this money is contingent on them coming up with the best plan possible. I want to let them know that we support what they're doing. We just need them to put it in writing. We need them to do the due diligence of, of organizing their thoughts and, and putting the money. and, and putting the money on paper. That, that's where I feel.
Councilmember Anthony, just having, again, been at the discussion, I, I think the Commission would have loved more time to do that, but they were also advised by staff and council, reminded, like, this is budget time. Your next chance is the mid-year appropriation, which I think was their concern. They wanted to at least have a time to have a say, and, and say, hey, we'd like some money.
Are you comfortable with 120 days?
I, I'm comfortable with what Councilmember Mullins suggested, quite frankly. Approving the appropriation and then having them come back and present a more robust plan.
May I suggest, back to you by October, because they'll probably have their agenda set, I think, this month, so July, August, September, that'll give them enough time. Give us enough time to work with finance and the attorneys and make sure what they are proposing is all according with the code and everything. So, October.
Okay. And would, to my colleagues, just to clarify, would the proposal be that the Commission present its plan to us as the council or to Mr. Berkman as a department head? I, I think, I just want that clarity on the record of who they'll be presenting to. I mean-
Do you want me to go?
Go ahead. What are your thoughts? Yeah.
I personally would like it to go to Mr. Berkman. I think he's more than capable of making a decision. Instead of coming to council and having to be agendized, I leave that up to you personally. You make the decision, whether it's the expenditures appropriate, and you approve it or disapprove it, until we come back again for discussion next year.
Yeah, and we, I'd love to get a white paper once that's been approved, so that we can see the numbers.
It seems to me we have a consensus.
All right.
So, just to clarify, what I'm hearing from council is to make a one-time, not a recurring, but a one-time appropriation, freezing those funds, in essence, for a period of 120 days until a comprehensive proposal from the Commission is submitted to Mr. Berkman for approval. Is that accurate, colleagues? Okay, I think that'll do. Thank you, Mr. Berkman. Don't go too far. Now, we have number two. Ms. Librato, I guess you could just throw it for a second, but just want to be clear what we're talking about. This is discussion paper number two, that's entitled Expedited Survey and Public Outreach for a Potential Local Rent Cap in the City of Burbank. The revised proposal is $100,000. Who would like to begin the conversation? Yes, Councilmember Anthony?
So, I would like to start by reminding folks of the questions I asked maybe 15 minutes ago. We did a bunch of meetings and outreach and subcommittee meetings and discussions and calls and emails on a whole host of issues relating to tenant protections and rent control and rent regulation and apartments and all this stuff, evictions and whatnot. Over the last few, well, not just months, but it's been, it's been over a year, a couple of years.
It was first agendized January 31, 2023.
Right, this, yes, this discussion here. So, it's been a while. Through all of that outreach, we've settled on four major issues. The eviction protections, the anti-harassment laws, the new enforcement mechanisms, the training for the Landlord-Tenant Commission. We don't need to do further outreach for that. There was this one sticking point about the rent cap that we couldn't figure out. So, we had a just discussion about doing additional outreach. So, I know that there is always an argument to be made of whether we did enough outreach or too little. But you cannot make the argument that we didn't do any outreach, because we did. We know, because we got to a bunch of stuff solved that we talked to the community about, and they told us about, and we've got it on paper, and we're voting for it. My concern is that if we do the exact same type of outreach again, we're going to be stuck in the same position we are today, where we're at an impasse and only one thing left, and we can't decide. I firmly believe we need to do a different type of outreach. So, for me, this polling to do the survey is different, because we haven't done that yet. And it's also anonymous. It doesn't take time out of people's day to come down to a meeting, or specifically at a time when they're working, or they're with their kids, it's on a weekend or a weekday. It goes out into the community, it gives a snapshot in time, it's in Armenian and Spanish and English, it covers a lot of ground, and, most importantly, it is data-driven. And I think that is the key to why I believe doing this survey satisfies a lot of the checkboxes that we haven't been able to, to check off. If we do the same outreach we've already done, we're going to get the same people showing up. And that's not a problem, per se, but personally, I would like to do some real deep digging into places where people don't know that we're actively talking about this stuff. A anonymous citywide survey does that. It, it hits places that you normally can't get to on YouTube, or, you know, tweeting out that the city's having a meeting, or posting on Instagram, hey, come down to this thing that's happening on a Saturday. So, I, I'm in favor of the expedited survey. I think we can use the folks that we used two years ago, they did a really great job. We based a lot of our policies and legislative agenda on that community-wide survey. I don't think it's inappropriate to do it, because the argument that there wasn't enough outreach, I don't feel holds water, because we've tackled a number of tenant issues with the current outreach that we've gotten to. So, I'm okay moving with expedited and doing a different type of outreach that we haven't done before. So, that, that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Mullins, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. I do agree with you on some things, and I disagree with you on one thing. I, I do agree with you on, our time has not been wasted. Since January 31 of 2023, up until this evening, we have accomplished so much for tenant protection. We definitely have given, allocated funds for rental assistance. We adopted an urgency ordinance to protect the rent eviction. And then, prior to implementation of SB 567, we also adopted the 567 when it was approved. And now, last meeting, the approval of an entire, I believe it's three-quarter of a million dollars, 750,000 or close to budget to put together a whole unit of, of court enforcement. So, yes, our time has not been wasted. And yes, we've heard, and, and we, and we reacted to what we heard from the tenants and their needs, and we've done a lot. So, I do agree with you on that. I don't call this at all that we didn't spend our time wisely. My concern is with the, you talked a little bit about the community survey that was done two years ago. And that survey, with all due respect to staff, in my opinion, they only looked at 700 or so people. It was done just to see, how are we doing? It's a feel-good survey. It, what do you think? What do you think of our service? And when you ask someone, do you think housing is expensive, or do you think rent is expensive? If you asked me today, do you think eating out is expensive? My answer is going to be, yes, it is expensive. So, we weren't targeting a specific issue that we're dealing with. We weren't targeting changing of our entire structure, of rental structure here in the city of Burbank. So, this is where I disagree with you. Survey is one form of an outreach, right? But the other form is having those robust meetings, like the media district. I don't know if you've probably attended some of them. And usually, they're at the library, and they're full. I mean, there's 40, 50 people. The district outreach, there were a lot of people. The, the plastic outreach, they had meetings with 50 different restaurants. And the discussion went on and on, and I'm hoping, you talked about the same people are going to show up. That's fine, but then we can reach out to individuals that don't come to the council meetings, individuals who speak Spanish, Armenian, other individuals who might be intimidated to be here in the council chamber. So, to me, they're two separate things. Do we maybe do both? Sure, why not? Like the mayor said, we have, the money is not the issue. We want to do this right. We don't want to do something and look back and regret, or have someone come and tell us, you did not include me in this, have somebody call us and say, I had no idea what you were doing. The survey also has to be, the questions have to be, in my opinion, approved by council. We need to look at these questions and see, are we asking the public the right questions? Not leading questions. Do you think your rent is high? Would you want a cap on your rent? What do you think the answer is going to be? Yes, I do. Nobody, even if you're paying $500 a month, you're going to answer that. So, I think it's important that we develop, if the community outreach, the robust community outreach, have something similar to what we did with the districts, what we did with the media district plan, what we did with the plastic. And I'm sure they can come back, staff can come back with a plan to tell us what this is going to look like. And if we feel, in addition to that, that we need to have a survey, I won't be opposed to it. But also, a survey, we have to reach out a lot of the house providers who don't live in the city of Burbank. I need to see a plan as well, to who are we going to include? What kind of questions are we going to ask? Because I don't want anyone to come back and tell us that we failed in providing in the survey that we sent out, because when it comes back, I want to make sure that we did our due diligence, to make sure that we included everything in that survey that we needed to include, similar to what we're going to do with the community outreach. So, I don't want to use the, the survey that was used two years ago as a guideline, because that was, to me, a feel-good survey, that we're doing a good job in the city of Burbank, and what else can we do? Versus, what do you think of the impact on, you know, capping, putting a cap on the rent? So, for that, I'm just going to stop here, and then I know the Vice Mayor.
Could, could I ask a clarifying question real quick from our PIO? Mr. Jones, I served on the PIO Subcommittee two years ago when the questions were created. The vendor we used, they didn't allow council to weigh in on the questions, or manipulate the questions, or put their thumb on the scale in any way. They're independent, and they, it's whatever they gave, they, that's what we got. Is that right?
Simone McFarlane with Community Development, yes. When we did that original one, they did not want to give us the questions ahead of time. And the reason why is because it's, they said it skews the answers. If they know what the questions are going to be when they do the survey, you already know what your answer is going to be, and you may have different answers than if you don't know what the questions are going to be ahead of time. So, the pollster that we used, FM3, was adamantly opposed to us giving the questions. However, I think staff proposed questions to them, and so it could be the reverse, that council proposes questions and gives it to the pollster. And then he could put those in as he sees fit. If he sees that it's leading, he would rewrite that question so that it wasn't a leading question, and that type of thing. But to know what the questions are ahead of time, it, it makes the poll not statistically viable.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you both for your deliberation. Vice Mayor, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. So, I, I'm going back and forth, because I got to tell you, I see both of your points. One, I know the folks in this room want the outreach, they would like to be there at the meetings. Maybe we'll get some folks who are not in the room who will also be there. Hopefully, some folks that speak other languages, who have not been a part of the conversation, although I don't know that, how we would work that out, quite frankly. And that, that is a question I have for staff. What's easier, a survey or being in the room for folks who speak a different language? And I don't know the answer to that. But the, the one concern that I have, again, is the time. Because we, I, I was looking at some of our emails that we've been receiving in the last day, and everyone is, is essentially asking us, like, what is the back and forth? You've been talking for, about this for a minute. And I'm starting to see that from both sides of, of this issue. And so, in looking at the districting, I just want to make sure that whatever outreach we do, which I have full, full confidence in staff, that they can come up with something robust, with the right consultant in the 90-day period. I just want to make sure that we do it in a timely manner, because to Councilwoman Mullins's point, it's got to come back, and we have a lot of further decisions to make. And this council has invested a lot of time already on this. Councilwoman Mullins, I appreciate your idealism in hoping that nobody comes back and tells us, you didn't do this, but I promise you, there will be people that will come to this podium and tell you, I was not aware about this, you never sent out any notices about rent control, nobody ever told me about tenant protections. Why? Because those emails were also in our inbox this afternoon. That we, you know, we, we've received emails that they didn't know about this. Even our most astute members who are here constantly watching mentioned that some of this stuff felt buried. That is going to happen, but I agree with you that I want to do our best effort possible, and I want to do it in a timely manner, because we owe it to the folks that have now invested almost two years with us on this issue. We owe it to them to get it done.
I, and I agree, Vice Mayor, but if someone will come to me today and say, you haven't done anything on this matter, you know, whether on, on either side. I think what staff put together here, the timeline of when we started this, and how many hours, and how much work went into it, and the fact that we've allocated about a million dollars, the 500,000, 600,000 to rental assistance and rental protection, I think I can look that person in the eyes and say, you're absolutely wrong, because look what we have done. So, I, I feel absolutely comfortable having to address that concern for somebody asking me. But I also want to address something that we talked about here. And I might be misunderstanding, but the emails that I'm receiving from the house providers, they're telling me, and their title is, no rent cap, no rent control. And that, to me, sends a message that they don't want anything done, because we already have AB 1482, we already have SB 567. So, I am not reading, and again, if I'm not seeing something, I do apologize to all of you, because I'm not seeing it. I'm seeing, we don't want anything done, because we already have AB 1482. So, I don't see their urgency as saying, you haven't done anything. They're saying, don't do anything, because you already have a law in place. So, I, I, you know, I'm with you, timing-wise, I'm with you with all these things, but the urgency is not coming from the house, housing providers. And if it is, please send me an email and let me know that. I really wish that, I want to have this conversation, because when I read the titles, when I read the emails, they're telling me, don't do anything. And I, I have to say, we got to do something, we're, we're looking at some options. So, we're in agreement, timing is important, and I think we can address that. By the RFP process, we can address it by directing staff. I want to address the survey as well. Simone, you, you, sorry, want to be official here with your title.
Ms. McFarlane.
Yes, Ms. McFarlane. You did mention about, they don't want us to get the questions in advance, which I would respect, but I think council should weigh in and provide questions. As we've done with the districting, we've all submitted some questions, and I think I would like to do that. That's if we want to spend the money on both survey and community outreach. I am really looking at community outreach as a form of our first steps to see what we can get out of it, because we have been successful. This council has been extremely successful with community outreach. There isn't one thing that we put our hands on that says, go out and talk to the community, get them involved, that came back, and we were looked at as we didn't do our job. So, I'm very confident that anyone comes here and put the blame that we didn't do something, it would be a shame on them that they didn't participate, because we'll have enough notices out there to let them know. Thank you.
Just to address a quick second of that, oh, man, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I'll lean back. I'm here all night.
Councilwoman Mullins, to your point about, yes, all the emails say, no rent control, and then the other ones say, please rent control now, right? And then the other ones say, please rent control now, right? But if you get into the meat and potatoes of some of the things that folks are saying, and, and I've been reading through them for a couple nights now, um, just trying to get a sense of, of the mutual points we can find, or maybe the, the sense of urgency, right? If I am a landlord looking at what I'm going to spend next year, I want to know if there's going to be a cap, if there isn't going to be a cap. And I want to know that soon. I want to ha, I want to know where I can provide my feedback, to your point, soon, right? Which is my case for trying to do this as soon as possible. If I'm a tenant, I want to know what's going to happen. And yes, maybe I have a little bit more urgency because I want to know if I'm going to be able to make rent for next year. If my rent's going to go up and by how much. And so I understand and appreciate that from our community. I also understand the need for outreach. But having seen it, I'm going to keep harping on districting. City Attorney used districting as an example, and I'm going to keep harping on it now. Um.
Um, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I believe Vice Mayor used districting as an example.
You quoted me.
Hold on, hold on.
You quoted me and now I'm on that train. So let's keep rolling with that.
Continue your point. It's 10 o'clock. Continue your point.
I know. Now I'm on the timer. Man, I know how you feel, Councilor Mullins.
Someone's got to be that guy.
So just to reiterate that piece, we got that done in a timely manner. And I think it was, as staff explained, by bypassing the RFP process, by doing things that got us there quicker. I think we owe it to our community to get there quicker. And then we can have that robust conversation. And this council has been looking at this for a minute. That is my main concern. It is not so much the how, because I think there are points to be said on both things. On the public outreach format that you suggested, we may get a lot of the same people. They have very much the right to be at these meetings and express their opinions. In the survey, we may get folks who don't want to come forward. We also receive tenant, or tenant emails all the time that say, I'm afraid of retaliation. I don't want to come forward. You know, we may get landlords who are unable to come forward in the room. So I understand that, but I also understand that we, the timeliness is pertinent to both groups. And in sitting one-on-one with some of our, um, some of our landlords, I've also caught that, right? They want to know what we're doing. And they don't want a rent control cap. I get that. But they want an answer, too.
I'd like to weigh in now, if I might.
I just want to give one clarifying, clarification. Just real quick. The first step report was in January of 2023. But it was agendized in July of 2022. So it's been a while. It has been a while. So expedition.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Um, I want to thank you, everyone who provided public comment. And I'd like to give a brief response. So there's a handout that I have here that I had staff compile. I'm not going to go through it for the late, late hour. I would ask staff if you could have this posted to the city's website tomorrow so the public has access to it, the timeline and all the detail. I think it's really robust. But what the public should know is that, starting with January 31st, 2023, which was the first agenda item discussion, I understand it was requested earlier. From that point to today, we've had at least seven public hearings or agenda items or opportunities for public comment to be provided.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to interrupt. One quick, uh, point of clarification again. Would you like this report entered into the evidence for this public hearing? So that's where people can find it? Is that what you're asking?
No, uh, because I don't believe it was provided on the website in advance to the public. So I'm asking that it just be made publicly available tomorrow. I'm not asking that it be, I'm not ordering that it be added as an exhibit to the record because the public didn't have access.
Okay. All right.
Does that make sense, Mr. City Manager?
Okay.
Yes. So what I'm getting at is this, in terms of outreach, it's not fair to say that there has been no outreach, duh. What I would say is that there have been well over 1,000 hours of staff time, council time, commission time, all added up devoted to this issue. There have also been hundreds, several hundred public comments received in the form of email and written communication, e-comment, general public comments, speakers, speakers under specific agenda items, and all of this will be available in that document tomorrow. So we have done some outreach. Now, it leaves us to the question of what do we need to do? My concern at the last meeting was more with the timeline. And as I pointed out tonight, respectfully, I don't think money is the, is the obstacle here. What is the obstacle is clear direction from the council that this is our top priority. In my view, it is. By the way, we talk about polling. What is consistently the number one issue that people talk about in Los Angeles? Housing and homelessness, consistently top of every single poll. So we've been tackling homelessness. Let's tackle housing with the seriousness that it deserves. Mr. Jones, you gave a great answer. You want the full 200,000. You want to do the full outreach. You want to make Mr. Donahue happy. Let's do it. Here's my only thing. Do it in 90 days. Whatever the cost, we have the money. Let's get it done. Period. And one last thing I would add. I know you're on the, on the button there, Mr. Hesse. There's often a discussion about government intervention, uh, what's appropriate, what's not. I just want to add this one thought out there. There have been several alternatives put forward by Burbank Tenants Union, 2% cap, 3% cap. And we're going to have a future opportunity to discuss the merits, whether it's feasible, pros and cons of doing that. I've heard one alternative from others, and that is, please do nothing. Respectfully, that's not getting us very far. If you have an alternative out there, I want to hear it. I would much rather the parties negotiate something between themselves than force the hand of government to make an intervening decision here. So my continuing expression to the community is, if there's room to be had for conversation and negotiation, please do it. I think, quite frankly, you'll like the outcome better than if the council has to intervene. That's just my two cents.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask? I wanted to ask Mr. Jones if it's, are we able to do, um, an expedited, uh, non-RFP process to get somebody to do a similar outreach like we did with the, well, districting? And concurrently run a citywide poll on this issue? Are we able to do all of that in a timely fashion? Is 90 days enough?
A citywide survey?
To do the survey and the outreach, and then at the end, follow it up with, I believe we had discussed a, a, a single-day town hall where we talked all of these issues out, had the data and, and had the outreach together.
Can I, can I ask a question to assist you, Councilmember? Mr. Jones, here's the question. If the council wants you to, to your heart's desire, do all the outreach that the community clearly wants, and the only requirement is we're saying we want it completed in 90 days, you give us a number of what you need in terms of resources to get it done, can it be done?
Can be done, of course. That said, what Mr. Prescott presented to you several meetings ago was $200,000 for community outreach, correct?
Yes.
Today was 100,000 for a survey and then a town hall. So they're two separate things, right? When we talked about the $200,000 number, that's just outreach. If we want to do a survey in addition to, then you're combining them. So we would ask for up to 300,000.
That's my proposal, council. Is there consensus?
I'm in complete agreement, and thank you for bringing that up to clarify. Um, absolutely.
With a 90-day deadline.
And, and Mr. Mayor, and I know we're really stuck on 90 days. I, I mean, if it's 90 days and two weeks, I, I, you know, I see the city manager, look at his finger. Look at his finger. He's, is desperate to jump in here and, and I, I feel his pressure. So there's a lot of.
Mr. City Manager, what would you like to add?
Yes, for the budget tonight, what I would recommend is if you want to embark on both of those, is I would, uh, appropriate 300,000, um, tonight. And then what, uh, what I would recommend is that we come back, uh, at the next meeting, uh, with the action plan. Uh, so, so you could see exactly what that robust outreach is going to be and, and see how we're going to do it within that 90 days. So, um, so, so I, I, I think that's reasonable. We want to make sure, since, since we had some issues with two discussion papers ago as far as exactly what you wanted, before we embark on a $300,000 outreach journey, we want to make sure that if you guys could wait two weeks to make sure that we provide a game plan for you that you, that satisfies you, and then we'll push it and do that 90 days.
You're asking 90 days from two weeks from now.
So technically, there's no money to spend until July 1st.
That's a good point, too.
So there's that.
You just had to go there, Mr. McDougal, didn't you?
So.
Thank you for that.
He was to be precise.
That's important.
So two weeks from now.
The next meeting.
Okay. I am.
Can I ask a question too?
Please.
Simone McFarlane, can I just clarify? So when we gave you the proposal tonight, it was to do the survey and then get the results of the survey and then have the outreach based on the results of the survey. The 90 days that you're talking about in doing the survey and the outreach at the same time means that the outreach will not be focused on the results of the survey. So I just want to clarify that. So that our, we would do an outreach that would say, what is your opinion? Where do we need this rent cap to be? And then we would do the survey that asked basically the same type of question and then bring both of those answers back. So it's a little bit of a different nuance, and I just want to make sure that council's understanding what that nuance is.
To Councilor Mullins's point, this is two formats. More people get a say, and I think it's perfectly fine if we are asking the same question because we are giving people multiple platforms to give us an answer. And, and I think, again, that is perfectly fine. Because we will then take the survey and the outreach to inform the in-person or, you know, different-formatted outreach, because again, survey is also a form of outreach. But we will take those two to inform what we are then going to do. And Mr. City Manager, to that point, from whenever that date is, next meeting, I'm comfortable voting for this only if it is those 90 days.
90 days from July 1 would be approximately end of September.
And just to clarify, um, because Councilmember Anthony made a comment about, uh, bypassing competitive. It would be a competitive solicitation, but something we would classify as informal. Where it, it wouldn't necessarily be posted on our bid solicitation site, but it would be, uh, letters sent out to at least, uh, uh, three, uh, competitive businesses, and we'd review proposals.
Wonderful. Councilmember Mullins?
Mr. Mayor, um, question and then a comment. Uh, question is, we talked about me perhaps submitting our own questions to what we would like to see on the survey, and when would you want that from us? When you come back with the plan? Or when would you want that from us? And how we can give you five to 10 questions?
I think, yes, when we come back, um, to, with our plan, it would be helpful to have something to give back to whoever we're hiring at that point. And one of the things that I might suggest that might be helpful and clarifying, instead of specific questions, maybe it's specific topic areas that are kind of general, and then they can write the questions pertinent to that. So I think when we did the, the community survey, we said, we want to know answers to, how do people like our parks? How, you know, what is the result of, how are they getting information? So it was kind of, here's what we want to know, and then they wrote the questions. So just kind of to clarify what I said earlier, that would be a good thing just to give us the kind of, this is what we want to know.
Okay. Um, my, my comment is, and I know it wasn't intentional, it was just something we're using. But I, I want to clarify for people who are listening. Um, because you said something about what that rent cap wants, wanted to be looked like, or how much of rent cap. I don't want to make an assumption that the majority of people who will be showing up for the survey, there's obviously going to be, some will say yes, as the mayor indicated earlier. Maybe this is an opportunity to start working and figuring out, do we want to have the rent cap? Don't we want to have a rent cap? And it, it's going to weigh in on both sides. So I don't want to make an assumption or some wording out there that this is what we're going after. So we're not being told, oh, you already have your mind set that this is what you're going to do.
That's a good clarification. And then I will just add that when we are giving our topic areas to the person that will be doing the survey, we want to be cognizant of, this is a, going to be a short survey. Because even Mr. Jonathan and I were saying, well, what about this? What about this? What about this? And he kept saying, well, how long is this survey going to be? So we want to be really narrow in what we're asking.
And Councilor Mullins, as somebody who majored in psychology and was a researcher for a very long time, I can tell you, there is that concern into Ms. McFarlane's point about bias in your surveys. So I, I would be very comfortable submitting topics that we would like information on. And if we are spending $300,000, I expect that consultant, who is an expert in conducting surveys, would be able to take those and ask them in a non-biased way, which is what they have the expertise in.
That's why we hire them.
Exactly. Let's make them do the work.
Colleagues, I'm sensing consensus. I just want to repeat back what I'm hearing. Please correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like there's consensus to adjust, uh, the, our recommendation number two to be a one-time appropriation of $300,000 from the general fund to conduct both a survey and robust outreach as described on the record this evening, contingent on two conditions. One would be that staff return in two weeks' time with a proposed plan.
Next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, next meeting. Even better.
We're, we're dark for the next two Tuesdays, so we're back in three weeks.
Next meeting, prior to the start of the fiscal year, to come back with a proposed outreach plan that would be discussed and potentially approved by the council. The other contingency would be that the entirety of the outreach plan, uh, the appropriation would be contingent on that being completed by 90 days from the start of the fiscal year, which I calculate to be approximately September 30th, end of September. That's what I've heard from the council. Did I get it wrong? Seems like we have a consensus. Any other comments on the budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I'll tell you what, uh, for the sake of the hour, I'm going to make the motion. I move that in addition to the further direction provided by council this evening on the record, and I'll allow the record to speak for itself, I further move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Burbank adopting the budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and making appropriations for the amounts budgeted and amended on the record this evening. Further move that we adopt a resolution of the Burbank City Council determining and establishing the city's appropriations limit for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Further move, adoption of a resolution of the Housing Authority of the Burbank, City of Burbank, adopting the budget for fiscal year 24, 25. Further move, adoption of a resolution of the Parking Authority of the City of Burbank, adopting the budget for fiscal year 24, 25. And lastly, I move that we adopt a resolution of the Burbank City Council adopting the 24, 25 citywide fee schedule. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Noting that Councilmember Takahashi has left. Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Schultz?
Yes, motion passes 4-0 with one absence. Congratulations to staff. Another fun budget season.
The look on Jennifer's face. I love your smile.
All right, council. We have seven reports to council this evening. Seven reports. We cannot continue any reports, so let's continue to move forward. After staff's presentation, the City Council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the staff presentation as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first or second period of public comments tonight. As always, we'll take one-minute speakers followed by three-minute speakers. The first report to council this evening is the potential adoption of an ordinance amending Title X, Chapter 1 of the Burbank Municipal Code to establish regulations and development standards for firearm and ammunition retail uses. Mr. Xavier Thomas, Planner in the Community Development Department, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and members of the City Council. My name is Xavier Thomas, Associate Planner for the Community Development Department. Can I please have the presentation? Tonight, I will be providing a brief presentation on an amended ordinance that proposes regulations and development standards for firearm and ammunition retailers. At the City Council meeting of May 21st, City Council requested staff provide updated maps that show distance separation requirements when taking into account the sensitive uses outside the city. As a reminder, here are options 1, 2, and 3, with their respective separation distances from sensitive uses and residential zones and from fi, other firearm and ammunition retailers identified only in the city. Option 1 would result in 349 out of 28,942 parcels available for a potential location of new firearm retailers. Option 2 lowers that number to 233. And option 3 would result in 189 parcels made available. These are the new maps when the sensitive uses in the surrounding cities are taken into account. The results for option 1 do not change. Option 2 reflects a reduction in additional, in six additional parcels. And option 3 would be a reduction of just seven parcels. As you can see, the differences between the two sets of criteria are marginal. Following the May 21st City Council meeting, staff made the following amendments to the proposed ordinance. Section F, location was updated to reflect City Council's desire to have option 3's. Separation requirements apply. As a reminder, this would be 1,000 feet from sensitive uses. As a reminder, this would be 1,000 feet from sensitive uses, 1,000 feet from residential zones, and 500 feet from existing firearm and ammunition retailers. Section I, barriers was updated to be more objective and easier to implement and understand. Section B, definitions was updated to include an exemption from these standards for home occupation license holders due to their already required compliance to existing rules and regulations in the Burbank Municipal Code. Lastly, Section J, lighting was updated to make the standards clear for implementation. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Feel free to grab a seat. Do we have any public comment?
Not on this item.
Outstanding. Any response? I'm just kidding, Mr. Thomas. Any questions from council? Any comments from council? I like map 3. Great job. Anyone else have anything else? In two years, I just want to say, I know staffs work really hard on this over the course of two years. Speaking very bluntly, I've been a bit of a pain in the rear end at times, but you all have performed very admirably, and I really want to thank you all for your work. I am in favor of map 3, and I think that's something we can all be extremely proud of. So unless there's any other discussion, could I get a motion?
Could we just pull up the map section again, just so we have it?
Well, that happens for Councilmember Anthony. I just want to share, for the sake of time and for the sake that, in Mr. Xavier's words, it was a nominal difference, I'm also in favor of map 3. That was my last question and concern. It's answered.
Well, I don't know where I'm at, and Mr. Mullins isn't here. No, I'm in favor of map 3 as well.
Councilmember Mullins, we're back. We are-
I'm stalling. I'm stalling.
I believe that we're getting a consensus for map 3. However, if you'd like to make any comment, for the record, now would be the time. I'm in favor of map 3, and I'm getting a consensus from my two colleagues.
The note from staff was that it was a nominal difference, 1, 2, or 3.
And I did saw the discussion at the last meeting, so I understand why the decision was made. I do have one question, though, if it's okay-
Please, yeah.
-to the city attorney. I just need a point of clarification, or maybe to staff. Currently, I know everyone who's currently have open shops, whether it's on Magnolia or throughout the city, they are grandfathered in. Getting my thoughts together here. We're not asking them to close the business. We're not touching their businesses. However, if someone decides that they want to sell their business to somebody else beside a family member, or transfer that business under somebody else's name. Let's say I got tired of the business. I want to sell it and move out of California. Would I be able to do that as an owner?
They would only be able to do that if they could transfer the federal firearms license. It's possible, but not all businesses would do that. For instance, a Turner Outdoorsman or some other major business might not assume, first of all, most of the locations are not appropriate for a larger business like that. But they would have to follow the ATF requirements for transfer of a federal firearms license in order to do that.
Okay, so there is a possibility that their business can be passed on-
Yes. So their status, as of the effective date of this ordinance, which would be the 31st day after tonight, it should council adopt this, they would become a legal non-conforming use, and they would be able to continue to operate, provided they meet our licensing standards, as long as they were able to maintain their FFL and meet the licensing requirements.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, with the incorporation of map number 3, I hereby move adoption of an ordinance of the Burbank City Council amending Title 10, Chapter 1, Article 5 and 11 of the Burbank Municipal Code, establishing regulations and development standards for firearm and ammunition retail uses. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
For clarification, we're not technically voting on a map. What we're voting on is 1,000 feet from sensitive uses, 1,000 feet from residential uses, and 500 feet from existing firearm retailers.
You just had to one-up the mayor. Yes, by incorporation of map 3. I hope staff understands what I'm getting to, but well done. All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
I talked to the people at home. Some people are not paying attention.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes, motion passes 4-0. Outstanding job, staff. It's been a long two years, but you got it done. Great work. Okay, with that, we're on to our next agenda item. The second report to council tonight is regarding an appointment to fill one vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission for an unexpired term. Madam City Clerk, please present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, Kimberly Clark, City Clerk. Tonight, I will be presenting item number 10, Appointment to Fill One Vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission for an Unexpired Term. On April 10, 2024, the City Clerk's Office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2025, created by the appointment of Jason Bennett to the Planning Commission. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following channels: the city website, city council meeting announcements, all social media platforms managed by the City Clerk's Office, a press release sent to the Los Angeles Times, The Burbank Leader, and myBurbank.com, notices posted on the City Hall Bulletin Board, community groups and organizations, and through a constant contact email notification. The deadline to submit applications to the City Clerk's Office for the Sustainable Burbank Commission was Friday, May 10, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. The City Clerk's Office received 11 applications, and I will read them in the order in which they were received. Armand Matavosian, Nicholas Schenk, Lulut Garcia Ladia, Tenny Minasian, Charles Wilson, Gail Shaw Hawkins, Emma Abrahamian, Carrie Diaz, David Rosner, Nelson Better, and Nicole Bussard. The applications, as I mentioned, are listed in the order that the City Clerk's Office received them. Please note that Gail Shaw Hawkins has also applied for the Hollywood Burbank Airport Citizens Advisory Committee, which you will be considering later. This applicant's name will not be removed from consideration, given the limited term of the airport commission and the city's past practice of appointing individuals to external agencies. At this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask them.
Okay, before we get to questions, we'll go to public comment. I'm in receipt of one public comment card. Mr. Wilson, thank you for staying so late. Whenever you begin, you have three minutes, sir, and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Charles Wilson, and I am an applicant for the Sustainable Burbank Commission. I just want to say that I sent you all email, and I'm assuming that you received this. I'll just go over a couple of highlights, you know, my background. You know, 26-year resident, my wife and I, Burbank, and we are, our child, daughter, went to school here, middle school and high school. And we've been honorable residents here of ownership for 24 years of our residence. A little other background, I did serve for one term on the Community Development Goals Committee, 2017 through 2021. And after that great experience and just wanting to continue to serve, was looking for a way to kind of connect a little bit more and bring some of my skill sets into play. Had finished a program at Long Beach State, graduate program in business that had a heavy focus on sustainability. And so that's when I really had my target set on becoming a part of this commission. And so with that, I kind of wanted to just talk about the resources that I feel I could bring to the table for that, which would be the connection with the university there. They are constantly looking to do outreach and help communities, help small businesses, nonprofits. And so being able to bring that connection here. Also, my long-term membership with the Urban Land Institute. I've been a member there since 2011. I currently sit on the Innovations Council with the LA chapter, and they're always looking to do outreach and do help in communities throughout the area here. So I look to bring that to the table as well. And then also with my firm, I'm currently employed with BDO. We're the fifth-largest accounting firm in the world, and they have a very strong ESG advisory practice, and I work close with that. And we like to bring that thought leadership and insight to the table here locally. As far as actually areas that I'd like to get focused on, you know, the GG RP, you know, the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan is an area that I really like to focus on. I think there's a big need for that here in the city. And there's, you know, having some folks focus on that would be great. And then also with the outreach that the commission does, of course, supporting that, and then the thought leadership that we provide to council. So with that, I want to thank you very much for the time, and I appreciate being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Good luck. That was the only public comment that I have, unless there's any discussion. Council, for the sake of time, I'd like to make a motion to expedite things, unless there's any objection from my colleagues. No objection? I hereby move to appoint Charles Wilson to the Sustainable Burbank Commission. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Just a quick thank you to everyone who applied. We hope to see your name again. Madam City Clerk, let's conduct the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Come back to me at the end. I'll abstain for now. I want to see what everybody else votes.
Councilmember Mullins?
I'll vote yes, however, I understand where you're probably coming from. Congratulations, but this is kind of the first time. But I do appreciate you staying here tonight. And so I was going to cast my vote for him anyway, so thank you for expediting it.
All right, I'll change to yes then. I'll go yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Councilmember Perez, sorry, Vice Mayor Perez, decidedly yes, and Mayor Schultz.
What do you think? Yes, congratulations, Mr. Wilson. Okay. So that brings us-
We've never done it like that before, so that's just, that's, yeah.
Well, we're not in the lame duck period yet. I have some governing I'd like to do.
That's what happens when the city attorney leaves.
Mr. McDougal wasn't here. My babysitter wasn't here. Blame him. With that, the third report to council this evening is regarding the selection of three nominees to the Hollywood Burbank Airport Citizens Advisory Committee. Madam City Clerk, please present the report.
Good evening again, Kimberly Clark, City Clerk. Tonight, I am presenting item number 11, Selection of Three Nominees to the Hollywood Burbank Airport Citizens Advisory Committee. On March 28, 2024, the City Manager's Office received a letter from the Executive Director of the Hollywood Burbank Airport requesting the nomination of three Burbank residents to serve on the newly-created Hollywood Burbank Airport Citizens Advisory Committee, to be appointed by the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority Commission. The advisory committee will be a nine-member advisory body comprised of three members from each of the cities of Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. The advisory committee will gather public input on airplane noise issues associated with the airport, as well as assist in the update of the authority's noise exposure map and noise compatibility program. The advisory committee meetings will be conducted in accordance with the Brown Act and are expected to be held on a quarterly basis. The term of the appointment is for approximately 18 months, and to maximize community participation, the Airport Authority has decided that elected officials, staff members of elected officials, and candidates for elective office would not be eligible to serve. The City Council's recommendations will reasonably be deferred to, but the Airport Authority reserves the right to reject any nomination and appoint an alternative person at its discretion. Please note, the city requested clarification that if a nominee were rejected, the Airport Authority would ask the City Council to provide an alternate nominee. On April 18, 2024, the City Clerk's Office began advertising and accepting applications for three nominations. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice was advertised through the following: the city's website, city council meeting announcements, social media platforms overseen by the City Clerk's Office, via a press release sent to the LA Times, Burbank Leader, and myBurbank.com, and through notices posted on the City Hall Bulletin Board, community groups and organizations, and a constant contact email notification. The deadline to submit applications to the City Clerk's Office was Monday, May 20, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. The City Clerk's Office received 12 applications, and I will read them in the order received. Gail Shaw Hawkins, Terry LaRonde, Christina Cervantes, John Moran, Raymond Shoal, Pete Diamond, Victor Cabrera, Laura Iono, Kathleen Dohany, Robert Watson, John Carozza, and Martin Pearl Mutter. Please note that two applicants have also applied to other commissions and committees, and again, they were not removed from consideration, given the limited term and the city's past practice of appointing individuals to external agencies. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
First, do we have any public comment? I don't see any cards.
We do not.
Okay. Second of all, I just want to note for the record that none of the applicants could be categorized as an employee or otherwise an agent for me, or to my knowledge, any of my colleagues here. So I want that put on the record. We will do it the normal way, so unless there's any discussion, let's start by taking the votes.
Okay, I will call the names, and you can let me know by show of hands.
And everyone gets three votes.
The first name is Gail Shaw Hawkins. The second name is Terry LaRonde. Christina Cervantes. John Moran. Raymond Shoal. Pete Diamond. Victor Cabrera. Laura Iono. Kathleen Dohany. Robert Watson. John Carozza. And Martin Pearl Mutter.
I think we have our three. Congratulations to Ms. Iyonu, Ms. Doni, and Mr. Pearl Mutter. Just going to await confirmation on that. Ms. Clark?
That is correct. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all the appointees, and thank you to everyone who applied. With that, we're catching up pretty quickly, everybody. Let's keep rolling. The fourth report to council this evening, imagine if I did this every night. That'd be something. The fourth report to council this evening is the potential adoption of resolutions related to the calling of the City of Burbank General Municipal Election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, requesting election consolidation with the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles, and consideration of establishing the candidate statement cost. Say that 10 times fast. Madam City Clerk, please present the report.
Thank you, Kimberly Clark, City Clerk. Again, you're going to be tired of me. This is my last one, I promise.
Ah, you can keep going. I like it.
Tonight, I am presenting item number 12, Adoption of Resolutions Related to the Calling of the City of Burbank General Municipal Election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024. Council is being asked to adopt three resolutions this evening. One, calling for the General Municipal Election of November 5, 2024. The second one is requesting election consolidation with the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles. And the third is consideration of establishing the candidate statement cost. The City of Burbank General Municipal Election will be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, and will elect candidates for two offices for member of the City Council for a four-year term, ending December 18, 2028. The nomination period will begin on Monday, July 15, 2024, at 8:00 a.m. and will close on Friday, August 9, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. In the event an incumbent does not file, the nomination period will be extended for five days, until Wednesday, August 14, 2024, at 5:00 p.m., for that seat only. For the upcoming general election, the county clerk has determined that in addition to English, there are 18 mandated languages throughout the County of Los Angeles. Each candidate for elective office may prepare a candidate statement of no more than 200 words to be printed in the official sample ballot booklet. A candidate also has the option to not provide a candidate statement. Council is required to determine by resolution whether charges shall be levied against candidates for the cost of printing the candidate statement in the sample ballot, and that is reflected in the third resolution. In 2020, council chose to no longer subsidize any portion of the English-language candidate statement fees. For the upcoming election, a preliminary estimate provided by the county for a 200-word candidate statement is approximately $1,600. The current election cost estimate of $300,000 is based on 10 candidates for the two elective offices. This amount is for the county election services only and does not include additional costs for mandated legal notices, translation costs, and voter outreach material. If additional costs are incurred from the county, the city agrees to reimburse the county for any costs. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. For the record, my babysitter, Mr. McDougal, is back. Welcome back, Mr. McDougal. Just trying to keep you all awake. Any public comments? Seeing no cards, no public comment. We will now go to council questions? public comment. We will now go to council questions? Deliberation? Yes, Councilmember Mullins.
Just one quick question. Do we have the numbers or the number of the registered voters we have, current voters?
I was going to ask the same thing.
I can get that for you if you give me about three minutes.
Okay, that's fine. And you can come back-
Thank you.
-later. That was my only question. I'm happy to make a motion.
Yeah, do you want to? I was going to do it to spare someone the grief. It's a lot, but it's up to you. Would you like me to? Okay. I move adoption of a resolution of the city council of the City of Burbank calling for the holding of a general municipal election for Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, for the election of two members to the Burbank City Council. I further move adoption of a resolution of the city council of the City of Burbank requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to order the consolidation of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, with the statewide general election to be held in the County of Los Angeles that same day. To further authorize the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to canvass the returns of said general municipal election, and to request the registrar recorder county clerk of said county be permitted to render full services to the City of Burbank relating to the conduct of said general municipal election pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 10403 and 10418. You don't want to forget 10418. Further move adoption of a resolution of the city council of the City of Burbank establishing the cost of candidate statement fees for the 2024 general municipal election. I almost made it through. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
You did a good job.
I try. I have a future, I think, in like, yeah. Fast reading. There we go. My mom would be proud. Any other discussion? Going? None? All right, let's call the roll.
And Councilmember Mullins, that figure is $69,711.
Wow, 69, 700. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is that less than two years ago?
It is.
It is. Our population has also decreased by about 3,000.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Yep.
Procedurely, we have a roll call motion to take, vote to take, but we can-
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Sorry, I'm stunned. Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, everyone. 4-0. We will have an election. All right, the fifth report to counsel this evening is the eagerly anticipated adoption of a resolution to issue water revenue refunding bonds series of 2024 and electric revenue refunding bonds series of 2024. Mr. Joe Lilio, Chief Financial Officer for Burbank Water and Power, welcome. You look great as always. Please present the report.
So good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, city council members. So tonight, item before you is a refunding or refinancing of our water and electric bonds that were originally issued in 2010. So we did issue a electric bond in 2010 for $52.6 million and a water bond in 2010 for $27.9 million. And we're here tonight to refinance them. So I would like to introduce two individuals that we have here. Mark Young, the managing director for Canaan Public Finance. He's our municipal advisor. He'll be giving a presentation here. And then Victor Shu, he's the city's Bond and Disclosure Council, and he's represented by the firm Norton Rose Fulbright. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
Good evening. Again, Mark Young, managing director with Canaan Public Finance. We're BWP's municipal advisor. Have a short presentation today. Purpose of the bond issuance is to issue approximately $30 million of tax-exempt water revenue bonds to 2010 to refund the 2010B taxable Build America bonds. The other one is to issue approximately $60 million of tax-exempt bonds to refund the electric revenue bonds that were issued in 2010 as taxable Build America bonds. Three reasons that we're pursuing the refunding. One, when those bonds were issued, they were Build America bonds, they were taxable bonds, and the federal government promised a 35% subsidy, where the government would basically provide you an annual subsidy to reduce the cost of the taxable bonds. This was in conjunction with the Great Recession, the American Recovery Act, and these were a new form of bond that was supposed to both stimulate, you know, public projects, as well as to provide a new market to municipalities because of the dislocation in the financial markets that was associated with the Great Recession. So when you issued those bonds, the federal government gave you a promise to provide that subsidy. Embedded in those bonds was the ability to redeem the bonds with an extraordinary optional redemption. If the terms of that federal promise changed in a material way, well, as we're going to talk about in a little bit, the federal government reneged on that promise. And after about four or five years, they did something called sequestration, where they came in and they cut back that subsidy initially by about 8.5%, and then 10%, and then over the years, they ratcheted it down to where right now they are reducing the subsidy by about 5.5%. By, because of that event, we can utilize this extraordinary redemption to be able to refund the bonds today at an economic advantage. And that'll allow for debt service savings. We will eliminate future sequestration risk because now these bonds will be tax exempt. So you're guaranteed that benefit of the tax exempt rate. And we will be able to embed now a 10-year par call over the remaining life of those bonds. Want to talk a little bit about sequestration risk. Right now, you're experiencing a 5.7% reduction. That is embedded in the current federal budget through 2031. But the convention, market convention, and all of the other issuers who have pursued these BAB refundings have assumed that the sequestration will continue for the remaining life of their outstanding bonds. So two weeks ago, LA Unified refinanced $3 billion of their BABS to get out of this, that sequestration risk and to embed, you know, long-term tax exempt financing and the ability to put a 10-year call par call in that. Additionally, we have highlighted here for both water and electric, the numbers to reflect what that sequestration cost represents. And for water, over the life of the issue, it's an additional $317,000 of interest that you would pay above the expectation when you issued those bonds, and about $658,000 for electric. On the next slide, we've highlighted the preliminary financing results, and I'll kind of go through a line item on these. For water, we've assumed, assuming counsel approves tonight, we would be in the position to be able to sell bonds as early as the end of the month and be able to close at the end of the month. We would continue to have the same final maturity. So we're not extending maturity. We would keep it at 2040. The average interest cost when we prepared this presentation, obviously, there's a lead time to meet your agenda. So this represents sort of market rates of two or three weeks ago. We've been in an incredible volatile market environment. So these results, if we were in the market today, we wouldn't be achieving these results. But at that point in time, that we had to prepare the numbers for the staff report, these were the numbers at that point in time. So roughly about a 3.2% borrowing rate. We just received word last week that the AAA rating on water was affirmed and with a stable outlook. The amount of bonds that would be refunded is about $26 million of remaining outstanding bonds. The PV savings at that time was about $670,000 and roughly 2.58% present value savings. In the board, the BWP board approval, they established PV savings requirement of a minimum of 2% for water. In terms of the uses of funds, we'd raise about $23.28 million of principal. In the current market environment, we sell bonds with a above-market coupon. So if our interest rate is roughly 3.18, we have a 5% coupon that would generate premium, and premium is included with your principal as a source of funds. So that's how we get to about $27 million of sources. The cost to redeem the BABS is about $26.5 million. And then cost of issuance to pay the lawyers, the advisors, the rating agencies, and the like is the cost of issuance. And then an underwriter's discount, we hire an underwriter to actually go solicit investors to buy the bonds. For electric, we've, because they're separate credits, we have to really separate them by at least a week in terms of marketing. So the idea would be we would sell the electric bonds the following week. So we would be targeting the first week in July and to close by the end of July. Same thing, we'll keep the same final maturity. The savings will be structured proportionally, given the original amortization. The true interest cost, it's about 3.157. The reason it's lower than the interest rate on water is the water bond's amortization was backloaded. So there was more of the principal was repaid on the back end compared to electric where it was more front-loaded. The S&amp;P rating, we did maintain our AA- rating. They did, however, change the outlook to negative. They focused on a couple issues, environmental issues, regulatory issues, sort of, it's Southern California, cost issues associated with all municipal utilities. And they did highlight that, as well as other Southern California utilities, the rate increases over the next two years relative to the previous years of relatively low rate increases, they highlighted that. And just want to sort of monitor that over the next two years to sort of see how that translates into actually occurring, what that does, what that does to your fund balances, and then also sort of the cost creep pressures that utilities are facing. But you did retain the AA-. Also, a 10-year par call will be embedded in that. The amount of bonds that would be refunded is about $50.5 million. Right now, that achieved 0.77% PV savings. The BWP board in their resolution approved a minimum PV savings of 1%. So when we put this together for the agenda, we weren't achieving it. But by the terms of the resolution BWP approved, we will be required to achieve those minimum levels before the bonds are issued. Again, we'd issue about $46.4 million. We'd generate premium. Additionally, the electric credit has a debt service reserve fund embedded in the 2010 bonds, as well as in the 2023 new money bonds that were issued. The staff report that was presented to city council in 2023 highlighted the fact that the recommendation was to continue to use a reserve, debt service reserve fund, to make sure that the electric revenue credit remains stable, to make sure that the credit rating remains stable, and felt that it would send a strong message to the market. So after reviewing the 2023 staff report that was provided to both BWP and city council, as municipal advisor to BWP, we recommended that on the refunding, we continue the use of the debt service reserve fund. I'm highlighting that because Councilmember Takahashi had asked a question, and I was just prepared to elaborate for her. But with her not there, at least she can hear in the record that we were responsive to, to her question. Again, we'll take about $53.5 million to redeem those bonds. The reserve deposit will be $2.15 million. And then we have cost of issuance and underwriter's discount associated with that. On the next slide, we provide savings report for the water revenue bonds. So again, about $670,000 PV. We provide a 10-year par call for the remaining life of the issue. We completely remove any sequestration risk, and we've allocated the savings to be proportionate to the original amortization schedule of the bonds, so level annual savings. We did, BWP did ask the question, is there the flexibility to change the amortization a little bit? Because water is backloaded. And the comment was, we made the comment that we were not going to extend the maturity, but if it's the desire of the department to levelize the debt service, to shorten the average life, we could do that so long as it provides the PV savings minimum amount. On the next slide, we provide the same schedule for electric. Again, about $390,000 PV savings. We're not reaching the 1% threshold yet, but that would be a condition to the final sale of the bonds. Again, we'll embed a 10-year par call into the refunding bonds, and the sequestration risk is completely eliminated. We're structuring the savings to be level annual savings. Because its original amortization was level, we really haven't had a discussion on changing that amortization. So right now, the plan would be to keep it the same. And again, the idea would be to achieve the minimum 1% PV savings. Next slide, we talk a little bit about the refunding schedule, and I will again state this was prepared with the agenda requirement of a couple weeks. So this is a little bit stale. But we did have our board approval on the 4th. We've gone through the process of documentation and ratings. So you do have the substantially final documents in front of you. We have achieved and got the ratings that we talked about. So we're here tonight for council approval. If council approvals approves tonight, the idea is that we will be monitoring the market on a day-to-day basis, because we have to look at the treasury market, because that determines the price that we can redeem our taxable bonds. And then we have to look at our tax exempt market. And when those ratios work, so we can achieve the minimum PV saving standards, we'll be ready to, at that point, to go in the market. Water will be the first transaction to go in the market. It's the smaller one. It's also the more highly rated one. So you want to lead with strength. So we'll go out with the AAA bond, get those sold, have a, have a great party in terms of bondholders coming in to buy them, which will set up electric well for hopefully the following week. So in conclusion, the recommendation, staff requested that the council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of 2024 water revenue bonds not to exceed 30 million to refund the 2010 water BABS, and a resolution approving the issuance of 2024 electric refunding bonds not to exceed 60 million to refund the outstanding 2010 electric BABS, and to approve the execution of all the documents associated with it. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Ms. Clark, do we have any public comment? We do not. All right. Any questions from my colleagues?
Nope. We had our training. It was great. So a lot of this information was already discussed with us and passed on during our training. Thank you.
Councilmember Anthony?
I do have some questions. And now that I'm back, I would like to recognize Councilmember Anthony. Oh, thank you.
I already recognized him.
Well, the chair is resuming. So Councilmember Anthony?
I'm re-recognized. So municipal bonds. We go out to the public. We let anyone and everyone buy into these based on our credit rating, on our information that we give out, sort of a prospectus on, here's the rates- that we give out, sort of a prospectus on, here's the rates that we have returning, here's our expenditures. We give sort of a snapshot of how both water and electric are doing business-wise, and folks can see that and see that we're, you know, a solid entity to purchase into. We did that in 2010. That's the current bonds that we have, correct? For both water and power. The rates on municipal bonds, are those variable or are they fixed rates?
Your BABS were sold as taxable bonds, fixed-rate bonds to maturity. And when you did those bonds, you're not selling one 30-year bond. You sell bonds for each maturity. So a bond for year one, year two, year three. And each of those bonds has its own interest rate to reflect a yield curve.
So people can buy into however many years they want.
Right.
They're not stuck with 30.
Right. They could buy a 10-year bond. If they've got kids going to college, they could buy a 15-year bond.
And the interest rate is set separately? It, it curves up?
Yeah, based on the yield curve. It curves up, so the 30-year rate will be higher typically than the one-year rate.
Okay.
And so, so both the electric bonds and water bonds were sold as 30-year bonds with fixed taxable interest rates, hopefully with the promise that the government was going to subsidize you for the life with that 35% subsidy.
Okay.
And the bonds that will be sold in 2024 will have, will be roughly 16-year bonds, because that's the remaining life going out to 2040. And those will be a one-year bond, two-year bond, going all the way out to 16. So there'll actually be 16 different maturities, and they all will have fixed tax-exempt interest rates on them.
Okay. So for the general public, the reason we are doing this now is because we believe that for the remainder of that 30-year, the 16 years that we have left, today, we can get a better rate and a more favorable market purchase on our AAA water, AA minus electricity. It looks better. We can get better payback and sort of recoup some of the expenditures we paid on the previous bonds, pay them off, and then look better for the future. Is that an assessment?
Yeah, again, to reiterate, sort of three things. One, you're going to get rid of the sequestration risk. I mean, we, it's 5.7% now, with all the pressures on the federal government and deficits. Next year, they could decide to increase that sequestration to 10% or 12%.
Well, I was going to get to that in a second.
Councilmember Anthony, I'm sorry to interrupt. Councilmember Mullins, do you have a motion?
Yes, make a motion to go beyond 11 o'clock.
And I see the vice mayor seconding over there by the city attorney. Show of hands, four oh, we're allowed to continue. Please continue.
Thank you. So I didn't want to get into that just yet, but if you could, what is a sequestration risk on a municipal bond?
Well, on a, on a taxable Build America bond, it's the federal government reneging on their promise to pay you a 35% subsidy, which they've done. They've, they've, they've reneged on it over the last 15 years, and basically, it's currently embedded out until 32. So that's a cost to both water and electric in terms of a higher debt service cost than you had anticipated.
And that's stuck on our 2010 bond?
Correct.
We can't get rid of it? It's there?
Correct.
Okay, so by going out for a new bond, none of that is attached to it? None of the sequestration is even?
Right.
None of that exists in the new market?
Right, right. Because you're issuing tax-exempt bonds. So when those bonds get priced, the buyer of that bond is, is essentially guaranteed that they'll have the tax-exempt income. Unless their tax position changed, the value of that bond will stay the same, and they'll get the benefit of that interest rate and the tax exemption.
Okay.
And, and the standards that were embedded in the resolution that BWP approved and you're approving is that to affect this refinancing, we have to have a minimum 2% present value savings for water, 1% for electric, as well as we're replacing what's known as a make-hold call of 10 years with a par call. So those bonds that we issue today can be prepaid in 10 years at 100 cents on the dollar, rather than a make-hold call, which would be a substantial premium, which is currently embedded in the BABS.
Yeah, and Mark, if I can just add one more thing to Councilmember Anthony's question. So as an example, for this current fiscal year, the water bond had interest payment of 535,000. The federal government was supposed to reimburse us a portion of that. They reneged on about 30,500. So we got less, 30,500 less from the federal government than what they had promised. And when we initially issued those bonds, and that was built into the bonds, and on the electric bonds, they gave us 65,700 less this year on interest. So that starts adding up over time. We're trying to get rid of it.
So, so we're going out for a new bond where we don't get the federal government to pay us back, but it's not a risk to the people purchasing those bonds? Because from my understanding, folks who bought the bonds 14 years ago were under the impression that the federal government was going to be repaying us. And the fact that they're not, are their bonds, are they not getting what they paid for, is what I'm asking?
No, you're, you're paying, I'll just pick, you know, the 2040 bond, if it has an interest rate on it of 6.2%, because it was taxable. That subsidy, the 35% subsidy, was coming to you to reduce the cost of that bond. The bondholder's still getting 6.2, and you're paying them 6.2.
And we're left holding the bag.
You're have.
So we want to go out for a new bond where none of that is attached, where we've got a guaranteed return? We know exactly how much is coming back to us?
Yeah. It's, it's by virtue of you being a governmental entity and having the statutory authority to issue revenue bonds. The IRS is allowing Victor's firm to give you a tax-exempt opinion that the interest on those bonds won't be taxed. That causes the market to allow you to borrow at a lower rate, and that's embedded in the interest rate on each and every bond. It's embedded in the documents. That'll be that when you approve them and the bonds are sold, those rates will be embedded in the documents, and there's no risk of the government being able to come in and change that.
Who, who is Victor and what is his firm? Oh, yes.
Victor's your bond counsel and disclosure counsel.
Yes. And the company you work for?
Norton Rosevill.
Norton Rosevill. And you are independently assigned to this, right? Do you have your own company or?
Yes, I'm a managing director with KNN Public Finance. We're known, we, we, our, our industry used to be known as financial advisors. After Dodd-Frank, they changed the convention, and now they call us municipal advisors. I'm in, my firm is an independent registered municipal advisor. Under Dodd-Frank, on any bond transaction, we are the only entity in the room that has a fiduciary responsibility to you as the issuer. So our, we're regulated by the SEC, the MSRB, and we're held to a standard that requires us to give the level of information that we have tonight, to be here to answer all of your questions, and to basically highlight any risks associated with the transaction.
Okay.
And at the end of the day, to make sure all the calculations, the numerical calculations and information that's been presented is accurate.
Last question. Last question, I promise. We're going to go out, and we're going to put this on the open market, and folks are going to purchase this bond based on information that you provide, information that we provide. The clarity of that information is key in determining the risk factors and whether or not people want to purchase this. What would happen to you or your firm if the city was found out to be not 100% transparent or truthful on the information that we put out on the public market? Not us, but like, what happens to you and what happens to your city? What is your, 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 sorry, your, your firm's reputation, so to speak?
Hold on, Mark, before you answer that. So Councilmember Anthony, you know, the information that's in the preliminary official statement, that's 100% transparent.
Oh, absolutely. I, I agree with you.
I just want to make sure that the public understands that. We had the city attorney's office involved in every meeting, Victor Schu involved in every meeting, underwriters, marks from my staff. So it, it is 100% plus transparent.
And I would just add, councilmember, not to speak for the city attorney's office or Mr. Lilio or anyone else here, suffice it to say that in addition to any sort of embarrassment or damage to reputation, there are very stiff, real legal consequences should the due diligence not be exercised here, including criminal possibilities. So I think we can all agree that there's a lot on the line to ensuring that this is accurate and a full accounting of what the public needs to know, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Lilio, and good presentation, sir.
Right. That's why I asked this. I want the folks at home to know that as an independent company coming into this, you have, you have a lot on the line to make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. Is that correct?
Well, everyone does. And as you mentioned, you had your disclosure training. You're sitting in a hot seat, too.
Yes.
You, you have an obligation to, to review the preliminary official statement, to look at it, and if there's something that you know that was incorrect, you're on the hot seat as well as everyone else. And to just, to, to let you know, we, every time we do these, before the offering document goes out to the actual market, we have something called a due diligence call. We had that due diligence call this morning. It was an eight-page questionnaire. All the underwriters, all the lawyers are on the phone, the municipal advisors on the phone, Joe, Stella, Allison are on the phone, and we go through eight pages of questions that are, are on top of all the disclosure that goes through in the preparation of the PLS.
Okay. Thank you. I'm finished with my questions, and I can explain my reasoning because.
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with you that, yes, this was all done above board. I agree with staff. We are on top of this 100%. For the folks at home, the reason why I wanted to walk through this entire process is to make sure they know that there are a number of checks and balances. There are a number of people in this room who are not affiliated with the city, who are simply hired contractors, whose reputation is on the line. They have possible financial, possible even criminal charges that would come their way for any sort of deception, any sort of misgivings, anything that is left off on our bond issuance. So we have a wonderful team of experts working on these two very large bonds that is going to serve us for the next 16 years. And I just want the public to know that we're doing all of our due diligence. We're doing everything we can to make sure this is done correctly.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions, comments, concerns, wishes, orders? No? All right, I'd like to make a motion. Let's see if I can do this all in one spell. I move to adopt a resolution of the Council of the City of Burbank authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $60 million in principal amount of its Burbank Water and Power Electric Revenue Refunding Bonds Series of 2024, approving and authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding bonds, approving the engagement of professional services in connection therewith, approving and authorizing the execution of an eighth supplemental electric revenue bond indenture, approving the form and authorizing the distribution of an official statement for use in connection with the sale of such bonds, approving the forms of and authorizing certain documents in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions relating to the foregoing. But I'm not done. I further move adoption of a resolution of the Council of the City of Burbank authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $30 million principal amount of its Burbank Water and Power Water Revenue Refunding Bonds Series of 2024, approving and authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding bonds, approving the engagement of professional services in connection therewith, approving and authorizing the execution of a fourth supplemental bond indenture, approving the form and authorizing the distribution of an official statement for use in connection with the sale of such bonds, approving the forms of and authorizing certain documents in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions relating to the foregoing. And I think I got it all. Can I get a second?
Second.
You did a good job.
It's so much easier to second it, ain't it? Okay, any other discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes, I'm still here. Yes. Good job, Burbank Water and Power. All right. The sixth report to council this evening is a discussion of the draft media district-specific plan update, draft policies and findings. Before we begin, are there any disclosures?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In consultation with the city attorney's office, and out of an abundance of caution, I will recuse myself, given the proximity to my home, because there's a question as to whether increased density in the plan could affect my use and enjoyment of my residence. And we're actively discussing with the FPPC and will seek further advice. But again, out of an abundance of caution, I will recuse myself, since I live in the media district.
Okay. We'll see you again soon. Are there any other disclosures? The only thing I'll say for public consumption is that previously, I have recused myself. However, I no longer own property within what is now the media district-specific plan area, and therefore, I, in consultation with the city attorney's office, there is no conflict of interest. And boy, am I happy to be here. With that, Ms. Amanda Landry, principal planner with community development, please present the report.
Thank you. Good evening. We have the presentation, please. So, good evening, Mayor Schultz and members of the city council. My name is Amanda Landry, principal planner with CDD Planning and the project manager for the media district specific plan update. Our team has come before the council twice before, the first time to give the council some background on the general information and purpose of the specific plan update, and the second time to present the draft development potential. Tonight, I'll be providing the city council with an overview of the complete administrative draft of the MDSP update, and will be asking the city council for some general feedback on how the plan can further support its goals to emphasize contextual development, encourage transit-oriented growth, and facilitate streamlined housing production. At this point, we are currently in the plan refinement and consideration stages of the project with two more planned public workshops. The first workshop will take place tomorrow, June 5th, at the meeting room in the Buena Vista Library at 6:00 PM, and will introduce the plan to the general public. The following workshop will be a virtual meeting, tentatively scheduled for August 15th, and it is intended to solicit more comprehensive comments and feedback from the public after they've had a chance to more thoroughly review the draft plan. The MDSP update contains eight chapters, followed by appendices. The eight chapters are currently available, and the appendices will be available with the final draft. The first two chapters are the executive summary and the introduction. Chapter one, the executive summary, provides a guide on how to use the specific plan from the perspective of a community member, a property member, or developer, and as someone that works for the city of Burbank. Chapter two, introduction, describes the purpose of the specific plan and provides the overall vision for the media district, and also clarifies that the overall goals of the specific plan are to, again, emphasize contextual development, encourage transit-oriented growth, and facilitate streamlined housing production. Chapter three of the plan, outreach, describes the various outreach efforts, tools, and materials that this team used to engage with the city's residents, business owners, and other stakeholders. Highlights from this chapter are the descriptions of the extensive outreach efforts over the past two years, including 17 presentations about the ongoing planning effort, which included walking tours, listening sessions, neighborhood meetings, community workshops, both virtual and in-person, stakeholder briefings, lectures to grad students, and presentations to the city council, planning commission, and all the other boards and commissions. As previously mentioned, the project's team is going to continue these engagement efforts over the summer with our two upcoming workshops, and we will presenting to all the city boards and commissions over the summer and early fall. The project team is planning to use this feedback to ensure the final plan is updated and represents a well-balanced set of policies and development standards, objective development standards that emphasizes contextual development, encourages transit-oriented growth, and facilitates streamlined housing production. Chapter four, the media district profile and characteristics, describes the transportation, housing, and economic characteristics of the plan area as it compares to the regional context. The chapter also includes relevant city plans and policies that the project team referred to throughout the course of drafting the specific plan. The media district is a major regional employment center with approximately 69,000 jobs within its boundaries, which represents a significant jobs-to-housing imbalance, resulting in a very heavy inflow of around 67,400 people commuting into the district for work compared to only 2,600 people commuting out of the district. This emphasizes one of the reasons for the MDSP update effort, which is to address this jobs-to-housing imbalance and its subsequent traffic impacts by facilitating the development of housing closest to where the jobs and transportation resources are. Chapter five of the plan is the land use and urban forum chapter, and it contains the objective development standards intended to support the goals of the MDSP update. The chapter also contains an updated comprehensive land use table with new definitions. The chapter also contains an updated comprehensive land use table with new definitions. The land use table includes new uses and modifications to the permissibility of some of the existing uses in response to the feedback that we received from residents, business owners, and, as we observed, changing business practices. The chapter also sets forth the regulations for the existing transfer of development rights process to allow landowners to sell development rights to interested parties who can then use them at designated locations in the core of the district away from the lower-scaled residential neighborhoods. Throughout the public outreach efforts for this project, staff heard from many residents and, and developers that new development should be compatible with the character of the existing neighborhoods and contribute to a more inviting urban forum. As a response, the plan's urban design strategy and the objective development standards that were crafted support the goals of contextual development by encouraging development toward the core of the district away from the outer edges, which again are closest to those lower-density, um, low-density residential neighborhoods. The objective development standards also address the bulk and height of buildings and incorporate more pedestrian-oriented design features and requirements for more usable shaded space. In addition, the objective development standards include a strategic approach to massing that incorporates upper-story stepbacks for taller buildings, um, and addresses resident feedback concerning loss of sunlight, views, and privacy, and massing break, with massing bake requirements, which enhance the pedestrian experience and soften the visual impact of these developments, and generally just, um, overall contributes to a higher-quality design. Chapter six, the mobility chapter, contains the strategies and supportive policies necessary to facilitate a safe and efficient multimodal transportation system to support the future development of the media district. The project team heard from many residents, business owners, and developers about pedestrian safety, concerns about traffic congestion, and a lack of reliable public transportation options. In response, mobility chapter establishes goals to create a multimodal, active, engaged, human-oriented streetscape network, support future development that creates greater access to alternate modes of transportation, improve safety for all modes of transportation, and ensure efficient parking management in the media district. In support of the goals, the chapter includes specific standards for mobility, infrastructure, transportation demand management, and parking. Because many of the major concerns we heard were related to parking, particularly around the commercial corridor along Riverside Drive, um, chapter six addresses these concerns through strategies such as permit parking, price parking, parking benefit districts, and shared and unbundled parking. Chapter seven, or the infrastructure chapter, addresses utilities and infrastructure through a discussion about these public facilities, water supply, energy, and sewage systems. The infrastructure covered in the chapter includes water, recycled water systems, sewer, stormwater, energy, traffic systems, and telecommunications. Work is ongoing for this chapter, and it will culminate in the analysis of the existing capacity and the potential improvements necessary to any of the city's infrastructure to meet future demand. Chapter eight, the implementation chapter, establishes a strategy that's necessary to effectively implement the vision and goals of the plan. The chapter specifies which development projects may be approved by right, and development projects that are consistent with the goals, policies, and objective development standards of the, the plan, um, will be allowed to proceed directly to the building division application process. All other development projects would be considered through a discretionary review. Um, work is ongoing for this chapter as well to ensure that the final plan includes a comprehensive and realistic implementation strategy, um, to facilitate development that's consistent, again, with the goals, policies, and objective development standards of the plan. Uh, this project is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA. To fulfill the requirements of SEQA, a program environmental impact report is currently being prepared, um, additional outreach focused on the environmental review itself, and the release of those documents is anticipated to occur, um, this summer. So as I noted before, the administrative draft is now available for public review, and the team is going to be doing a comprehensive effort to solicit, uh, feedback from the public, um, over the summer and early fall. In addition, the project team will be making presentations to all of the boards and commissions, again, through the early summer, or summer and early fall. And the final specific plan will incorporate all of the feedback that we've heard, um, and is expected to be ready by fall 2024. Planning commission and city council hearings for consideration are anticipated to take place in winter 2024. Members of the public that are interested in this project are also, are also encouraged to reach out directly to the project team listed here on the screen, um, because in addition to phone calls and emails, staff are also available to meet in person with any interested person, um, and any interested person who can't participate in any of our future planned in-person or virtual events. Um, and that concludes my presentation. Staff, now just request the council feedback on how the plan can further be modified to support its overarching goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Landry. We'll go to public comment. I have one card, and that would be Jana Belkey. Thank you for staying so late, and once you begin, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed councilmembers. My name is Jana Belkey, and I'm here in my capacity as Vice President of Worth Real Estate Group, and Jeff Worth sends his regards that he couldn't be here tonight. As you are all aware, we are a large stakeholder in the media district, and I submitted a letter last night with our comments, our initial comments on the administrative draft MDSP. I applaud your city staff and the tremendous work that they have all done in educating the public and stakeholders like us about the possible changes being considered for housing density in the media district. We were thrilled, especially to see our project that's proposed at 3201 West Olive, which we call the Bob Hope site, highlighted as a good example of new housing, and we look forward to seeing that project implemented. We think increasing the residential density in the media district is an excellent response to the city's existing housing crisis. As many of you will recall, Jeff Worth was before you very recently looking for an approval of a three-year extension on our development agreement covering the Burbank Studios, the Second Century Project, and the adjacent Point properties. We stood before you that night, and we heard some requests to look into how we could bring more housing into the city, even possibly on these locations. One solution we are excited to pursue would be housing specifically on our Point Two site, which is the site just north of Johnny Carson Park and just south of our Point Building. This site technically already has its own zoning because of our development agreement, and it's a planned development, but we think the MDSP update is a perfect opportunity to consider this site as a housing opportunity site. This would mean assigning a residential and floor area density in the media district-specific plan update and studying that potential density in the program EIR. We were pleased to see staff already assigned a density in this administrative draft, and I'm here tonight to ask the council to support staff's inclusion of housing and an increased residential density at the Point Two site, along with environmental review in the program EIR. Further, as owners of the Ranch Lot Studios, we are also thrilled to see this site is now included in the media district. While currently under construction as a studio and office development leased to Warner Brothers in the near term pursuant to a DA that was adopted in 1997, we are cognizant that the city's desire for housing may someday, say 15 to 20 years, want to consider this large site also as a resource for housing. However, it is also subject to a planned development similar to our Burbank Studio site, and there is no indication of what the residential density should be upon the expiration of the planned development. We don't want to miss out on the opportunity to request council and staff to carefully consider the level of residential density these other planned development sites should default to upon expiration of their PDs, and the possibility of studying those densities now in the program EIR. We recognize a comprehensive update as a tremendous undertaking and appreciate the effort staff has taken thus far to keep us involved in the conversation. We look forward to hearing from you about what you think the highest and best uses are for our properties and what we consider to be the city's gem, the media district. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, Ms. Belkey, and please send our regards to Mr. Worth. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, we'll now go to a brief response from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are considering, uh, as part of our planning efforts, we've looked at adding housing to the site that is the Point Two, um, 87 dwelling units per acre, and we assign that in the event that the PD and DA that currently exist and dictate development on that site could be dissolved. So in the event that that is dissolved and resolved, um, as a civil matter with the owners and any other interested civil parties, um, there would be that density to be, uh, taken advantage of. And if the council directs, we can study that as part of our programmatic EIR.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that response. From my perspective, consider it so directed. But let's hear from my colleagues, Councilmember Anthony.
Well, I guess my question is, does the current planned development, is it less density than what is being proposed?
The current planned development doesn't allow any density.
Any housing?
No, no housing at the Point Two.
This is a site, uh, it, it's a potential new site for housing development. And I also want to say I appreciate Mr. Worth and whole team for thinking outside the box and bringing that back to us. We need more housing. Sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Anthony.
No, that's fine. I mean, apparently, we're losing people. We've got a population drop, so, Ms. Belkey, uh, you know, don't threaten me with a good time. Let's build some housing. Uh, if it's potential, that means putting the underlying, um, density and FAR first, and then talking with anyone who's stuck in a planned development or any other, uh, issue that would override that, we would have to go into negotiations to change it. But currently, just simply changing the underlying zoning doesn't change any planned developments.
Correct. It just provides opportunity in the future.
I like, I like opportunity. Okay, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this. This is great.
Wonderful. Councilmember Mullins?
Well, I agree with both of you. Um, I do have a comment, and then I'll, uh, I wrote down some questions, or maybe you can clarify, given that this is only a couple of pages to read, it wasn't a big deal at all. Just in case I missed something in there. First of all, I do want to applaud you, um, and the entire staff for their robust community outreach, and I say that with an underline and a bold, because if anyone...
Would you like to define what you mean by robust?
Take, take a look at, at her PowerPoint presentation, and it tells you on that page, uh, I think it's power, the number, slide number five. Really, um, you've got, you guys have done a great job, um, reaching out, and, and nobody could say that you haven't been listening to the community and talking, whether they agree or disagree, but you're doing a great job. So what I wanted to find out, uh, where is the discussion in regards to the MDSP about the relationship of the state housing mandates? So all the proposals with state housing mandates, uh, AB 2011, SB 423, AB 1401, go on and go on. Where is that discussion in that report? Because, forgive me, I wasn't able to find it in here.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry about that. Amanda Landry, CDD Planning. Um, that information is recapped in the introduction section. Um, it talks about, uh, other applicable, um, policies and regulations that affect planning. So through, it's actually sprinkled in several of the sections. So you'll find it in, um, chapter four as well, and so in the introduction, chapter two.
So is it specific, um, to the language when it addresses the state housing mandates, or is, is it just worded different?
It's, it alludes to, like, SB 35, AB 2011, things that are sort of, um, pushing the cities, uh, forcing our hand a little bit with the development projects. When they come into certain qualifying sites, and they meet all objective development standards, the city is obligated to approve those projects. However, what the city can do to respond in those circumstances is put in a more robust set of objective development standards that better reflect the, the community's wishes for what they want to see in their neighborhood. So the importance of this effort is to put those objective development standards in place for everything related to the actual buildings themselves, to the built environment around it, like the streets, uh, transportation networks. Um, so this is our opportunity to sort of head that off and, and sort of pick our own destiny a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
So specifically, attachment 1-37 references the current housing element cycle and the RENA number?
Okay.
That's section 4.7.1.
4.7, okay. General plan, okay.
That would be the first reference that Ms. Landry gave you?
Thank you for that. Also, it was unclear to me that the document, um, it relates to the Burbank Municipal Code and Existing Zone Regulations of the Media District. How with that, um, how will the zone code be amended? So if you can walk me through that, please?
Of course. If the city council, uh, decides to adopt the media district specific plan update, um, it would be accompanied by several documents and ordinance itself, which would be the codifying tool to insert the new code text into our zoning code, and it would take all of the content that's in the plan regarding the development standards. Um, so most of the information in chapter five, and it would, it would replace the existing media district development standards that are currently in our code. So it would just delete those in its entirety and be replaced with this. We'd format it to be consistent with the overall structure of the zoning code, so it's consistent, um, so it doesn't look like a different document, and so it blends in. And then we'd also have to adopt a resolution, or the city council would have to adopt a resolution, to amend the general plan to ensure that the general plan land use designations are consistent with, uh, what the specific plan has laid out.
Okay. Um, and that anticipated with these changes, what you had just discussed about, um, in the winter of 2024?
Yes, uh, staff is working very hard behind the scenes to get all of those documents in order. There's three different specific plans going forward, so we're coordinating to make sure that all comes to the council in consistent packages, so it doesn't look, uh, confusing or anything like that.
Okay, great. Last question. Um, so based on the infrastructure and proposed improvement, which is like widening the sidewalk and the bike path and street improvement, um, with the staff proposed development impact fees with proper nexus, um, to the fund of construction specific to the MDSP, is that...
So the, the work that is being done as part of the MDSP will help inform those future studies to look at, um, modifying the development impact fees so that they're right-sized to meet the needs of the, the district as it develops per the plan. So we're working with our partners in BWP and Public Works. They're doing certain studies to look at the upper limits of what the proposed plan is anticipating or contemplating, and they'll understand what thresholds will be triggered for certain improvements, and based off that information, they can update their fees and do those sorts of nexus studies that you referenced.
And that will happen again, um, with the finalization or proposed draft to council in the winters? So the fees happened at the same time, or that will follow later?
It will, uh, it will follow after. It'll be part of our implementation, um, strategy to talk about those fees with our partners.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Krisky.
Good evening, uh, members of the city council. David Krisky with Community Development, and Ms. Landry answered that very well. I just wanted to follow up and say that, yes, we are following behind, following upon adoption, we're going to be kind of shoring up some of our impact fees, but we already have a good impact fee program in place now. The council updated our fees, which previously had been very, very old, uh, but back in 2021 or '22, we updated them, kind of in anticipating this, too, but, uh, so we are in a position to be collecting funds to start, uh, planning ahead to, to finance some of these improvements. But we do intend, upon adoption of the specific plans, to come back again and do another review of the impact fees and potentially add new, um, new categories, uh, to reflect the specific plan. So we have a decent base, but we're going to be coming back and refining that, um, upon adoption of these, uh, plans.
Okay, that's good to know. I appreciate you answering. I, I was a little bit unclear. There's a lot of pages, and so, but I, I, at firsthand, you look at this, and, and you're asking for council's policy directions, and I know that you're still gathering more input from the community, and you still have a lot of meetings, and, um, it feels, it felt like the community also need to read this and get an understanding. So it makes me feel better that they're going to be talking more about it, and there's more feedback, because my first initial concern was, how are they going to get all this done in, you know, from Thursday when we posted the agenda till Tuesday? So I feel much better now that they still can weigh in on it.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we wanted to make sure people didn't feel rushed, so our community meeting tomorrow night, we'll be introducing the plan in, um, a little bit more detail than we've covered tonight, due to time limitations for tonight. Our presentation will probably be about four times longer and go through a little bit more detail, and we're going to have a Q and A session. And we're going to have a Q and A session, after which we'll have another follow-up meeting where people have had time to actually read through it on their own and develop questions. And at that follow-up meeting, we'll go into more details about their questions and answers.
Of course. Any other questions, comments? I, I would just add, it's my first time and probably my last time touching the plan, but I think that you're doing a great job. I think that the development of more infill housing in that area makes a lot of sense. So just speaking for myself, and my colleagues agree, I'd love to reach consensus. I would love to direct staff to work with Mr. Worth and his team on some of the recommendations that they've proposed in advance of tonight's meeting. I think those are real good opportunity sites. And we desperately need more housing adjacent to high-quality entertainment industry jobs and adjacent to mass transit. So I think that's a really intelligent move. Do we, do we have a consensus, colleagues?
Well, I'll even open it up to any stakeholders in that area. They want to give input. They know what they're building in that neighborhood. So, yeah, I'd open up to any of those stakeholders, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree too. I think it's, it's great that we open it up and also, of course, work with your office and make sure that we're getting, getting to work with them to what they need. Thank you.
Yeah. Great. Well, I, I think this is just to provide feedback. I think we've done that. I don't think it contemplates a motion. But staff, thank you very much for your work on this. And there's going to be ample opportunity for community input. So hopefully engagement will stay high. And keep up that robust public outreach. Great job, staff. Okay. All right.
Hey, you didn't have to read a motion on that one.
I didn't, wow. Mr. Jones, if I could deputize you, any chance you could get the vice mayor for this last agenda item? Thank you. Or anyone else it could be. I just like picking on you. I'm sorry. Okay. The seventh and final report to city council this evening, almost at the end of this long winding road, is the contemplated approval of an exclusive right to negotiate with Home Again Los Angeles, or HALA for short, approval of a sole source professional services agreement with FSY Architects in the amount of $391,000 for architectural and engineering services for the location at 2244 North Buena Vista to create a homeless access center partnering with HALA. Ms. Simone McFarland, Assistant Director, Community Development, please present the report.
Fantastic. Good to be here tonight. Before I start, I do want to do an introduction. We have a new housing manager who is in charge of homelessness and she is sitting in the back. This is Casey Lee. We are so excited to have her here. This is the second week, so don't scare her off. I need her to stay.
What, the meeting to midnight didn't scare her off?
Yeah, well, we, we gave her fair warning of that one. So, but she is an expert in CDBG. She knows homelessness. And so we're really, really excited to have her with us tonight and hopefully a long time in the future. So tonight, I am really happy to be presenting another exciting project that has the potential to help a lot of homeless families within Burbank. And this is the Buena Vista Project. Tonight, we're asking council to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement, or ANA, with Home Again LA, also known as HALA. Additionally, we're requesting council to enter into a sole source agreement with FSY Architects to do an engineering and design work to improve the building and to bring it up to code. Lastly, as HALA has agreed to contribute $64,000 towards pre-construction for this project, we're requesting that council accept these funds. Sorry, allergies. The property is specifically located at 224 North Buena Vista and is a building that was originally built in the 40s as a fire station. And then from 1994 to 2021, it was occupied by the Burbank Boys and Girls Club. It's currently vacant and the lot contains a 4,500 square foot building and two old trailers that will be removed. There's an alley that runs on one side and a single-family residence on the other. And currently, there's a basketball court in the back, which allows for parking. And in April of 2022, council directed staff to issue an RFP for a proposed new tenant. And in November 2022, Home Again or LA or HALA was selected by the council as our future partner for this site. As you know, HALA is one of Burbank's premier nonprofit agencies that work with homeless families. Last year, they housed more than 40 Burbank families and they're currently located near this site. HALA's proposal is to use the building as their headquarters office, creating a community room, a job center, case management offices, and allowing community partners to share this, this existing space. They propose to add four tiny home suites for families that would be used for transitional housing. And those would be on this property. The city would be rehabilitating the, the building. And the project differs from the Homeless Solution Center in that this project would focus on families. For some reason, I'm losing my voice. It's just that late at night. I apologize. HALA's efforts and this project align with the city council goals in the homeless plan, specifically to create interim housing that supports the homeless. While this project will do this, it also will do much, much more, including providing a location where people can go to learn about fiscal responsibility through HALA's Lifting People Up Program, enroll in the city's rapid rehousing programs, and find housing through their navigational services. These are just some of the things that they partner with the city on. The building itself is in severe disrepair and out of code compliance for future, a future tenant. For instance, it needs fire sprinklers, a new electrical panel and wiring, possibly new roof, air conditioning systems, and more. Staff has been conducting building assessments, including asbestos and lead paint. We've identified funding for pre-construction services and developed a scope of work for the architect and engineering services. Staff requested two bids for the architect and engineering firms and has selected SFY Architects as a sole source firm based on their qualifications and expertise. We are asking council to approve an agreement for this firm tonight as council recently declared a shelter crisis, which has established the urgency of completing projects like this one. Staff is also asking council to approve the ENA or the exclusive right to negotiate with HALA. This agreement is important because it reaffirms that HALA is the entity we want to work with on this project in the future. It sets timelines for both parties, outlines future discussions, such as a long-term lease. And lastly, it creates financial responsibilities for both parties. With the ENA execution, HALA will contribute $64,000 towards the pre-development efforts of this building. And as a good landlord, the city has an obligation to present HALA with a building in good repair. HALA will contribute towards the tenant improvements that have been requested within the building and the tiny home suites. That will be negotiated at a future time. And it should be noted that the tenant improvements, while are very minimal, just a few interior walls, the building improvements to bring it up to code are substantial. HALA already has begun fundraising and received a $500,000 grant from Senator Portantino. And the $64,000 would be coming out of this funds. Community outreach for this project will be completed when the preliminary site plans are drawn. It would include at least one outreach meeting, more if you want, robust, walking the neighborhood, noticing, and all the noticing required by the building codes. That is going to be this council's mantra, robust, robust. And the timeline is shown here. We expect to complete the design towards the end of the year, beginning in January. In February next year, we hope to have the bids going out for construction and construction to start next summer. We estimate that HALA's move-in will be summer of 2026, but we're aiming for a lot sooner. So once again, staff is excited about this project. It's going to be good for HALA. It's going to be good for the city and the community. We're asking council to approve these three items tonight. And I am here for any questions. And Albert Hernandez, the executive director from HALA, is also here. And I'm sure he'll be happy to answer any questions also. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McFarland. We are going to go to public comment and I have one card and that would be the one, the only, as he makes his way on down. Albert Hernandez from Home Again Los Angeles, HALA. Mr. Hernandez, floor is yours for three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Burbank City Councilmembers, city staff. I'm here to voice my strong support of the staff's recommendation to allocate funds for the pre-construction costs of 2244 North Buena Vista. This project is not nearly a structural renovation. It represents a vital investment in our community's welfare, resilience, and future. HALA is more than an organization. It's a beacon of hope for countless individuals and families who find theirself, find themselves in dire circumstances. For years, this organization has been a pillar of support by providing essential services, such as permanent, permanent housing, temporary housing, job placement, and counseling. These services are crucial in helping the most vulnerable citizens regain their footing and work towards a stable and productive life. Here we are, 20 months since the previous city council directed city staff to move forward with the ENA with Home Again LA. And I can't tell you how eager I am to start the first step of bringing some TLC to this building that has been sitting vacant for nearly, actually, more than three years now. The reconstruction of this building is not just about bricks and mortar. It's about restoring and enhancing a safe haven for those who need it most. Our communities thrive when every member has the opportunity to succeed and Home Again LA plays an indispensable role in making this possible. By investing in this project, we are investing in the future of our city. I sincerely ask you all to please approve the city staff's recommendation so that we can get the process started in rebuilding the old Fire Station 13. In conclusion, I'd like to remind you all and the public that Home Again LA is so thankful for this opportunity to collaborate with the city of Burbank in rebuilding this facility so that we can provide crucial services to those who are behind on rent, to those who are in need of housing, to those who need employment, and those who need supportive services. Our commitment is so strong that you should be able to see that by HALA investing 10% of the project expenses from our own general fund towards this. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. You too. That is our only public comment card. So we'll go to any brief staff response. If no response, we'll go to questions. No response. Questions from the council.
Yeah, actually, I have a question for the executive director. I'm sorry, you walked all the way to the back. I wanted to stop you, but. In the staff report, it does mention that under Strategy Three, Home Again Los Angeles would create interim housing and transitional housing. Is there a potential at this site or in your programming at some time in the future to be able to do rapid rehousing, emergency sheltering for families?
Yep, so we've been very fortunate to work alongside the city council and city staff to be implementing rapid rehousing over the last three years through our PLHA program, Permanent Local Housing Allocation Funds. So we've been doing that three, it's going to be three years, July 1st. And we've assisted about 111 families, Burbank families, through rapid rehousing.
And this site, we're looking to, is, I'm, I'm asking, are we looking to expand that? Is that going to be a potential there?
We're going to continue implementing rapid rehousing programs, our transitional housing programs. Everything that we're doing now out of two or three facilities will all come under one facility. What's going to be the newest component is the tiny homes, the transitional housing, which we've never done before. We've been doing it at local congregations, but this will now bring all our families in one location. And we'll be able to leverage our partners, corporate partners and congregations to come to that facility now in Buena Vista and provide meals, counseling, and extracurricular activities for the family members.
Excellent.
Then let, let me just add that a lot of the rapid rehousing that we're doing, when we're doing rapid rehousing, is we're putting people in hotels. So quite often, we'll pay for a hotel. We, in fact, we just paid for one for two weeks to rapid rehouse somebody. So that's how it normally works.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you. First of all, I'm, I'm really excited that we're finally moving forward with this. As Mr. Hernandez said, it's been a while. We need to move forward and obviously make this happen. I do have a concern, given that we started 20 months ago, according to the report. The cost of goods and supplies and the construction obviously has gone up. And in the timeline, not the timeline, the costs that was provided in the report, is that going to have an impact on delays in the project moving forward? Would we need additional funding? And so I, I want to know if staff has prepared for that as well.
Right now, we have enough funds to do the pre-development work. We are actually in the process of identifying additional funds that we can use for the construction process. We don't know how much that's going to be and we won't until the engineer finishes the drawings and we go out for bids. So, but in the meantime, during this time that we're doing the pre-construction process, we want to identify more funding. We've actually looked at a couple grants that we possibly can apply for. We're hoping that the, what they call the NOFA's come out soon so that we can start applying for those grants. So those will be some of the considerations.
Are those notices of funding availability?
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So those types of things, we're in the process of looking at.
Okay, because the one thing I want to make sure of, that we don't run out of funds and we don't know how to continue the project. So I'm, I'm happy to hear, of course, I had every confident, but I wanted Mr. Hernandez to hear that as well and the public who's looking forward to have this project. The other thing is, since this is really our own project, I'm hoping that through you and of course, the planning department, they work on expediting permit process, that hopefully we give it more attention and it doesn't have to sit in the queue for lengthy times so we can move forward. So there's no more further delays.
Yes, that declaration of the emergency shelter crisis that you did a couple of weeks ago is going to help us move this along quicker.
Thank you so much. And I can't wait to do ribbon cutting there.
Outstanding. Vice Mayor, would you like to weigh in?
Sure, I have no questions. I just want to point out the fact that this is wonderful and complimentary to the work that we're doing on Front Street, the Homeless Solution Center. This is phenomenal. And I just want to point out for the benefit of the public, at our, at our Homeless Solution Center, we will be working with individuals. And this takes into account that there are also unhoused families in our community and we need to address that. So thank you, Albert. Thank you, Home Again LA, and thank you, staff.
Wonderful. Well, I just, I'll just echo. I think Home Again in Los Angeles has been a tremendous community partner. We're lucky to have them. We're lucky to have you, Albert. Seems like a great idea. So the only question I have for you, Albert, is how would you feel if I were to, and I will, move to approve the exclusive negotiation agreement with Home Again Los Angeles? Approve a sole source professional services agreement with FSY Architects in the amount of $391,000 to perform program architectural and engineering services needed to complete entitlements and construction improvements at 2244 North Buena Vista, a city-owned property, I might add, that will be leased to Home Again Los Angeles for use as a homeless access center to serve families and further authorize acceptance and appropriation of $64,000 from Home Again Los Angeles.
Second.
And I take it that that would meet your satisfaction, Albert. Fantastic. Any other questions, comment, discussion, order, or request?
Last thing I'll say, this site has served the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater East Valley for many years and they thrived at that location. I look forward to Home Again Los Angeles doing the same.
Wonderful. We'll see you at the ribbon cutting. Please call the roll, Ms. Clark.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes, congratulations. Passes 4-0. Well, with that, we just about caught up, everybody. We will now hear council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendances at conferences, regional meetings, and community events. And I could hardly get all that out before Councilmember Mullins was pulling for the mic. So Councilmember Mullins, please.
Mine is very, very short. Attended Burbank Chamber of Commerce Excellence Awards with all of you. And then had my training with, regarding the bond this afternoon with BWP staff. And I had a couple of other community meetings and that was it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Perez?
Alrighty. So on Wednesday, May 22nd, along with my colleagues, I attended the grand opening celebration Burbank Housing Corporation's new ADU project. Thursday, May 23rd, along with the mayor, we attended our Burbank Airport Commission meeting with the commissioners. On Friday, May 24th, alongside the mayor, we had lunch at West Coast Customs. If you haven't been down, go to West Coast Customs. They're amazing. On May 27th, most of us attended the city Memorial Day Ceremony, as every year. It was a wonderful ceremony. May 29th, I attended the Zonta Club of Burbank Area Installation and presented certificates on behalf of the council. Congratulations. Congratulations to Lynn Lipinski on her presidency. On Friday, May 31st, along with my colleagues, I attended the B W P Iron Flow Battery Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. Excited to see that thing power over 300 homes in the summer. And then on June 1st, also attended the Burbank Chamber of Commerce Excellence Awards, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Outstanding. Councilmember Anthony.
All right. May 22nd, I went to the grand opening celebration for Burbank Housing Corporation's Niagara. Yeah, that project is great. It looks like the other one they did, and it's awesome. Then followed up with the Transportation Commission that day. Wonderful presentation. That's probably going to come back to us later, so I won't talk about it. On the 23rd, the grand opening for the Hollywood Production Company. Yes, that was great, the old Cartoon Network space. Then the 27th, loved the flyover at the Memorial Day Ceremony. My son attended, again, with his Boy Scout troop. It was very fun for him, and we had a good time. Iron Flow Battery, I brought my son to that one too. He's off school, so he got to learn how that actually works. And it's just, it's iron, it's salt, and it's water. It's very simple and amazing.
All manufactured in Portland, Oregon.
That's right.
Wilsonville, to be specific.
Didn't you go to school up there?
I did.
All right. And then later that day, I attended a reception for the Board Members Annual Meeting of Disability Rights California. At that meeting, I was presented with an award, their first, their inaugural public service award. It was just right next door, over at the Hilton Universal. And the city manager attended, our assistant city manager attended. They had a grand old time. And I got a piece of artwork that is gorgeous. Oh, I forgot to bring it. Oh, you know what? That's fine. It's pretty big. And it was really great. I appreciated that presentation. So thank you.
Wonderful. And congrats again, council member. That's a great recognition right there. So I won't repeat anything else that was said. I'll just add, Wednesday, May 22nd, I also attended the Burbank Adult School graduation ceremony, followed by a visit with Scouts of America Troop 219. Scouts hoping to earn their merit badge by speaking with a government official. Thursday, the 23rd, had my American Public Power Association Policymakers Council call in anticipation of the summer fly-in. That will be coming up very soon. And then that afternoon, grand opening and ribbon cutting for Hollywood Production Center in the building of the Cartoon Network, where Cartoon Network was. That was fantastic. Tuesday, May 28th, did the My Burbank Ask the Mayor podcast. Only one question submitted. So let's see if anyone can submit any tricky questions for the next one. Bring it on. I enjoy tricky questions. You're going to submit like three, aren't you? I get it. Because it's because I call on you every week. Okay. And then Monday, the 3rd, San Fernando Valley Council of Governments Special Board Meeting to amend the bylaws. The only notable change is that the COG has traditionally alternated back and forth between independent cities and city or county of Los Angeles. We've done away with the alteration, the alternating format and just, anyone can serve as long as they secure enough votes. That's the only real change so far. That's all I got. So with that, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Does anyone have any items they'd like to introduce? Councilmember Anthony?
I actually have two. Mr. City Manager, I had previously requested a first step report on the various ceasefire resolutions of local cities. In the interest of time, I would like to modify that request to a possible single step, if we can, a simple letter of support for President Biden's ceasefire proposal that he released this past Friday, May 30th, 2024. And offline, I would like to work with you and the mayor to expedite that.
We'd still look at doing a first step report, and we usually provide you the option of just going ahead, bypassing the second step if needed.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, secondly, Mr. Mayor, if I could, this might take a little bit of time, but please allow me a little leniency here. So last year, on the picket line in front of Disney Studios, General Hospital star Johnny Walker, he marched and he protested for our community. 10 days ago, he was walking with a female coworker to his car,